Good afternoon, councillors. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated, I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Atwood and councillor Hammond will be absent today, and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillors Hammond and Atwood be granted leaves of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,712th meeting, held on Tuesday the 6th of June 2023, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded. Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yes, Mr Chairman, I just rise to put on the record that the minutes that were sent to councillors as draft minutes earlier in the week had been altered by an unknown party in council. I could see words had been removed. I know the policy was changed to do this against my objections, but the minutes are actually incorrect and they've had language removed that should not have been.
Thank you. You're entitled to say no to this, to this motion.
And I do every week.
Fine. I'll repeat, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Councillors, question time. Are there any questions?
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you.
Thanks very much, Chair. I move that the motion, Brisbane City Council notes its support for the Federal Government's Housing Australia Future Fund, come off the table.
Seconded.
Thank you. We have a motion to take off the table, a motion, and it's been seconded, so councillors, the motion is that. Brisbane City Council notes its support for the Federal Government's Housing Australia Future Fund. That was moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. All in favour, please say, to this coming off the table, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor.
There has to be a time set for things to lay on the table, and this one was given by councillor Allen to be a meeting, so it had to lay on the table until a meeting would occur on Thursday after the 1st to the 6th, 2023. That time has now lapsed, and that's what was put on, this motion to lay on the table, as the end point for that. So that point has now come, so it should come off the table. Just seeking a ruling.
Thank you. My understanding that it has to come off the table by resolution of council, not according to a timetable, so that the, the resolution needs to be that it comes off the table. Thank you. We need to vote on the minutes? I thought we voted on the minutes. Yeah, we carried, yeah, we did that, yeah. Okay. Thank you. So now we go to question time. Councillor Hutton?
My question is...
Sorry, councillor Landers.
My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, over the weekend, we saw the state government adopt Shruna Council policy by prioritising the construction of new roads and sending them underground. Can you please update the chamber on what this means for Brisbane's motorists?
Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Can I thank councillor Landers for the question for her ongoing commitment to improving the welfare of her constituents through better infrastructure? Now, the councillor was right, on Sunday, we saw the state government announce that in today's budget, there would be $35 million for a study for tunnels through the northern suburbs to address traffic shortcomings in that district. Now, this may seem familiar to some. This may seem familiar. This council was tasked by the federal government with a quantum of $10 million to address this very thing, identify the problem and propose solutions. Now, we identified that if there wasn't a significant transport improvement in that district, there would be catastrophic economic failure in that district. We proposed a tunnel system. We were told it was ludicrous. Mr Bart Melish told me that it was a Liberal Party crazy plan to toll underground roads, and that Mr Sullivan, the member for Stafford, said that we should get on with the business of building roads and not doing hugely expensive tunnels, and that spending $10 million was humiliating. Well, I suppose it must have been because the figure was very small that it was humiliating, and that rather it should have been much, much larger. Now, for our study, we submitted these documents to the state, to the North West Transport Network business case, which includes road, rail, public transport, bikeway and pedestrian proposed improvements. Now, as part of that, well, that was submitted in November of 2021, excuse me, November of 2022, November last year. We were told it was a waste of money and it was ludicrous and not to bother. Then on Sunday, then on Sunday, actually, hold on one moment, we proposed two potential tunnels, right, two potential road tunnels. A Western alignment, which is the one that we published, because it solves more problems for more people, which goes through Stafford, along Stafford Road from the airport link and then north beneath the old North West Transport Corridor. We called that the Western alignment. We also included an Eastern alignment, which duplicates, which duplicates Gimpy Road underground, and that was in our proposal. Here is a large version of it. You may see an orange line that moves between just north of Kedron to just south of Castledine. Now, there was a brand new, never before heard of project announced on the weekend, and here's the state government's map, which shows a line between just north of Kedron to just south of Castledine. But what they've done, and I think councillor Murphy has hit the nail on the head, our, our map has the roads in blue and the proposed line in orange, but they've changed it up. For their roads are in orange and the proposed line's in light blue. So it's, it's a big, it's a big change that they've gone for. It's huge. It's a, I don't, and, and once again, I mean, the Minister for Transport cannot help but be clown himself on this topic. He humiliated himself by not being across it when he attacked us gratuitously in March, and for the benefit of the room, I hope that in that $35 million is the balance of funds owed to us, which still exceeds $1 million, after he pledged that it would be paid to us. Now...
Councillors, please.
He said that our, his, his proposal, the state's proposal, was nothing like the council's proposal. North West Transport Network Programme Business Case Part B, Project Refinement and Network Combination Sequencing Assessment, page 12, submitted to the state in November, there you go, look at that, Mr Chair, there is their alignment for their project. Now, here's, here's the hot tip, we've already spent $10 million, we know that it's going to work. Why are they spending 35 mil to do this? It's already been done. It's been done, apart from it's just add...
Councillors, councillors, order please.
There is a reasonable criticism of the state that they're all studies and no follow-through. Now, what I call on them to do is, the study's been done, this is what was submitted, along with about, as you would well know, Mr Chair, about a metre and a half of technical documents that would print out to a series of blinders about this long, that was also available to them. Now, don't do a study, state, deliver improvements to the people of North Brisbane.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Well, thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Chair of Finance and City Governance Committee, councillor Cunningham. Councillor Cunningham, tomorrow the Lord Mayor will hand down his budget. You have been working on this pre-election budget with the Lord Mayor. Since this Lord Mayor came to office in 2019, he's jacked up rates by 12.5%. So instead of talking about the 1990s, can you give people, the people of Brisbane, some comfort for the future and today commit to a rates freeze?
Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Chair, and now, as we all know, budget day is tomorrow. Councillor Cassidy's budget reply day is Friday. Hope you've got that marked in your calendars, because we will have plenty of time to discuss these matters after the budget is handed down. What I can say about the Lord Mayor's budget, Mr Chair, is that it will be a financially responsible budget. It will be a budget that is focused on matters that's important to people in the suburbs of Brisbane. It is a budget which has been put together with cost of living at the forefront of our minds. Now, Mr Chair, councillor Cassidy mocked the administration over the weekend for the first budget announcement of our $2 dips, which have been extremely...
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
On relevance, the question was about a rates freeze.
Councillor Cassidy, I, councillor Cunningham, I do ask you to come back to the question, which is about general discussions about the budget to be delivered.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and what I said earlier is that budget day is tomorrow, and councillor Cassidy has one more sleep to wait until budget day. Tomorrow, the Lord Mayor will deliver a financially responsible budget for the people of Brisbane. We know that those opposite are opposing cheaper pool entry for our residents in the suburbs. So that's, so that's the way. They oppose that and they, and they seek to jack up rates by over 6% when their administration, Mr Chair.
Point of order, Chair.
Not once, but four times, Mr Chair.
Relevance, the question was whether, councillor Cunningham, the Lord Mayor will commit to a rates freeze in the upcoming budget. We're not talking about the 1990s here, we're talking about people's futures.
Thank you. Councillor Cunningham, I ask you to come back to the question before you...
Thank you, thank you, Mr Chair, and as I've said now for the third time, budget day is tomorrow, councillor Cassidy. Now, there's still time for you to work with the deputy opposition leader, councillor Massey, on your budget reply speech. Can I, can I recommend that you maybe look at Google Docs, you can share some ideas? I look forward to hearing what councillor Cassidy says on Friday, Mr Chair.
Further questions?
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor, point of order to you, councillor.
Thanks very much, Chair. I move the suspension of standing orders to enable me to move a motion.
Seconded.
Yes, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Residents are doing it tough, and all this administration is offering is glib responses. We just had that from the Chair of the Finance and City Governance Committee, could say everything but this administration will commit to a rates freeze.
Point of order to you, councillor Cunningham.
Claimed to be misrepresented, that was not glib, I answered the question.
Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair.
You need to establish why you couldn't put this on the, on the question paper.
Thanks very much, Chair. We, we thought that perhaps, perhaps the Chair would have had the answer today, had some idea about, about offering Brisbane ratepayers some serious cost of living relief. But it's clear today that it's not, so, you know, council, the 26 of us plus the Lord Mayor, now has an opportunity to debate a motion that will call on the Lord Mayor to bring a rates freeze in for the 2023-2024 financial year. The poor political decisions of this Lord Mayor over his few years in office have led to a 12.5% increase of rates for Brisbane residents. They're paying more but getting less in the suburbs of Brisbane. We are deeply concerned that what we're going to see tomorrow is a massive rates increase. We're going to see more rates being taken from the ratepayers of Brisbane to pay for blowouts.
Point of order to you, Deputy Mayor.
We have been asked this question week after week, so why couldn't this have been a motion on the paper yesterday? The urgency.
Yes, to urgency, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, thanks very mu, thanks very much, Chair. So through the political decisions of this Lord Mayor, to, to...
Point of order, Mr Chair. I ask you to make a ruling on asking, for him to answer why this could not be on the papers by 1 o'clock yesterday. That is what he's supposed to be explaining.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If councillor Cassidy can establish urgency in regard to your request to suspend standing orders, please.
Yes, thanks very much, Chair. So the residents of Brisbane know, the residents of Brisbane know that this rates increase that is coming tomorrow from this Lord Mayor is all to fund the cost blowouts on his inner-city projects, a billion-dollar cost blowout on the metro and the bridges. We just asked five minutes ago councillor Cunningham, who's been working intimately with the Lord Mayor in, in developing this budget and developing the rates increase that we are probably going to see.
Point of order to you.
The councillors debating this, not telling us why it's...
Yes, councillor Cassidy, I do ask you to come back to the reason for why you couldn't put this on the notice paper earlier.
Yeah, thanks, thanks very much, Chair. The Lord Mayor has an opportunity right now, he and the administration can support this motion, we can have a debate. All 19 of those LNP councillors, the Lord Mayor, can, can apologise to the people of Brisbane, say they got it wrong over the last four years in jacking up rates by 12.5% over the last three and a half or four years to fund the blowouts on those inner-city projects, and they can, they can apologise to the people of Brisbane and say they're going to do it differently this time.
Thank you, your time has expired, councillor Cassidy. The motion before us is for the suspension of standing rules. All in favour of suspending standing rules, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The noes have it. Thank you. We continue on with question time. Councillor Maddick.
My question is to the Chair of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, recently on the ABC's Insiders Programme, we heard the Greens continue to fight against the construction of new homes in the middle of a housing crisis. Can you please highlight the hypocrisy of the Greens when it comes to their own suggestions for housing?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, I'd like to thank councillor Maddick for his question. It was certainly interesting hearing the Greens' views on housing and how they plan to fix the housing crisis. It was during an interview on the ABC Insiders Programme that the member for Griffith mentioned a list of properties he had sent to the state for consideration for public, social and affordable housing. One of those properties is the former Belimba Barrack site, which received DA approval last year and has been a master plan and precinct approach to redevelop that old site. Mr Chair, I was intrigued to see this on the list of suggested sites, given the previous comments by the Greens regarding this particular site. Last year, the Greens criticised the development, stating it will cause traffic chaos and destroy the Tagulawar Park. It is clear they made assumptions about the precinct and have just adopted their standard position on any type of development, and that is not to support it. Instead, the development will achieve great outcomes for the local area and community. Not only will it deliver over 850 dwellings, it will deliver riverfront parkland for the entire river frontage, which is approximately 530 metres. Additionally, Tagulawar Park will increase in area from just over 5,000 square metres to just under 10,000 square metres, nearly double its previous size. The development will also upgrade the Apollo Road intersection and increase connectivity with pedestrian and cyclist connections through the site. The existing stormwater infrastructure will be upgraded, and there is provision for a multi-purpose outdoor sport and recreation area. Despite all of this, the Greens argued that the site should not be developed because it was on a floodplain. This is a very typical argument from the Greens, and one we have heard many times in this chamber. Here we have the Belimba Barrack site, that is zoned as a flood planning area 5, the lowest of all our flood planning areas, and one that does not trigger any flood overlay. This is a great site for housing, however, it is not supported by the Greens. But naively, and somewhat surprisingly, the Greens have suggested two other sites to the state government for social and affordable housing, namely 42 Logan Road and 56 Mannings Street. Both these sites have the same flood planning area as the Belimba Barrack site, i.e. an FPA 5. So, Mr Chair, I am puzzled at how the Greens can oppose one development on the basis of potential flood risk, yet suggest other sites with the same flood planning classification for social and affordable housing. If this isn't hypocrisy, I'm not sure what is. Not only is it a tenuous position to take, but it is also based on a misconception that building on a low-rated floodplain is not feasible. Some may recall that last year, the former Greens councillor moved a motion in this chamber to not allow development on land mapped under the Brisbane flood planning areas 1, 2A, 2B and 3. However, the motion failed to consider that there were over 40,000 properties included within the flood planning areas 1, 2A, 2B and 3 across the city.
That's how you get housing affordability.
For a brief moment, we thought councillor Massey would take a more balanced approach on housing supply and development than her predecessor. Just two weeks ago, the councillor claimed that she had not publicly stated that she didn't believe in development in potential flood zones. Yet last week, the councillor opposed the Carupa TLPI on the basis that it was rushed, unplanned and on a floodplain. The councillor opposed a precinct that is located within walking distance of the CBD and one that proposes 10,000 new dwellings. A precinct whereby remnant industrial land will be renewed and rejuvenated and made into a great and vibrant and sustainable community. The councillor for the Gab Awards states that the housing crisis is the result of inaction from every level of government. Yet when we pull the levers available to us, we are criticised for moving too quickly. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, my question is to councillor Davis, the Chair of Parks, Environment and Sustainability Committee, and I hope the Lord Mayor's listening. About 12 years ago, council capital listed a small but vitally important project in Princess Street Park, Fairfield, which was to install a shelter and a new barbecue. By some miracle, funding popped up in the 2022 budget one year ago to undertake this important suburban park improvement project. I've been asking all year, and this project has not been delivered. Why has this important local parks project, which is a shelter over some existing seats and a barbecue, which was funded in last year's budget? Just to be clear, I don't want to confuse you, it's about the budget that's passed. Why hasn't it been funded and when is it going to be done?
Thank you. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank councillor Johnston for the question, I'll have to take that on notice.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Maddick.
My question is to the Chair of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, surely your previous answer was only the tip of the iceberg when it comes to the Greens' hypocrisy on housing. Can you please share with the chamber any other examples you have?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, I'd like to thank councillor Maddick for yet another question, and potentially his last one in this chamber.
Councillor Johnston, please.
Mr Chair, unfortunately, I only had the chance...
Councillor Johnston, please.
I only had the chance to call out the hypocrisy of three of the properties the Greens have suggested for housing. The Greens have been clear that they are suggesting properties that could be considered for social and affordable housing that are zoned for medium and high-density housing and close to high-frequency public transport and public parkland. However, not all the properties the Greens suggested are zoned accordingly. Let's take the Combsley precinct, and as the Greens stated, a site we are undertaking consultation on. Perhaps he hasn't visited the site because, if he had, he would understand that the precinct is not only zoned general industry with, with open space, but it also forms part of the Australia Trade Coast. The Australia Trade Coast is Brisbane's most recognised industrial precinct due to its strong profile and association with the Port of Brisbane and Brisbane Airport. A precinct that is estimated to contribute $6.7 billion annually and employ 38,000 workers. And whilst we are looking for renewal opportunities through our industrial strategy, there is also a need to support our existing traditional industry uses. Mr Chair, perhaps this site zoning was not understood or appreciated, and an oversight on the Greens' behalf. However, let's move on to another suggestion put forward by the Greens, the old West End Police Station in Boundary Street. This site is appropriately zoned as district centre, which allows consideration for residential. The Greens have failed to mention that the station itself is heritage listed. Perhaps it was the community comments on the Greens' original post, original post, that has made them change their tune on this particular site, and they are now suggesting the site be used for a community centre. But it is clear, Mr Chair, retaining heritage is not a key consideration for the Greens. Another site suggested that is within the appropriate zoning is that of the vacant site along Laura Street at Stone's Corner. Not only is this property within flood planning levels 4 and 5, but it is also directly above the Eastern Busweight.
That's right.
Now, I'm not an engineer, Mr Chair, but my understanding is any construction method would require drilling and excavation to establish the building's foundation at very significant cost and disruption. Mr Chair, the ongoing comments from the Greens show they lack any awareness of the current environment in the building industry and the real constraints in providing housing supply. Instead of proposing initiatives that would support the construction industry in delivering more dwellings, the Greens instead criticise the industry for trying to be profitable and sustainable. A strong construction industry is fundamental to providing more housing. A strong construction industry is fundamental to providing more housing. Every week, we see stories about construction companies failing and being unable to complete properties that they've been contracted to do. The opposition must be living under a rock if they cannot understand what's happening out there in the marketplace. So, the position that the Greens, and in fact the opposition councillors have adopted is that construction pays a key role in the delivery of housing, and we need these industries to be in a position where they can do just that. Now, in Brisbane, we know we have over nine years of supply of approved multi-dwellings across the city, which is more than two times the required target set out under the government's shaping South East Queensland plan. These statistics demonstrate that council is doing its part to assist the housing challenge through development approvals. This is despite the opposition, week in and week out, not only supporting, not supporting housing supply, but they do that through opposing neighbourhood plans and also opposing planning amendments. So, Mr Chair, the Shruna Council is committed to doing whatever we can to support housing in this city. We are using the levers available to us to do that, but it is extremely frustrating when we see the Greens putting to the state government ideas that are absolutely impractical. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. My question is for the Deputy Mayor Adams, in your capacity as the Chair of Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. In a, in a 2019 Brisbane Times article, you talked about how a shabby and unkept local park was the catalyst for your political career. Today, public spaces, including parks across Brisbane, are facing an even more significant threat. The 2032 Games, Raymond Park will be fenced off from residents and sporting groups to be turned into a warm-up track. Crosby Park green space and established trees are in limbo due to the plans for a five-hectare Brisbane indoor sports and carer sports centre.
Is there a question? I've got two minutes.
Councillor Howard, I'm allowing the question, I'm allowing this question to proceed.
Baramburn Victoria Park, announced as the city's lungs, has had its plans called into question due to the development of a temporary five-kilometre track to cater for 50,000 spectators. Recognising that the Brisbane 2032 Games will stretch from the Sunshine Coast to the Gold Coast to Wumba with existing facilities and opportunities for alternative venues, we're here.
Point of order to you, councillor.
Can we get to the question?
We are here. We're at the question.
Thank you.
Will you stand for residents in Hamilton, Hurston, Paddington, Albion, Spring Hill, East Brisbane, Kangaroo Point and more, as you stood for your local community and ensure that precious green space is protected and guaranteed metre for metre from the state government in the Games?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr Chair, and I did stand up in this place very early on to protect the parks, and I have continued that for 16 years, and I'll continue that for as long as the people of Holland Park support me to do that role as well. The list of many parks that councillor Massey has mentioned today are parks that are being considered...
Councillor Johnston, please. Sorry, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Are parks that are being considered by the state government and OCOG for temporary uses across the Olympics, and I will stand here every day of the week saying that the Olympics are a good outcome for the people of Brisbane. We know the Greens don't like it, we know that the opposition on that side do not support economic development for the city. But every park that you name then is something that looks like is a temporary, and some of them not at all, temporary sites for the Olympics, and that's how Olympics are run, and every bit of that will come back as public and open space after the Olympics. I support parks across Brisbane and will... I support parks across Brisbane and will continue to do so.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I appreciate you giving me the call. My question this afternoon is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, recent reports in the Courier-Male suggest the state government may have overcommitted on their promise to electrify all South East Queensland buses by 2025. Can you please update the chamber on this news, including how the Shrinna Council is taking the sensible approach to electric buses?
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, thank you to councillor Owen for the question. We know that the Shrinna Council is a leader when it comes to adopting sustainable, cutting-edge technology that keeps our city clean and green. Our public transport network and our citywide bus leader are of course no exception to that rule. We've had electric buses on the city loop for several years now, and we were the first major Australian city to adopt e-scooters. We're proud of the fact that we've started council's passenger fleet transition to zero emissions. But of course, Mr Chair, we know that residents want Brisbane to be cleaner and greener in the lead-up to the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games, and we know that we want to put our best foot forward. Councillors will remember that the state government has mandated that all new buses in South East Queensland must be zero emissions from 2025. But in the more than 12 months since that announcement, we have been working very hard behind the scenes to try and reach an agreement with the state to jointly fund new electric buses and their associated charging infrastructure. We've reached out to Minister Bailey to seek funding support for the state's initiative, and we have presented a proposal for how we might work together on this project. We've developed plans for electrification of the Sherwood and Tuwong depots, the places that we think should be the first to have charging infrastructure. We've also consistently committed budget to upgrade our bus fleet, but we've seen no commitment from the state government. Now, we know Minister Bailey has been a bit distracted in recent times involving himself in a range of other council matters, but I'll be honest, Mr Chair, from where I sit, Minister Bailey has majorly dropped the ball on implementing his own zero emissions target. Now, the one thing we know that the state has done is host an industry roundtable on the matter, and last week we saw the outcome of that process was TMR releasing their industry engagement findings, and I'll read some highlights from the paper, Mr Chair. Quote, "The programme timeline is seen as overly ambitious and may not support the objective of establishing sustainable local manufacturing." Quote, "Attendees were concerned about the industry's ability to meet the project's timeframes." Quote, "Lead times for upgrading grid connections and ordering batteries were a particular concern." Industry also called for, quote, "rigorous definition of local content to provide clarity to manufacturers." And finally, Chair, quote, "Attendees identified a national skill and labour shortage which is already affecting industry capacity and capability." Boy, oh boy. Let me put it simply, as per usual, Minister Bailey is all talk and no action. He came out last year, he announced the mandate to much fanfare, but has still yet to provide any funding to allow anyone to achieve the target. But now we know, not only does he not have the funding to deliver electric buses, he also doesn't have any industry support. The timeline is unrealistic, the grid doesn't have the capacity or the support to effect the transition, and industry has said they don't have the capability or the capacity to deliver it. But not to worry, Mr Chair, because Mr Bailey's most recent letter to me indicated that he does not believe the situation is, quote-unquote, dire. But the reality is, without the ability to begin procuring electric buses, the situation is dire. Our fleet has a mandatory retirement age under our contract with Transit, which means at some point we will have to start taking buses off the road. But due to the state government's mandate, we can't buy diesel buses. At the same time, we can't buy electric buses because the state government won't provide us any funding or certainty on the charging infrastructure. So, we can't get diesel, we can't get electric, we're caught between a rock and a hard place, Mr Chair. So, how does Minister Bailey expect us to keep servicing our current bus network if we don't have enough buses to run on it? And then there's councillor Cassidy. Mr Chair, week in and out, councillor Cassidy comes into the chamber and he chives this administration because our electric vehicles, be it bus or metro, are made by industry-leading manufacturers around the world. But how does councillor Cassidy expect us to support local industry when local industry themselves have told us that they cannot support the transition to electric buses without more certainty being provided by his mates in the state government? And this was, I repeat, Chair, in a TMR-released paper. It wasn't industry, it was TMR who released this paper. What more evidence do we need that local industry is now not ready to support this transition? We have, I would say, Chair, a proven track record on this side of the chamber of reducing our emissions across all of council's operations, and I'll be watching the state budget announcement very closely, Mr Chair. I'm calling on Minister Bailey and the state government to finally do their part and honour their zero emissions commitment. Give us some certainty around how you're going to roll out this plan, because the Shrinna Council is ready and willing to work with you. Look at Brisbane Metro, we are already rolling out the largest bus electrification project in the country.
Councillor, Murphy, your time has expired. Your time has expired. Councillor Collier.
My question is to the Chair of City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee. Councillor Allen, will tomorrow's budget include more discounts on rates and infrastructure charges for community housing providers? And if not, why not?
Councillor Allen.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you to councillor Collier for the question. Now, councillor Collier is new to the chamber, so I'll give it the benefit of the doubt. It tends to be a bit of a longstanding tradition in this place, certainly ever since I was finance chair and before that the deputy mayor and in the past the Lord Mayor. And everyone gets anxious, they all want to know what's in the budget before it's landed. And I can understand councillor Collier being anxious.
Councillor Johnston.
The reality is councillor Collier is going to have to wait till tomorrow until the budget's handed down. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Mackay.
Thank you, Chair. My question's to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, the Shrinna Council's agenda to keep Brisbane clean, green and sustainable continues to kick goals. Can you please update the chamber on the latest award received by this administration?
Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, I'd like to thank councillor Mackay for the question. As deputy of the EPS Committee, I know that councillor Mackay watches very closely what the news branch is achieving and was as proud as I am that, once again, that our work has been recognised as industry-leading and award-winning. I'm pleased to report that our new and improved flood information online picked up the flood risk management project of the year at the 2023 Flood Plane Management Australia Excellent Awards, which were held as part of the Flood Plane Management Conference recently held in Melbourne. The award is given to a project that demonstrates the highest level of achievement in areas of flood risk management, including public benefit, community involvement and innovative solutions. And as you know, Mr Chair, the updated flood information online, which was launched in September last year, ensured that our flood information and awareness tools are up to date, accessible and fit for purpose, providing an improved user interface and historic flood mapping as well as levels for the February 2022 flood event. The new fire platform is a one-stop shop for flood information, including council's flood awareness maps and floodwise property reports, as well as critical information about flooding in Brisbane and staying safe during flood events. The previous version of the platform was refreshed and included improved functionality for tablet and mobile phone users because it's important that we can access vital information like this in as user-friendly fashion as possible. Brisbane is seen as a leader in this field, and what we are doing is envied and considered best practice. I also heard that the conference delegates were very impressed at the level of data that we provide on the platform, which now includes indicative floor levels. Not only did we receive lots of positive feedback about the platform during the conference, we also received terrific feedback about the industry-leading work that we're undertaking with our online flood information and awareness products and the Flood Resilient Homes Programme. We also received great comments about our willingness to improve and update data sets based on information provided by residents. As part of the conference proceedings, officers from council delivered three presentations on the great works that we are undertaking to ensure that Brisbane is safe, confident and ready for flood events. After the 2022 floods, for example, we took significant works to ensure that reliable and accessible information was available to the public after the event. Officers also spoke about the Flood Resilient Homes Programme, which, as we know, has formed the basis for the state and federal government's Resilient Homes Fund. The Flood Resilient Homes Programme was also recently presented to the Planning Institute of Australia National Conference. Again, the work undertaken in the Flood Resilient Homes Programme is seen as industry-leading. There were accolades for council's commitment to delivering it and inspiration expressed to flood resilient design as a meaningful outcome for flood-affected regions. And of course, it's now been expanded as the Flood Resilient Suburbs Programme. Once again, council is a pioneer in delivering an adaptive resilience programme for businesses and apartment buildings, which is the first of its kind. So it's no surprise then that the conversations with other local and state government delegates following the presentation at the Planning Institute of Australia Congress recently recognised that Brisbane City Council as an innovator, a leader and meaningful change facilitator. It shows that this was valuable knowledge sharing on a very important topic, including the economic benefits and the relationship to insurance fears that are increasingly being identified. Delegates were keen to learn more about our risk-based approach to land use planning, our approach to updating our mapping products, the influence of flood resilience on flood insurance and real estate prices and the cost benefit of the programme that council delivers. We were excited also to learn that Brisbane was announced as the location for next year's Flood Plane Management Australia's National Conference, which will bring together over 400 flood professionals and community members with interest in flood plane risk management. And, Mr Chair, we very much look forward to sharing with and learning from flood plane management delegates in Brisbane next year. This is just another way that the Shrinna Council is delivering award-winning products into the community.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, and my question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee. Councillor Murphy, 24 of the listed 2,221 footpaths awaiting repair across Brisbane have been completed to date. When will the remaining 2,197 footpaths be repaired?
Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, well, thank you very much, Chair, and thank you to councillor Griffiths for the question. The reality is that councillor Griffiths makes up a lot of figures when it comes to footpaths, because we know that Labour's record on footpaths is absolutely horrific. Chair, we spend over $35 million annually on footpath replacement. No, in fact, we do, councillor Johnson. I was walking around my ward down the Bilibber Creek Bike Way the other day and I saw the officers out there repairing and replacing footpaths, and you know what they did? They actually widened them as well when they repaired them. So not only we go around replacing like for like, we go around, we replace like for better. That's this administration's record on footpaths, and we know, Chair, Labour's record on footpaths...
Point of order. Point of order to you, councillor Griffiths.
I'd just bring the chairperson back to the question. It was, when will the 2,197 footpaths waiting to be repaired be repaired?
I don't uphold your point of order. The chair is being relevant to the question.
Well, thank you very much, Chair, and I've got a great little article here, Chair, from the Southern Star, Springwood. It came out in 2002, and I'll quote the article, quote, it says, councillor Sawley... Well, we know councillor Cassidy loves to tell everyone he's the economic ducks of his school, and we know, despite the fact that he was the economic ducks, we don't know whether he'll be the Lord Mayor or candidate for the Labour Party, Chair, because we are getting through budget and they still haven't got a candidate for Lord Mayor.
Councillor Murphy, please, this isn't relevant to the question. Could you come back to the question, please?
I will, Chair, and I was about to quote from this article in the Southern Star. Councillor Sawley told the Civic Cabinet...
Point of order, Chair. Councillor Cassidy.
On relevance, Chair, the question was very specific about... And let's be serious here for a minute. The figures that councillor Griffiths quoted were the figures this administration gave us through answers to questions on notice. No, 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 just a couple of weeks ago, Lord Mayor. Just a couple of weeks ago. So on relevance, councillor Griffiths asked when the 2,197 footpaths that are awaiting repair will be repaired. He's got lots of notes. The Lord Mayor's handed him some notes. Councillor Mark's handed him some notes. Surely he can answer it.
You're now debating your point of order. Councillor Murphy, I can bring you back to the question, please.
Well, look, I appreciate councillor Cassidy bringing back to the question here, because what I want to do, and I'm going to give him the stats that he's after in just a sec, but I want to just set the scene for everyone. So, what did councillor Sawley tell a meeting of Civic Cabinet?
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
There are serious problems with footpaths. This is a reasonable question. Jim Sawley hasn't been in this place since before councillor Murphy was in Nappie.
Thank you. Your point of order is on relevance. Can you bring him back to the question? Your point of order is on relevance. I uphold your point of order. Councillor Murphy, if I can bring you back to the specifics of the question, please.
Well, you know, they've mentioned councillor... Councillor Johnson has mentioned councillor Sawley, and we know councillor Sawley does come up a lot. Councillor Cassidy often mentions him in this chamber. He often says how he's a mentor, you know, he's a great guy.
Councillor Murphy, there's a point of order.
I know councillor Murphy thinks everything's a joke, but on a day when he's releasing Brisbane's walkable strategy, why on earth can he not answer a simple question and be relevant to the question that was asked?
Councillor...
Please, Mr Chairman, get him to answer the question.
Councillor Johnston, thank you. Councillor... Thank you, councillor Johnston. Councillor Murphy, can I bring you to the question, please, or have you completed your answer?
Yeah, well, thanks, Chair. We have just released the draft Walkable Brisbane Strategy, and I know councillor Cassidy has presented a feeble Brisbane mobility strategy in response to that, which is to spend, I think, less money than we're spending at the moment on footpaths. We spend $35 million annually, and he committed $25 million, so I don't know what kind of a promise that is, Chair. But, look, the reason I keep bringing up, and I know they don't want me to say his name, the reason I keep bringing up Jim Sawley is because it's very relevant. It's very relevant to this debate, Chair. They are the ones who mentioned...
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
I've got a footpath that's been waiting for a year. I'm interested in the answer. I'm interested in the answer.
Councillor Johnston, that is not...
Why are you allowing him to defy your ruling?
That is not a point of order.
Why are you allowing him to defy your ruling?
That is not a point of order.
Relevance!
That is not a point... Your statement was not a point of order. Councillor Murphy, please, can I bring you back to the question before us?
Your microphone, please. Microphone. Chair, I think we've hit a nerve here, and do you know why we've hit a nerve? I want to tell you why, and maybe I can get this quote out, this fifth attempt. Councillor Sawley told a Civic Cabinet meeting at Mount Omity on Wednesday, November 13, the council had a $100 million backlog of footpath repairs in the city. $100 million backlog of footpath repairs.
Point of order! Point of order!
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
You're a joke. You are a joke. You have told councillor Murphy to come back to relevance on at least four occasions, yet you are letting him defy your order. Mr Chairman, why will you not take action about the defiance of your orders in this place?
Thank you, councillor Johnston. I don't uphold your point of order or your observation. Councillor Murphy, have you completed your answer?
Chair, I've got 50 seconds, and I just want to use that wisely, because I want to say, since we came... Since this administration has been in office, I want to tell you, the condition of good footpaths in this city has lifted from 42% of footpaths to 77%, okay? So, what this administration has done is take a city with broken, crumbling infrastructure, footpaths that were ruined everywhere, and has brought them up to standard by investing in them year after year after year. And do you know, those councillors, when they have the opportunity through the SEF to spend money on footpaths in their own ward, almost none of them do.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired. Your time has expired, and that ends question time for today. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Point of order. Point of order to you, councillor Griffiths.
I rise to move a motion.
Moving an urgency motion?
Yes, I move a motion that Brisbane City Council purchases the land at 284 Pine Mountain Road, Carina Heights, under council's bushland acquisition programme.
So, first of all, councillor Griffiths, you're establishing an urgency motion? You want to move suspension of standing rules? Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so you need to establish the rationale and reason for urgency.
And I've got three minutes to do so. Yes. I'm moving this motion...
Well, you need to establish why you couldn't put it on the notice paper before this. Well, you need to establish why you couldn't put it on the notice paper before this.
Yes. And it's interesting, the councillor for this area didn't bring this motion in. I'm moving this motion on action for clearing and splitting a block of koala land that has this land, and this is in the development application, this land is in a designated conservation area of an endangered species. That's in our own paperwork for this site. This site is on Pine Mountains Road and it is to split one block into 10 blocks and create a road clearing the land. This land has koalas on it. This is koala habitat that adjoins White's Hill Reserve. We know around White's Hill Reserve, there have been at least 20 koalas killed in the last five years. And then once again, that information has come from this LMP council. Those koalas have been killed around this site. We know, this is urgent. This is urgent because residents have contacted me today and have been contacting me over the last week, but today, these residents gave up. They gave up because the councillor for this area wouldn't answer their calls. The Lord Mayor for this city wouldn't answer their calls. No LMP councils, none of the 19 councillors sitting in this room would answer their calls to say, we need to protect this land. We need to stop the clearing of this bushland. We need to stop the clearing of this bushland. And what they want to see is the funds they pay through their bushland buyback fund, they want to see it used to purchase this land.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Howard.
Mr Chair, the reason for the three minutes is to establish why this could not have been put on the notice papers at, is it by one o'clock yesterday? That is, it is a point of order, the three minutes.
Sorry, I'm explaining that.
Through you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I've-
Come on, this is wasting my time. Councillor, councillor, there is a point of order. I'm happy to hear the point of order.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I ask for your ruling on the fact that this point of order is about establishing urgency and why it was not put on the papers.
Thank you councillor Howard, I've heard your point of order. Councillor Griffiths, you do have the right to establish urgency. If you are unable to put the question on the, for the agenda by one o'clock yesterday, under 12.3, under 9.3, you have to move suspension of standing rules and you do have up to three minutes, but you do need to justify why the rules under 9.3 couldn't be justified.
I just haven't been able to speak in the chamber. I'm doing this because we need to save this land. We need to get these koalas protected. We, residents told me today desperately on the phone, they hadn't been able to get councillor Adams to answer her phone. They hadn't been able to get councillor Adams to do anything.
Thank you councillor Griffiths.
I am telling you why it's urgent. It's urgent because-
Councillor Griffiths, please sit. I'm speaking. Your time has expired. We have a motion for the suspension of standing rules. All in favour of the suspension of standing rules, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The noes have it. Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Griffiths. Ayes to the right, noes to the left.
Let's let them see it, Krista.
Thank you, Billy. Clacks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 18 against.
Thank you. That motion for the suspension of standing rules is lost. Please return to your seats. Lord Mayor, you have the call for Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the 5th of June 2023.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 5th of June 2023 be adopted.
Thank you. To be moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor, that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 5th of June 2023 be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order to you councillor Johnson.
Yes, I ask that items A and B are taken seriatum for debate and voting purposes.
Items A and B, seriatum for debate and voting, thank you.
Yes, and I, I'm also-
Sorry, together or separately?
Together.
Together?
Together, yep.
Thank you.
And point of order, I'm also seeking the further following information about the items before us today. Firstly, with respect to item A on the E and C paper, and this is item number six, flood resilience 2022 pontoons, can the Lord Mayor confirm the price for the Sherwood Alberitum pontoon? It's not actually listed, so I'd like to know how much Sherwood Alberitum pontoon is. And secondly, with respect to the same item, can the Lord Mayor please explain why a public pontoon in Yorongah is being demolished but not replaced as part of the flood recovery process? That's a second request on that one. Thanks.
Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Now I moved that motion, did I?
You did.
Yep. Good, okay.
Yeah, we're up to debate.
Excellent, thank you. Last night, the Victoria Bridge, Storybridge, City Hall and Sandgate Town Hall lit up-
Point of order to you councillor Johnson.
Yes, thank you. Just to be clear, so we all know, are we debating items A and items B?
Yeah, yeah. The Lord Mayor is doing his report, we can do A and B together as you requested in seriatum. But in terms of debate, I'll point out to councillors, the debate is for items A and B and then moving on to other items. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. As I was saying, as I always talk about the light ups that we're doing in support of great causes, last night, the, Mr Chair, someone thinks it's funny that we're lighting up our assets in support of great community causes. That's, that's okay. They are entitled to that view, but it's not funny to the organisations who request this and they do appreciate it.
Lord Mayor, please.
Tonight, our assets will be lit up in red for National Blood Donor Week. Right now, three blood donations are needed every minute to keep pace with the demand. We have a situation where, particularly for rare types of blood, there is very much a shortage. Blood samples can generally only be taken or kept for 42 days. And so if more than that is required, or more frequently than that is required, there is a shortage. And right now, we're experiencing a shortage of a number of different types of blood types. Had the pleasure to give blood just recently and the, the lifeblood new system that Red Cross is using is fantastic because they actually now give you a message to tell you when your blood sample has been used. And they say it's on the way to the Royal Brisbane Hospital right now to be used, which is fantastic because, you know, you can, you can see the impact that the donation is having, but we definitely need more people to give blood. So if you're in a position to give blood, please do. They've also changed the rules about people who might have been in the UK at a certain point in time as well. You remember there was a prohibition on blood donation for people as a result of mad cow disease? That prohibition has been lifted and that opens up the number of blood donations that can be made across our community, which is fantastic. Tomorrow is Migraine Awareness Month and all our assets will be lit up in purple to support this campaign. Migraines are a genetic neurological disorder and the Awareness Month advocates for better services and support for people who live with migraines. On Thursday night, Storybridge, Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in purple to recognise World Elder Abuse Day. Elder Abuse Day falls on the 15th of June every day, every year, and is an opportunity to better understand elder abuse in all its forms and obviously to fight back against this form of abuse. On Friday, the Victoria Bridge, Storybridge and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in red to support Hero for Heart Kids. Heart Kids is the only not-for-profit organisation solely focused on supporting and advocating for all people impacted by childhood heart disease, one of the largest causes of infant death in Australia. On Saturday night, City Hall will be lit up in rainbow colours to support councillor Howard, what is it? The Queen's Ball. And so this is an event that's held every year in City Hall and in fact, in fact, I think one of the longest running events of its kind anywhere in the world. And it continues to be supported here in Brisbane City Council. Finally, on Sunday, all our assets will be lit up in red to support Eve of Heart Failure Awareness Week. Okay, last week was a bit of an interesting week and a bit of a busy week and a number of things happened. I met for a third time with a state government minister in about four weeks on the issue of Pinkinbar. I had first met with Minister Leanne Enoch and literally within a matter of a day or so, she was no longer the Minister for Housing. And so then I had to meet with the new Minister for Housing, Minister Megan Scanlon. We had an initial meeting and we agreed to meet again, so for the third time, we met last week. And it was quite an extraordinary meeting because after we'd already met on this issue, I was expecting a little bit more out of the meeting than was actually generated. And so we had a meeting which seemed to go nowhere and where it was suggested that council should operate Pinkinbar as a US style trailer park. I kid you not, this was the suggestion. It was that council should run it as a caravan park. This was the minister's suggestion to me. And then she said, well, other councils do this. I went, which ones?
Holiday.
Oh, like Sunshine Coast Council that actually has holiday parks by the sea. This is something that they've done for many years, certainly not something that Brisbane City Council does or has done or is interested to do. Pinkinbar is no holiday park. It is no seaside holiday park. And that, that suggestion was just mind boggling. Interestingly, about an hour after I got out of the meeting, maybe even as little as half an hour after I got out of the meeting, the state government announced that they would put $10 million towards the activation of Pinkinbar. You would think that this would have come up in the meeting. No, not a mention, not a word, not a word about their commitment. And in fact, all they tried to do is to actually suggest we should run it as a US style trailer park. Extraordinary. So, yeah, it does sound suspicious councillor Marks. The, the level of political game playing here is extraordinary and next level. And this is, this is, it is no wonder why this government cannot deliver basic things when it comes to housing. Cannot deliver social and affordable housing, cannot do simple things that they are expected to do because they spend all their time playing political games and no time actually delivering. Thankfully, the day after that meeting, when the state government magically found $10 million, which they didn't mention in the meeting with me, the Salvos stepped up and they said, we'd like to be involved in operating this facility. And thank God for the Salvos because the state government may have wanted to squib it, but great organisations like the Salvos are willing to step up and do the right thing and to activate this facility. And so let's hope that the state government's $10 million, our $1 million, and organisations like the Salvos can finally get this facility up and running because it is certainly better than people living in tents and cars. We also had, as councillor Wines mentioned, the extraordinary announcement on the weekend about a toll tunnel proposed, or a study, a study for a toll tunnel proposed by the state government. Now, this was, as councillor Wines pointed out, one of the options that was put forward in our report. The federally funded report, which we commissioned, had this as one of the options. Now, I don't, I don't know why they now have to spend $35 million to come to the conclusion that we already know this is a thing. This should, we should just get on and deliver it, or they should just get on and deliver it. And to spend another $35 million to do another study, I would certainly hope that this is not a cynical political ploy to get them through the next election without promising anything, to make people think there's something happening when in fact there will be nothing happening. We need action. We need action. And it's extraordinary that just a matter of weeks ago, the Minister for Transport was ridiculing our report, ridiculing our $10 million as a waste of money, and now he wants to waste more than three times more on another study. But while the state government has finally decided that going underground is the right option, I really wonder about local members like Bart Melish, who have been running an anti-toll road campaign in the local area for months and months and months. An anti-toll road campaign and, and even councillor Cassidy, who referred to the mega toll road. He was bagging our proposal as a mega toll road proposal. He said it repeatedly in this place and suddenly he supports a mega toll road. If the Labour Party had any credibility left on anything, it disappeared on the weekend. You cannot trust a word these people say. You cannot take them at their word. One minute they say one thing, the next minute they say the total opposite. It's extraordinary. Meanwhile, people are sitting in traffic and they need solutions and they need action. And so on the weekend, when I was asked about this, I supported it because I want to see action. And as tempting as it was to say, you can't trust the Labour Party and this is another cynical ploy to get them through yet another election without actually doing anything, I didn't say that. I welcomed the announcement. The reality is, I certainly hope that this will deliver real action and real outcomes. And so maybe there's a little flicker of hope. Maybe some people might say that I'm naive to, to say that, but certainly I have that hope because it is needed. It is needed, absolutely. And the state government and the Labour Party have neglected the North Side for far too long. That needs to change. I did want to mention two councillors here who might be making their final speeches today.
At that point, Lord Mayor, I have to interrupt you. Your time has expired.
Move an extension, second.
An extension of time has been moved by the deputy mayor and by councillor Landis. Request for further time for the Lord Mayor. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye!
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I recognise that was an attempt to shut me down councillor McGlocklin. Councillor Maddick and councillor McGlocklin have been good and faithful servants of the city of Brisbane now for many, many years. And they will both be sorely missed. They will both be terribly missed. They have both served their local community as well as local councillors, but also served in senior leadership roles of this council for many years as well. And that is a true testament to their love for this city, a commitment to Brisbane and the people that they represent. Councillor Maddick was first appointed to Brisbane City Council in May 2007, I remember it well. And then he went on to successfully contest four elections, 2008, 2012, 2016 and 2020, and served with distinction in civic cabinet for over a decade, 11 years to be precise. Was the Chair of multiple committees, including Environment Parks and Sustainability, Public Transport, or Public and Active Transport, Field Services and Lifestyle and Community Services. He also, as a local councillor, kicked some serious goals for his area. The creation of Frew Park in particular, where you, we remember the old tennis centre at Milton, which would have been otherwise shut down and developed, was turned into a park. And councillor Maddick was a champion for that project. And the investment that was made has made it one of the most loved parks in Brisbane and also one of the unique parks where there's parts, parts of the playground and facilities that are designed for older kids.
are designed for older kids. And when I say older kids, I'm talking about not people that would appreciate playgrounds, but maybe a little bit more daring and adventurous. And so it was a groundbreaking playground, and a great asset and legacy that councillor Maddick has left. There's been multiple village precinct projects, also one he championed for a long time, a new city cap terminal at Milton, which was successfully delivered under his watch and through his championship of that. And also the Marone City Glider as well, a fantastic local service that not only services councillor Maddick's ward, but other important parts of the city as well. We, I know that you don't know what, exactly what you're going to be doing next, but we certainly wish you all the best for the future, councillor Maddick. And as I said, you have been a great servant to the people of Brisbane, this city, and in fact, this team as well. And so we do, on behalf of our entire team, wish you all the best for the future, and we know that you won't be a stranger going forward. Councillor McGlocklin, elected to council in October 2006, and this was a by-election. I had come in in a by-election the year before that, and I remember the by-election almost as well as you do, because I remember the Labor, the Labor Party's plastic wrap on the booth was, stop overdevelopment now. And so, in 2006, they were campaigning against the provision of new homes, and they've never stopped. They've never stopped. They've been nothing if consistent in opposing the construction of new homes. But the people in that area rejected such nimby attitudes, as they continue to do these days. And you were successfully elected in that by-election. And then again, in 2008, 2012, 2016, 2020, you were also a member of civic cabinet for 13 years, chaired multiple committees, including City Business and Water Supply, Field Services, Environment Parks and Sustainability, Infrastructure, and the Chair of Council, and also the first councillor responsible for citizenship and civic education. I do enjoy, every month in our big citizenship ceremonies here in City Hall, hosting those events together. It is genuinely, I know, thoroughly rewarding experience to welcome our newest citizens into the local community. You've done a fantastic job in this role. But also as a local councillor as well, the champion for the Kingston Smith Drive upgrade, and one that, you know, was not without its challenges, a very complex project, but one that, in hindsight, can you imagine whether we would be able to have the Olympics or the Olympic Village at Hamilton North Shore if we hadn't done the work to upgrade Kingston Smith Drive? And really, we did that upgrade largely, and the largest beneficiaries were the state government of Queensland, who own all the land at the end of that upgrade. And so you championed that project. That project has delivered a wonderful outcome, not only as a road upgrade and a boulevarding project, but as an active transport corridor. And there are thousands upon thousands of people every day using that new section of Riverwalk. They will soon be able to cross the New Breakfast Creek Bridge and link in with the rest of the network. You championed the creation of Ascot Park, which is the ironic conversion of a parking lot into a park. And so it's the reverse of that song where we paved paradise to put up a parking lot. This was taking a parking lot and turning it into a park, and that was a fantastic outcome, and I know one that you're very proud of as well. Councillor McGlocklin was also the chair responsible at the time for our first mass transit study, and it was under Lord Mayor Campbell Newman, wasn't it?
Yep.
And out of that mass transit study came the creation of the City Glider concept, and the creation ultimately of the first City Glider, the Blue City Glider, which remains, if not the most popular, always one of the most popular and well-patronised services in the whole of Brisbane. And then became a blue, sorry, a Blue City Glider became a Marone City Glider, and obviously, as you know, we're proposing a further City Glider, the Gold City Glider, which we're waiting for the state to sign off on our business case for. And you've also been a champion of the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge as well, which is well underway for construction, and I don't think you'll be in the role when it's finished, but we'll make sure we invite you to the opening ceremony. But once again, a faithful and humble servant of the people of your community, but also of Brisbane, and we thank you for your service, and we wish you and Nicole all the best. And I won't tell any stories about your time being the producer for the John Lawes Show or anything like that, I'll leave those stories for you to tell. But thank you both councillor Maddick and councillor McGlocklin for your fantastic service to the city, and as I said, we wish you all the best for the future. Item A, the contracts and tendering report for April 2023, and we're doing item B as well together, is that right?
AMB together, yes. Debate and vote.
The contracts and tendering report in relation to 12 contracts coming through, 12 out of 12 contracts are awarded to local suppliers, being 100% of contracts, well in excess of our 84, 80% target for local contracts. So far this financial year, 184 contracts have been awarded to local suppliers, being 85% of all contracts, making a total spend so far to the end of April of $1.2 billion with local suppliers, $1.2 billion with local suppliers, in relation to questions that were asked previously by councillor Johnson. No doubt, one of the chairs will be able to answer those questions in the further discussion. Item B is the Stores Board submission relating to grass cutting. This is a contract that is very important, not only to council, but also to the people of Brisbane, because it helps to ensure that our city is looking well-maintained, is maintained to an expectation that the community has, and also that we deal with what is our unique subtropical climate, where the grass tends to grow. And we resource very fully the grass-cutting services, but we also make sure that those grass-cutting services are provided in a way that provides best value for money for rate payers as well. So not only is it a good level of service, but also an efficient level of service through the contract model. Now, we know that Labour councillors like to rail against any kind of contracts with external providers. I will again point out that it was the Labor Party that very first outsourced the grass-cutting contracts. It was under Lord Mayor Jim Sawley that they outsourced grass-cutting from council to external providers, but in fact...
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension, seconded.
We have a motion for an extension of time for the lord mayor, moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Not only did they outsource the contracts to external providers, they outsourced it to a foreign company, a foreign company. Yes. And when they say that they don't support this sort of thing, don't believe it. They outsource grass-cutting, they outsource rubbish collection, two of the most basic services that council provides, they outsourced. So you cannot believe a word they say when it comes to contracts or outsourcing. Look, they may have pre-prepared questions and statements provided by their union masters, but the reality is, they don't believe it, they won't do it, and what's so funny?
You.
So they're...
Counselors.
They're denying that they have union masters. Wow, okay. I think you'd better tell your union masters that.
Little bit, little bit. Councillor Mackay, please.
Okay, so we know Labor's record when it comes to outsourcing to private contractors. It is there for all to see, it is there for history to show, but we'll see what they say about it today. With this contract, there are five key categories in the contract, commercial grass-cutting services of council wards, cemeteries, closed landfill sites, social enterprise and community organisations, and also long-reach grass-cutting. And when I say long-reach, I don't mean long-reach, I mean hard-to-get-to, hard-to-get-to grass-cutting and difficult sites. Multiple tenders bid for multiple categories, and the categories have been aligned to the equipment types required to service them and the skills and capabilities of the contractors that put up proposals. The contract will begin on the first of July this year, with an initial term of three years and an option to extend for a further two years. In one single cut of the city alone, council mows around 45 million square metres of grass, which takes almost two weeks to deliver. So one single cut across the city takes almost two weeks. And in the summer periods of high grass growth, we're mowing back-to-back. So it's two weeks, and then two weeks, and then two weeks. It's a continuous mowing schedule during those summer weeks. Councillor Marks will speak more about this contract, and also optimum grass-growing conditions, which I understand are above 24 degrees Celsius with a certain amount of rainfall. But councillor Marks is right across this, because she is very passionate about city standards, and wanting to make sure that we maintain the highest possible standards for our city. These contracts will help achieve that, and just as we have a proud record of investing more in the basics, whether it's grass-cutting, whether it's road resurfacing, footpath repairs, we have invested more than any other administration before in grass-cutting and those basic services. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further debate, items AMB, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Just checking, yeah, no, there's no toys left in the cot. The lord mayor's chucked them all out there over his 30, his strange 30-minute contribution. He started, he's a sore loser, really, when it comes to all of those issues that he litigated in his first 10 minutes, and then it was quite a rollercoaster ride listening to the lord mayor then. Clause A, clause A, these contracts before us today, another month and another group of projects that are being outsourced, and as I've said many, many times, there are certain things, particularly even on this list, that are fair enough to get experts in the field to be delivering them. Council isn't in the business of constructing pontoons as a specialty. We accept that, you know, you go to a specialist and get that and get the best price for them. But one did really jump out to me, and that's contract number seven, the smoother suburban streets construction package. This is resurfacing, resurfacing suburban streets, something that council does do in-house. There's two lots of work that happens. One, one group of those streets which get resurfaced every year is done in-house by council, purchasing, you know, materials to do that, but carries out that work. And then there's another group, which is entirely contracted out, we see here before us today, this time it's nearly $7 million. And in conversations I've had with council officers over the last few months about some of those cost pressures that are being placed on the council budget, and this applies to other work that's done in-house, particularly around tree trimming, the limited, the limited amount of tree trimming and the limited amount of tree planting that's done in-house, also around footpath work, and particularly around resurfacing suburban streets. There has been much lower cost pressures for the rate payers of Brisbane on the work that's done in-house, as opposed to the work that's done externally. So the price of those externally contracted jobs for road resurfacing has gone through the roof, whereas the work that's done in-house by council staff, who have permanency of employment and great working conditions and are paid decent wages, that is costing a lot less than that external work at the moment. So that tells you, a better value for money, that's right. So that tells you, it paints a very clear picture as the kind of conversation we should be having around genuine value for money. And we know under this LMP administration, they don't care about that, don't really care about the suburbs and delivering for the suburbs of Brisbane. You know, we'll get to this in a moment as well with grass-cutting services, but you know, the argument, I guess, that the LMP mounts around value for money is that contract...
Sorry, I'm interrupting you. There's an issue with my character, it might be resolved if you turn it off.
Sure, how's that? Okay, so, so contracting, contracting out the services, I've lost my train of thought then, maybe I should, maybe I should start again entirely and I'll, and I'll come back to that. But the LMP's argument around, how are we going? Is it fine?
I'm getting the word.
Yes.
Not sure. The LMP's argument around contracting out these services is that it's cheaper, is that it's better value for money. That's, that's the argument that the LMP makes. When you actually talk to staff who are managing these projects, they tell you a very different story. And I guess, I guess for the LMP, there's, you know, materials that those external contractors buy are the same as the materials that we are purchasing as a council in-house. So the variable there, I guess, is the labor costs. It has to be.
Yeah.
So there's an external contractor doing this work, not only has the same cost of materials that council does, the rate payers of Brisbane do, and you do it directly in-house, but they have to make a profit as well in doing this work. So if they're, they're making a profit doing this work, this road resurfacing, and they have the increased cost in consumables and materials that council also has, the only other variable for them to make, make a profit is to pay people less. That's, that's the, that's the, that's the simple equation in this. So what we, what we should be doing as a council and what Labor commits to doing is to having a root-and-branch review of all of these practices, because you can't offer value for money for rate payers. When you continue to contract out basic services, those services inevitably cost more than in-house services, and then under the LMP, you have to engage in contracts to manage those external contracts. So it really is not good value for money. On grass-cutting, on clause B, costs to, costs to council, so costs to the rate payers of Brisbane on these grass-cutting services are going through the roof. And again, that theme continues to come through the papers that are before us today, in the contracts in clause A, in this contract in clause B, that residents pay more and get less under this LMP administration's contracting programme. And I think, just like I described on those basic services like road resurfacing, the time has come for a conversation and a full cost benefit analysis of providing these basic, these basic services in-house. We need to have a clear-eyed view of what the costs to the rate payers are in continuing to contract out basic services versus doing them in-house and having total control and total flexibility over those services there. The lord mayor, you know, got up and said, oh, well, a previous Labor administration contracted out grass-cutting services, therefore we are not allowed, by extension, to raise these issues. And I know he's a real stickler for previous positions, I know, you know, you know, so whatever apparently a previous Labor administration did, Labor councils have to toe that line. I know he does that with Sally Anne, you know, the, the long lunches and the overseas travel, of course. He's kept all of that up, that, that tradition in his administration, those, you know, those boozy affairs. But we're in 2023, we're in the middle of a cost of living crisis, residents expect to get decent value for money and a decent return in the suburbs for their rates. Why are we not looking at this? Particularly when offices within council are describing the better flexibility and the better value for money on in-house services to us, as opposed to contracting those out. So does, does a full in-house service, a full in-house grass-cutting service work? We don't know, because the LMP refuse to do that work. They're so hell-bent on contracting those things out. Where is the comparison before us today? We're often presented with paperwork that says council, we might have used to 10 or 20 years ago, be able to perform certain duties, we can't anymore because we don't have that capability because of the continued contracting out. There's nothing, well, there's a few things, but, you know, grass-cutting is well and truly in that category of basic ongoing work. It's got to happen all year round, across thousands of parks, we know where those parks are. The lord mayor's gone through that scientific calculation on the, the 24 degree, the square metres of cutting and the optimal grass growing weather, so we know that. We know that, we have those details. So where is the cost benefit analysis? As I said before, there's no way, and also, you know, that will be illegal soon, same job, same pay, thanks to a federal Labor government, but there's no way that external contractors and Labor high workers should or can be in the future paid less... contractors and Labour high workers should or can be in the future paid less than in-house council workers. And they absolutely shouldn't. That's a, you know, a statement of values and principles that workers deserve to be paid decently for the work they do. So, the LMP's approach is that they can get better, so-called better value for money for these services by contracting them out to companies that pay less. It's the only argument they can make, it's the only logical argument that the LMP can make. So, that question does need to be asked, and without that answer, as to the genuine value for money proposition for ratepayers, we won't be supporting these contracts before us today.
Thank you. Further debate on items A and B, councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak briefly on item A, contracts and tendering, in particular the restoration and repair of Brisbane's public pontoons and river access points. In this contract, the Jamboree Ward had four of the seven pontoons that suffered significant damage during the February twenty-twenty-two floods. The focus of this contract is more than just replacing the pontoons. It is focused on building back better. Each of the sites has a bespoke flood resilient design, including a bow-shaped pontoon to deflect debris, increased pile heights, larger and stronger piles, a reinforced restraint system to keep the pontoons tethered, and most importantly, the emission of styrofoam. Many people probably don't realise that most pontoons are made with a styrofoam base. During the floods, hundreds of pontoons littered the pristine beaches of Moreton Island. The styrofoam from the pontoons emerged as a major problem, exemplified by the presence of countless tiny balls scattered across the beach resembling snow. The broken styrofoam blocks, both large and small, could be found throughout the bay and washing into the island's creeks, causing an environmental disaster for marine life and all wildlife in the vicinity of the shoreline. In recognising the need for a more sustainable solution, we, as an administration, have made the decision to transition to an environmentally friendly pontoon that is free from styrofoam. In speaking with the designers, these new pontoons will have an aluminium-encased air pillow that will create the buoyancy needed for the pontoon. The design and fabrication of these improved lightweight, multi-chambered aluminium pontoons has demanded considerable resources and time. I want to emphasise our commitment to building these, sorry, I want to emphasise our commitment to building back better and restoring and repairing these public pontoons. I would also like to put on record my thanks to the officers for their consultation with the Centenary Rowing Club and our local dragon boat club to ensure these newly established pontoons support their club's needs. By undertaking these efforts, we are creating stronger, more resilient infrastructure that will serve our community for years to come.
Thank you. Further speakers on A and B, councillor Johnston.
Yes, well, first of all, just a point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
The Lord Mayor said that a chair would provide the answers to my questions, and I'd like that information before I speak, so someone going to do that?
Okay. So, is that your contribution to the debate? Point of order, okay.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I can provide that information to councillor Johnston with regards to the Sherwood Arboretum, the cost of the pontoon, nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and it has all of those features. That was just identified by councillor Hutton, so it's environmentally friendly, it's bespoke, and it will be better for all of the new construction elements. With regards to the pontoon at Paragon Street, it will not be replaced, it's effectively sitting without public access in a gated community. After the twenty-eleven floods, council was not going to replace it either, but the gated community wanted to keep it, so they replaced it, but we are not intending on replacing that pontoon this time.
Thank you. Further debate, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item A and item B, and I'll start with item A. The first thing that I would like to put on the record relates to contract three, and I just want to thank council because I have been asking about this project and what's happening, and I was told it was secret. I was told I was not allowed to speak to the community about this stormwater project. I was not allowed to give any information out to the community, got it and write it? And yet, here it is. Council's led a contract weeks and weeks ago. No one's thought to advise me, so I can advise a flooded community that their drainage is being upgraded. And here it is that I read it in the papers before us today. The contract was actually approved back in April, I think, April. So, it's now June, let me just double check that. Yeah, April, it started in April. So, no one's, well, it's all underground, so I doubt they've actually started. But the big issue here is, despite asking questions and being told it's a secret, you can't talk about it, here we are, in the council papers, publicly announced. Yeah, funny how it's secret when they say it's secret, and then suddenly, back in April, months ago, apparently they led a contract for stormwater upgrades, and guess what? No one thinks to tell me! I mean, it's not like I don't come in here every five minutes talking about stormwater in Brisbane. Did anybody have the courtesy to tell me? No! Did any of the council officers have the courtesy to tell me? No! Did either of the relevant chairs have the courtesy to tell me? No! Am I on the committee responsible for this? Do they bother to tell me? No! This is how council rolls. This has been the problem with flood recovery almost the whole way, that this council could not be bothered to share information with the local community. And the fact that they're not telling me, and my residents say this to me all the time, all the time, Nicole, when they treat you like this, that's how they're treating us. They know it, they know it. So, how proud you must be over there. And to the officers who couldn't be bothered to tell me, thanks so much. And, oh yeah, they did tell me they would keep me up to date, but of course, no. So, next, let's move on, because it gets better. So, finally, fifteen months after the floods and a lot of prompting, council's decided to fix the pontoons around Brisbane. And okay, they're going to make them better, allegedly, we'll see, we will see. It's probably like they were going to make the ferry terminals better, but then just forgot to activate the arms to lift them or move them so that they weren't damaged. So, their brand-new shiny terminals after two thousand and eleven were damaged. So, we'll take that on notice. But how proud councillor Hutton must be when she stands up and says that they're building back better, and she repeated it over and over again. Guess what I don't think's building back better? Getting rid of a whole pontoon, getting rid of it, just demolishing it. And guess who's got form on this? Chelma in Taylor Bridge Park after two thousand and eleven. Guess what council did? Demolished the public pontoon and never replaced it, despite petitions, despite all of the issues. Now, I see councillor Hutton and councillor Davis having a little laugh over there, but clearly they don't know what this is. This is a riverfront parcel of land that is public riverfront land. As part of the development, which was before my time, council conditioned a public pontoon and public access to that pontoon through the site. The site is one house away from, oh, get this, Ken Fletcher Park. And the idea here, from a long-term planning point of view, has been to make sure that that portion of Riverside Park is ultimately connected up through town planning requirements of public land on the riverfront. Guess what? Now we're getting rid of a pontoon, a public pontoon with public access on public land, conditioned as part of a DA. So, council's actually breaching the DA here. I'm sure the body corporate's going to be thrilled, and I'm going to dig into this one, because this administration has got form on failing to replace public assets after the floods. And this is the second pontoon. My ward has hundreds of kilometres of river and creek frontage, and there's barely a pontoon in the place other than on private property, because council keeps knocking the public ones down. And this is a public pontoon through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Davis. It was conditioned, it's on public land, and there is public access. So, how do you explain that? How do you explain facilities being knocked down and not replaced? Not once, not once, which is what's happening now in Yorongah, but twice in Chelma in a public park under the Walter Taylor Bridge. That pontoon was never replaced either. That's how this administration roll. They like to stand up and say they're building back better through you, Mr Chairman, councillor Hutton. Knocking down public facilities is not building back better, it's actually doing it worse, it's taking facilities away. And while you stand up and say how proud you are of, what, knocking down a little golf club over in your area, we know what you're up to over there. I mean, what a mess you've got yourself into there, promising something you can't possibly deliver. You're happy to stand up, you're happy to stand up and talk about how proud you are of knocking down public pontoons. How proud you all must be. This is not proper flood recovery for the city, and guess what? All council's got to do...
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Yeah, yeah, this will be explaining why I'm all wrong, I'm sure, not misrepresentation. Because the only thing I've actually attributed to her is building back, building back better, building back better. But I don't think building back better is knocking down public pontoons like councillor Hutton does, because I think that's actually worse, worse outcome, less public facilities, less access for residents. And guess what? There is a planning process underway to actually connect up all that land. So, how proud this council must be. And again, I will let my community know that this administration is prepared to play role, gold upgrades in LMP wards, but just demolishes stuff in my ward without any plan to replace it. And it's not once, it's twice. Demolition of voluntary home buyback package, right. So, this is the demolition of the houses that are happening once council buys back with the state government money. First thing I want to do is put on the record that I've made a couple of simple requests to council, and it's clearly too complicated for them. Firstly, we wanted some yellow lines in narrow streets so we could, to be included as part of the package, and council has just been a shemozzle trying to get them to understand, again, secrecy. The Lord Mayor, sorry, the CEO won't tell me where the houses are. I know, because there's fences and people talk to me, but officially, for the records, I'm not allowed to know, it's a secret. So, when I ask for a yellow line, council goes, oh, no, you can't have a yellow line there. And I have to explain, oh, guess what? It's actually council land now. So, this has been an absolute debacle for something that should be easy. Secondly, we've had complaint after complaint about the demolition process itself. Every single tree on all of these blocks is being raised by the demolition contract. Now, I do not know why council is knocking down good native trees in good condition. There's like ninety of these houses in my ward, we are losing hundreds and hundreds of trees. Now, some of them may be weeds, some of them may not be appropriate to be kept, but instead of doing the right thing and preserving the green cover and the shade and all the benefits of biodiversity that come, this council is knocking down every single tree on every single buyback block. Who thought this was okay? Who is the genius that decided knocking down trees on public land? Because we own it, it's our land. Who thought knocking down trees on public land was a good idea? Who thought that maybe we should be looking at these blocks and going, well, let's do a survey, let's identify, there's half a dozen native trees on here, they're in good condition, we'll keep them, that's a weed, we'll get rid of that? Did anybody do this? No, no, they did not.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speaker, oh, point of misrepresentation, first councillor.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I would like to put on record that I am very proud of our reputation in building these things back better. Whilst I disagree with councillor Johnson, we are doing great work in the public pontoon space.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Toomey.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Just to be clear, are you saying that that was misrepresentation?
I heard the responsible provider from councillor Hutton.
So, we can, right.
So, I'm not going to debate with you, councillor Johnston, please, 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 sit down, I am speaking, please sit down.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
So, I'm just trying to clarify, you're saying that was a valid point of misrepresentation?
I'm not upholding your point of order, please sit down.
So, it wasn't a valid point of misrepresentation?
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Howard.
Mr Chair, week after week, I sit in this chamber and hear this same councillor who is now arguing with you, doing exactly the same thing as she has just accused other people.
Councillor, that is not a point of order either.
I know, but let's move on.
I'll be done. Thank you. Councillor Toomey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And I rise to speak on item B, the stores board submission for grass cutting. As we've heard, this item seeks to establish a corporate procurement arrangement in the form of a panel arrangement for internal term, for an initial term of three years with the options to extend for an additional period of up to two years. Mr Chairman, our grass cutting contractors cover some of seventy-three thousand hectares across our city. But more importantly, I would like to drill down on something that councillor Cassidy mentioned. He said he would like a review, a house review, to pull the jobs from our contractors back into council. Now, while that's an idea, as we know, when Labour put ideas forward, there are always unintended consequences. Now, what are some of those unintended consequences? Well, specifically, this kind of idea would affect my ward dramatically, because we know that with one hand, labours take its away, and with the other hand, they just keep taking away. So, let me put some context around that. Our community groups and our sporting clubs are funding out huge amounts of money in bulk water charges at the moment, charges imposed on them by the state government. This contract seeks to go out to our community groups and provide them with the ability to provide services, not only to their own facilities and cut their own fields and their own pitches, but also to get paid for it. Now, some of those groups, some of those community groups that would be affected by this idea would be clubs like Valleys Cricket Club, isn't that right councillor Wines? Some fifteen hundred members. Jeeps Rugby Club would also be affected. I also believe Fernie Grove Flyers would also be affected. This loss of revenue for them is paramount. They need an alternate source of revenue. Clubs cannot survive on beer alone, it's not possible. So, this contract provides our clubs the ability to go out and earn some additional income from a completely different stream, one that is normally not opened up to them. And this helps them ensure their viability. Additionally, they actually get to cut the pitches and look after the pitches the way they want. And we know that specifically with Valleys and with the Fernie Grove Flyers, these pitches are paramount for them because they are putting some of our cricketers into the National League. And it's all done on these grounds. So, going out with this idea could ultimately affect the future cricketers that are playing in the National League. So, I do want to make the point that while councillor Cassidy is putting this idea forward, he hasn't thought about all of the unintended consequences, and those would dramatically affect a lot of our community groups, a lot of our sporting groups, our very successful sporting groups that have seen cricketers like Manny Hayden and rugby players like John Eels go on for successful sporting fields. And they're supported by these clubs that rely on this revenue. That's what we're doing, we are providing a revenue stream for other clubs. I would finally like to say that I'm in one hundred percent support of this, item B going through. Our clubs are important to us, and in my ward particularly, where we have... And in my ward particularly, where we have the largest cricket club, the largest rugby club, the largest netball club and the largest soccer club in South East Queensland. Yes, we do, councillor Johnson. This is, this is vitally important that this contract go through and that we maintain, give the ability for these community groups to exercise their rights under this contract. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers on items A or B? Any further speakers? Lord Mayor. Oh, sorry councillor Marks, are you, are you speaking on item B?
Sorry? Councillor Cassidy is on, want me to talk, sorry Chair.
Councillor Marks, please. Are you rising to speak on items A or B?
I'm rising to speak on item B.
I've, I've given the call to councillor Marks. Oh, councillor Cassidy, please. Are you taking a point of order? No, thank you, councillor Marks. Councillor Marks was rising to her feet, I wasn't sure if she was intending to speak. Councillor Marks, you have the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I'm more than happy to speak on item B. I want to reiterate exactly what the Lord Mayor said earlier about this grass cutting contract and the fact that, yes, we do have ideal grass growing conditions here in Brisbane. The temperature at 24 degrees and light showers is what we mostly hear on our bomb coming through every day, is ideal grass growing conditions. In fact, we've had some turn situations in the last few months where literally you can watch the grass grow before our eyes. And, and yes, our contractors do go in on a two weekly basis. So pretty much they, they finish a round and then they go back and they start all over again. One thing that a lot of people have trouble understanding in this space however, is the very fact that cutting, as much as our contractors do across Brisbane, is not the same as your own front yard. When you're mowing your own front yard and it's rained a little bit, you can wait a day or so, the, the grass and the ground will dry out, you can get your little trusty little lawnmower out and you can mow it away and away you go. That is not the case with council. When you are maintaining over 73,000 hectares of land using industrial equipment, it only needs to take a little bit of rain and the officers and the contractors cannot go in and mow. Which is then where we have the situation, grass growing and we can't get in there and do it. So I just make sure, make the point there that I want councillors in this space to be mindful of that fact. And residents, I know, are very understanding that you cannot compare what you do in your own home with what you do at, as far as council goes. To give you an indication of the size that we're talking about here, we're talking about 1.5 times the size of South Stradbroke Island that we do. And I know that the, the name has been mentioned a little bit here in this afternoon and it seems to be the flavour of the month intentionally and unintentionally. But yeah, 1997, councillor Sawley at the time did outsource the cutting of the city. And I know that, that apparently this has been forgotten some time ago. But officers will continue to work with our contractors to make sure we get the best value for money for our residents. And I find it, well, I was going to use the word offensive, but I probably won't use that word, disheartening that those on the opposite side, through you, Mr Chair, find that the work that the officers have done in this space is not good enough for them. Can I say, the council officers who've been working not only with this contract, but with the contractors for the last almost 10 months, have worked extremely hard in this space to get really good value for money for our residents and they have succeeded. The other thing is, I know that they talk about the jobs. Well, let me tell you, those, those jobs support more than three, there's 350 jobs that are supported with these contractors. So these are mums and dads' families, businesses, who are out there mowing our parks and street road sides for us. Some places though, that the person mowing the lawn could be the potential only income earner for that family. So you take that away from them and then suddenly you have a family who have zero income. And I don't know that that, anyone's book is a good outcome. So I just want to say, the other thing that councillor Toomey mentioned was about the, uh, community groups and the social enterprises. We now have 12 of those on our books, so 12, social enterprises and community organisations. So social enterprises are ones where they will have people who potentially might not be able to get a job in what we would call mainstream employment. They are taken on in this space and we've got Nunda Community Enterprises, we've got WhatsApp, Quaga Limited. We've got active refugee and migrant integration in Australia, commonly known as ARMYA, who actually have offers in my ward. And they work specifically with migrants who have been in this country and have not had employment for more than seven years. So they work specifically with that range of migrants. So now these migrants who are living in this country are now out there doing a solid day's work, mowing our parks and our roadways. So I think to say that they don't deserve this job, I think is, is a bit ingenuous on my, on their part. So I don't agree with anything that they've, on the opposition have said. And I just want to finish by saying, I want to congratulate again the officers for the amount of tremendous work and I look forward to working with all the contractors in that space. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate? Lord Mayor, summing up? No? We now move to the vote on A and B. Vote on A and B, all in favour of A and B in the ENC report, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier. Please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Thank you, Billy. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and 6 abstentions.
Thank you. Clear, that motion carried. Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Thank you, we have a motion for an afternoon tea adjournment, moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Thank you councillors, we continue with the ENC report, we're up to items C, D and E. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I also ask that item E be taken seriatum for voting purposes.
D, seriatum for voting, yes.
E, E for echo.
E for echo, my apologies, E for echo, seriatum for voting, yes.
Yes. Not C for Charlie, yes, E for echo. Item C is the renewal of telecommunications leases at various locations, particularly for both Telstra and Optus telecommunications towers on council land. The leases for these sites are currently on holdover while council has been negotiating with Telstra and Optus on the renewals. The submission today recommends 10-year leases for all of the sites with various amounts payable in rent to council. Some of the sites council manages in trust from the state, which will mean ministerial approval is required for these sites. Obviously, it's something that has been done in the past and we'll seek again. Much like we do with community leases that come through to the chamber, these submissions seek an exemption which allows council to renew a lease directly without going to tender. Item D is the integrated mass transit service contract extension. So this previously was known as the bus contract. It is now the integrated mass transit service contract. Yes, that's right. But ultimately, it helps support the provision of bus services across the city via TFB. And that includes the state paying us to provide services. But obviously, as councillors are well aware, it doesn't cover the full cost of running those services. So we receive a contract payment from the state government and then to meet the gap, we provide a transport operating subsidy. And it is the reason why we have far better services in Brisbane than all of the surrounding council areas have. Because we subsidise the provision of services and we supplement them. So routes that wouldn't be seen as so viable in other areas, we continue to provide because we are committed to public transport. But obviously, that is one of the reasons why we're doing the bus network review. And councillor Murphy has discussed the release of consultation on the bus network review just in recent times and the outcome of that consultation. And obviously, that's some, something that we're taking into consideration when it comes to finalising and planning the new bus network to coincide with the commencement of metro services. And so it's a very exciting period in the city's history when it comes to public transport. This particular contract helps us get through to that period until metro starts. And then obviously, we'll continue talking to the state government about how we gear up services as metro opportunities arise. In July 2019, we entered, entered into our current integrated mass transit service contract with the Queensland government with a term of three years with a one-year extension, which means it's now time to renew that agreement. The item before us today extends the current, current contract again, providing for a further term of up to two years. Expiring at the earlier of the 24th of June 2025 or the commencement of metro services. Otherwise, the item before us maintains many of the same aspects as the current contract with a few notable exceptions. First, we know that once metro services come online, they'll be subject to a separate contract, which we will work out with Translink. And we continue to work on that in a collaborative manner. Contract also acknowledges the implementation of zero emission buses, which includes the provisions for us to collaborate with Translink to finalise a plan for that transition. Councillor Murphy referred to this in question time earlier. It's something that we're very keen to have resolved and certainly keen to have some clarity around how the state intends to ensure that all operators, whether they be TFB or other bus operators across the state, particularly in the urban area, can transition our fleet to zero emission buses. We stand ready and willing to kick off that as soon as possible, bearing in mind the industry capacity constraints which were highlighted by Translink themselves. So we know that when we went out to tender for electric buses a few years back, the local industry could not meet requirements at that time. And there are still question marks over whether they can meet those requirements now, although that industry capacity is gearing up. There's been a select few local buses that have been produced, electric buses that have been produced, but very, very small numbers. Councillors would be aware, our fleet exceeds 1,200 buses. And so the type of scale that we're talking about here requires a massive upskilling and gearing up of production capabilities if they're to be built locally. And so this is definitely something we need urgent clarity on from the state. We have pitched a very detailed proposal to the state on our transition to zero emission buses and we are obviously waiting for that to be approved or at least negotiated with the state government. So hopefully, we can get that resolved as well. In the meantime, this particular contract extension largely continues the same arrangements that are in place at the moment and then working towards that change for metro. Item E is the major amendments to the Brisbane City Plan 2014 for the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan. Well, really, the most important thing councillors need to be aware of at this point in time is that this plan helps facilitate the creation of up to 3,800 new homes. So almost 4,000 new homes. What will Labour and Green councillors do? Will they support the provision of new homes or will they oppose the provision of new homes? Will they find some NIMBY excuses to latch on to? Or will they get out of the way and support urgently needed homes? This is obviously one of many neighbourhood plans that have come through that have helped facilitate thousands upon thousands of new homes. We have seen around 80 to 90% of all neighbourhood plans opposed by Labour councillors in this place, which is a truly shameful outcome and one that very clearly puts them in the NIMBY camp and really makes them part of the problem rather than part of the solution. And that is really disappointing because we know that as our city continues to grow, we will need more houses, not fewer houses. We will need real supply coming online. And this idea that, that some councillors espouse that, that is, oh, we support new housing but just not any of the housing that's been proposed, is just a recipe for disaster and a recipe for failure. It's a Greens approach, it's a Labour approach. And if it was unchecked, our city would have a far greater housing problem than it does at the moment. I don't think any, anyone has ever suggested that we are somehow a NIMBY council or an anti-development council. We have certainly done our part to increase supply. But sadly, there is an alternative approach and that alternative approach will make things much, much worse, much, much worse. So I would simply say, as an opportunity to redeem themselves in the chamber today and support the creation of up to 3,800 new homes. And those homes, you know, if it, if it gives them any comfort, are not in Labour wards. They're not in Green wards. So if you have that NIMBY vein running deep through your body, allow yourself to support the creation of homes in an LMP ward. Because that is what is being proposed here. Because we are happy to support the provision of new homes at a time when they are greatly needed. I commend item E to the chamber.
Thank you. Further debate, councillor Cassidy.
Well, thanks Chair. Could I also ask that all these items be taken seriatum for voting?
It is already seriatum, so C and D seriatum as well.
Yeah, just all separately, thanks, yep. I'll start on item C, the renewal of the telecommunications leases at various locations. We support this item today, given that it will ensure the continuity of telecommunications services across, across the city, right across the suburbs of Brisbane. So we don't have any issues with those leases and they also derive an income for rate payers. So we're supporting that item today. Clause D, the integrated mass transit service contract, data variation. When a new service is included into contracts, variations are required to that contract to reflect and incorporate those changes. In this case, it's the Brisbane Metro Bus Project. We've been advised that these are basic backend contract amendments for a period of time. We, you know, are a little wary, a little wary about these changes because we know they are the result of a project that has this Lord Mayor's fingerprints all over it, the Bendy Bus Project, which we now know is, and as a result, these changes, these, the variation in this contract has to be delayed as well because the project has been delayed by more than a year now, by more than- because the project has been delayed by more than a year now, by more than a year and over budget by a billion dollars.
Councillors, please.
No, not rubbish, not rubbish. Councillor Murphy, I'll take that interjection. The metro as proposed by this Lord Mayor was to cost $944 million. It was to be online, from my memory, in 2023-24, when those services were to start. We are now advised that it'll be post-2025. And that price tag is continuing to rise. The last figure we had was 1.7 billion, but knowing that is rising as well. So that probably will be in excess of a billion dollars over budget. And those services, we know that that contract for those overseas-made buses, those Swiss-made buses, which were designed to look like a tram, we know their manufacturing cost has gone up astronomically as well. We know that this administration's playing in the foreign trading, currency trading game to try and maintain that contract, just putting undue risk on the rate payers of Brisbane. And we also know that that contract for those buses from that Swiss company is over a 10-year period. So of course, there's a bit, there's a, there is some trepidation, I guess, in going into these deeds of variation for the bus service contract when there are so many unknowns, so many unknown variables coming into this as well. We're not sure, we really, we really are not sure when those metro services will start. We don't know how many of those buses are going to be delivered in 2025. We have no idea what the final cost on that project will be. Included in these amendments to the contract are details about the transition to zero-tailpipe emissions. And I'm glad that discussions are finally being had between council and the state government about that. Because I remember sitting a year, almost a year ago, just under, about a week shy of a year ago, sitting in that budget information session with councillor Murphy where he admitted that no forward planning had been done to accommodate the transition to zero-tailpipe emissions a year ago. None whatsoever. Because council's plan under the LMP was just to continue from 2023 on, even though an announcement had been made about the transition to zero-tailpipe and electric buses. Council's position was to continue to buy diesel buses, new diesel buses. There was no plan around a transition. So I'm glad that that is actually happening now. I suppose it's better late than never when it comes to the LMP. We know their so-called environmental credentials are only when they're dragged kicking and screaming or when they're shamed into things. And the Lord Mayor tries to distract and say that council has a bus fleet of 1,200, 1,260-odd buses and it would be too hard to convert them all to electric overnight. That's not the intent of the policy. It's that new buses purchased and planned for in the future are transitioned to zero-tailpipe emissions. So new buses are made. And wouldn't it be amazing, wouldn't it have been amazing if we had the political leadership here in Brisbane that made the decision to work with local bus manufacturers years ago to deliver world-class electric buses? The facility at Eagle Farm, the Volgrin facility, is the most advanced of its kind anywhere in the world. And they say they can gear up and make electric buses. But they're never given the opportunity. Because when councillor Murphy and Lord Mayor Adrian Schrinner announced with great fanfare a couple of years ago that they were rolling out two of the first electric buses on Brisbane streets, they went straight to a Chinese company and had them imported instead of working with the industry. Not supporting local manufacturing, not supporting local manufacturing when they're on the hunt for bi-articulated buses for the Brisbane Metro. And the local companies that were vying for that were knocked out. And we know this is a fact, were knocked out of contention because their bus looked a little too much like a bus. Their bus looked a bit like a bus. The Lord Mayor's specifications in those tender documents were that those buses were to look like trams. Yeah, and that Swiss company were able to deliver that, something that looked a little bit like a tram, which is now costing hundreds of millions of dollars more for the rate payers of Brisbane than would otherwise have been necessary. So certainly glad that that conversation is happening around the transition to zero-tailpipe emissions. And we know there are other consequences as well. And further variations to council service agreement will have to be made in the future as well because of the bus review, which was triggered by the introduction of the metro service as well. We know that there were 18 routes that were either merged, truncated, stopped early or completely cut. You know, there's no investment in new suburban services in the outer suburbs of Brisbane. There's only been, you know, merges, cuts, changes to services results of this metro bus project. All, all because this $1.7 billion-plus project is going to, apparently, and I suppose that's yet to be seen, add, I think, about 2,500 seats an hour capacity to the South East busway network. So there are some huge suburban ramifications for certain communities in Brisbane around now a greater lack of public transport access. There's also, this review totally missed the opportunity to look at increased suburban public transport services and new links in the outer suburbs of Brisbane as well. So, you know, we understand these things technically have to be done, but there is a great sense of trepidation going into them when they've got the LMP's fingerprints all over them for us. On item E, the Major Amendment to the Brisbane City Plan 2014, Bridgeman Downs Neighbourhood Plan. On this one, this is the final stage of where this is coming back to council. I'll just be one moment. And I note that the, there has been, I noted at the outset, there's been a change to what a ministerial condition. I'm not sure if the Lord Mayor talked about that. I was listening, but I didn't hear this section. A ministerial condition that's been included, which is in section 7.2.2.5, item section B, which is to amend the overall outcome, sorry, 3B in part seven there, where it says, it will now read, multiple dwellings are not accommodated in the low-density residential zone, including where in a precinct or potential development area. There hasn't been a lot of explanation about that in the report before us today and obviously in the neighbourhood plan as presented, it's just not there. Except for the fact that there's been this change in the wording there as part of the state interest checked and the ministerial designation. And I remember this section well because I did talk extensively about it when the neighbourhood plan came here last year. In that the administration was, so that relates to not allowing multiple dwellings, units and townhouses in the low-density residential area. It also included another line, which is now no longer there, which also banned units and townhouses, multiple dwellings in the emerging community zone in the draft neighbourhood plan, which was brought to council last year and set up to the state government, which was the first time I certainly had ever seen that before.
Councillor Cassidy, your time expires.
Point of order Chair, a move for an extension.
Extension of time has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Griffiths. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair. So that's certainly the first time I had ever seen that where, you know, the purpose of emerging communities land was largely, didn't have a specific zoning on it at the time. And then whether through a planning scheme amendment or a development application process and then reflected in the planning scheme amendment, the zoning would be changed to whatever was appropriate. But the administration tried to, tried to limit the amount of housing choice through multiple dwelling units in emerging communities land in the Bridgeman Downs Neighbourhood Plan area. So I guess the Lord Mayor, through this process, was caught out in the midst of a housing crisis in trying to limit the amount of housing choice that would be included in the Bridgeman Downs Neighbourhood Plan area. And, you know, last week, the Lord Mayor made a big song and dance about limiting suburban sprawl in this chamber. He said we had to go up instead of out. And we accepted that argument, we accepted that argument. We accepted that argument when that development and density is supported through the provision of community infrastructure, made that very clear, to support that growth. That wasn't demonstrated last week and it's not demonstrated again, off he runs, this week. So he's talked about an additional 3,800 dwellings accommodated out here in the Lord Mayor's own proud words. But where is the infrastructure to support that? That is the question everyone was asking last week. It continues to be the question everyone asks every time, this administration. And, you know, it talks about the development of new housing. You know, and poor old councillor Allen before was, you know, their care and concern is for the developers. You know, he was making, he was making that, he was making that case, you know, he was imploring, won't somebody please think of those developers? But won't somebody in here, won't someone amongst the 19 LMP councillors think about the community?
Point of order to you, councillor, microphone? Sorry, can you say that on mic?
Claim to be, Mr. President.
So where is the infrastructure? Last week, during that TLPI debate, it was made very clear by the deputy mayor that through that process, the provision of community infrastructure was not included. Yeah, the community, the community was to be ignored when it came to the provision of infrastructure. That's happened again, you know, and I suppose we were being a bit generous last week in saying that through a planning scheme amendment, that sort of thing can actually be included. Because when you look here at the Bridgeman Downs Neighbourhood Plan, which is a planning scheme amendment, that also isn't the case, the community infrastructure isn't to be included. When you look at the feedback that the community gave on this neighbourhood plan, there are a couple of clear themes. Delivering, delivering basic services and infrastructure alongside development is certainly one of those. And it was made well and clear ahead of this neighbourhood plan process starting, given the amount of unplanned growth that was occurring in the area. And it's also been made really, really clear in the consultation that occurred during this neighbourhood plan. There were clear themes, people wanted council to deliver services and also importantly, protect the unique bushland of the area through this neighbourhood plan. And residents said alongside growth, they wanted to see things like better parks, better footpaths, better roads and drainage and better transport options. Yeah, pretty simple, not rocket science. And you know what the response from the LMP Lord Mayor and their local LMP councillor, Tracy Davis, was? No, no, sorry. That's not part, and this is what they said to residents, that's not part of the planning process under the LMP. So they take their approach, their approach about, to neighbourhood planning is all about density. We know that. It's about height limits, about gross cover, site cover. But it's not how a neighbourhood moves or interacts with one another, how a neighbourhood looks and feels. It's all about developers. It's never about the neighbourhood, unfortunately. Residents made clear they wanted better bushland protection given the threat of destruction of the bushland at 415 to 427 Beckett Road, Bridgeman Downs. That's just one of many examples out in that part of the world, but it's one that certainly galvanised the community. The neighbourhood plan talks about ecological protection in the significant mountains to Mangrove's corridor, but in reality, it doesn't deliver any protection. And all we have seen throughout this process and previously under the LMP's destruction of that corridor. So if there was a serious intention to protect this land and bushland in this area while accommodating that increased growth and housing choice, and we certainly were very critical of the LMP in ruling out multiple unit dwelling in the emerging community zone, I'm glad to see that's changed. But if there was a genuine approach to bushland protection, we might have been inclined to support the neighbourhood plan. So in the spirit, in the spirit of doing a deal here today, I'll condition our support of the neighbourhood plan with the following. And I've finished what I'm going to say here Chair, but I'll now rise on a point of order and move the suspension of standing orders to enable me to move a motion calling on Brisbane City Council to purchase the land at 415 to 427 Beckett Road, Bridgeman Downs under council's bushland acquisition programme.
Seconded.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Can I ask your direction on a motion that may have been presented to council in recent times and dismissed? Therefore, it cannot be presented again. I'm not sure on the timing, but I do know we have debated this in a motion. I just ask for your ruling.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy is a repetition of a point of order that's previously been raised. But as you've moved a motion for the suspension of standing rules, I'll allow that urgency motion to be moved by you.
Thanks very much Chair. This piece of land absolutely needs to be saved. It's clear before us today, the papers that are being presented to this council chamber today does not include enough protection for that piece of bushland at 415 to 427 Beckett Road, Bridgeman Downs. Any development on that site is not good for that critical habitat. There are threatened native species on that site, including koalas. Platypus have also been filmed in nearby creeks.
Point of order to you, councillor.
This is to urgency, Chair? So I couldn't be on yesterday when everyone had the ability to read what was in the report.
Thank you. I've allowed for the suspension, for the motion to be moved.
Yeah, thanks very much Chair. So it's really clear that this piece of land, which is a critical link in Brisbane's extremely sensitive biodiversity.
Deputy Chair.
Under the rules of suspension of standing order, the three minutes is to say why it cannot be on the papers at one o'clock yesterday. You got the papers last Thursday, why isn't it...
Deputy Mayor, I'm allowing you to cite why you believe this to be urgent, councillor.
Yeah, thanks, thanks very much Chair. This, this, this piece of land is well-known. Councillor Davis knows this, councillor...
Councillor, Deputy Mayor, please.
Deputy Mayor knows this, councillanders knows this, needs to be protected. And they also know that the neighbourhood plan before us today doesn't protect this land. They know that it doesn't protect this land. So what we can do today is move a resolution to commit the council buys this critical piece of the Mountains to Mangroves corridor using the bushland acquisition fund. We know that that needs to be changed. And what is it, 18% of that fund is used to purchase...
Hang on, hang on, one at a time, please.
Why couldn't this have been put on the agenda yesterday?
I'm allowing councillor Landis, I hear your point of order. I'm allowing councillor Cassidy to move his rationale for suspension of standing rules.
I was going to say, Mr. Chair, I asked a question. Do you believe he's showing a rationale for yesterday or debating the motion? I ask your ruling.
Deputy Mayor, I'm not going to respond to that point of order, that question you raised in your point of order. I'm allowing councillor Cassidy to establish the rationale for moving a suspension of standing rules.
This piece of land is not protected under the neighbourhood plan that the LMP councillor Tracy Davis and the Lord Mayor proposes to put through this council today. We need to send a strong signal to that community out there who said their number one issue, their number one issue as well as service delivery in the suburbs was protecting this piece of land and other sensitive land.
Point of order to you, sorry, hang on. Point of order to you, Deputy Chair, yes? Point of order to you, Deputy Chair.
May I ask you a question? It is a point of order.
Is it a point of order?
Point of order is under section 53. A point of order can be made if a councillor needs to ask a question. Under section 53, section E seeks a question.
Okay, councillor, I'll allow you to move the question, to ask a question.
Mr. Chair, do you believe he is proving urgency or debating the motion?
I'm not going to respond to that question, Deputy Mayor.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order to you, Deputy Mayor.
You need to make a ruling or answer my question.
I'll make a ruling that I'm allowing councillor Cassidy to complete his rationale for the reason for suspension of standing rules.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I rule dissent in your ruling.
A motion for dissent in my ruling has been moved by the deputy mayor. All in favour, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The noes have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much Chair. How rude of the deputy mayor. I mean, this is, this is an incredible... I mean, this is, this is an incredible, this is an, this is rude and incompetent, absolutely. This, I'll move on. This is incredibly, this piece of land at four fifteen to four twenty seven Beckett Road, Bridgeman Downs is a critical link in the Mountains to Mangroves corridor. The LMP are refusing to protect it, the community wants it protected. They wanted it protected through their neighbourhood plan, that is not happening. We think this is a great way to protect it, we should buy this land.
Councillor Cassidy, the motion before us is for the suspension of standing rules. All in favour of the suspension of standing rules, please say aye. Said the contrary, no. The noes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier, please, ayes, ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Plaques, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and seventeen against.
Thank you. The motion for the suspension of standing rules is lost. Councillors, please return to your seats. We return to debate on E and C, items C, D and E. Is there any further debate? Councillor Allen. Further debate, councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item E, the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan. This is the final step in the adoption of this neighbourhood plan. Prior to the amendment process, Bridgeman Downs was covered by both the Bracken Ridge and District Plan and the MacDowell Bridgeman Downs Plan, adopted in two thousand and ten and two thousand and eight respectively. It was clear that an updated neighbourhood plan is required for the area to guide future development and land use and coordinate long-term infrastructure planning for the area. Since the neighbourhood plan process commenced in two thousand and nineteen, we have undertaken several rounds of community engagement. As the Lord Mayor indicated, this included over six hundred submissions, either written, online or via interactive mapping tools and community information sessions and kiosks attended by over three hundred and forty residents, so quite a lot of engagement in the, the consultation phases. This engagement with residents, along with technical research and reports, informed the new Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan that includes changes to zonings, overlays and planning scheme policies. Councillor Cassidy spoke at length about infrastructure provision. The draft local government infrastructure plan has also been updated to provide new infrastructure to support growth in the area. Future infrastructure planned for Bridgeman Downs includes three new local general recreational parks at Rogan Road, Beckett Road and an expansion to Kensington Place Park and one new district general recreation park on Neville Road, amounting to over five point seven hectares of additional parkland. There'll be three new road corridor projects at Graham Road, Beams Road, between Bridgeman Road to Ridley Road and Beams Road, Ridley Road to Gimpy Road, as well as cycling routes connecting Tiverton Place to Camelot Place, Neville Road to Bridgeman Road and Retreat Street to Bridgeman Road. The LGIP one B amendment will soon be made available for public consultation. This new neighbourhood plan will also enable future development for residential areas that supports sustainable growth. For example, there are proposed zoning changes to over nine hundred properties, including four hundred and thirty one properties changing from rural to low-density residential, as well as four hundred and three properties changing from emerging community to low-density residential. It has been estimated that the new neighbourhood plan will support nearly four thousand new dwellings in the area. However, the neighbourhood plan also endeavours to maintain a rural feel by supporting acreage and larger suburban lots in selected precincts that will protect the neighbourhood character of the well-separated houses in a bushland setting and protect the environment. We are seeking a balanced outcome with this plan that provides for housing, but at the same time recognising the character and environmental values of the area. The community feedback during this process indicated that protecting the environment and the wildlife which live and move through Bridgeman Downs is a high priority. As such, through the neighbourhood plan, we will continue to protect and enhance the environmental and diversity values along Albany Creek, Cabbage Tree Creek, South Pine River and tributaries and east-west ecological corridors. And through the LGIP one B, we will look to acquire a hundred and fifty eight hectares of waterway corridor from tributaries of the South Pine River and over three point six hectares of waterway rehabilitation along Cabbage Tree Creek. The Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan is just one way the Shriner Council is ensuring Brisbane is a city of neighbourhoods where residents are close to the services they need and the lifestyle and leisure opportunities they want. Now, with respect to the ministerial condition, you know, that's obviously the prerogative of the state to, to look at these things. We obviously will incorporate that in, in the plan and the, the objective of everybody is to ensure that we get sustainable and appropriate growth in this particular neighbourhood plan, and I believe the plan achieves that. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers on C, D or E? Any further speakers? Councillor Davis.
Oh, well, thank you very much, Mr Chair, and I rise to speak on item E, a major amendment to the Brisbane City Plan two thousand and fourteen, the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan. Mr Chair, our journey to today started in two thousand and nineteen when the first community planning team meeting was convened. And since then, we've been working with local residents to ensure that we can preserve the character of this suburb while also accommodating the population growth. Because Brisbane is growing and it will continue to grow, we have seen a steady stream of people choosing to call our city home and as Brisbane is transformed for the Olympic Games, we know that more will come. And they're very welcome, Mr Chair. And they're choosing suburbs like Bridgeman Downs, which as I have said many times before, is a terrific place to live, relax and raise a family. With larger acreage lots, easy access to shops, services and schools, as well as plenty of green space, Bridgeman Downs balances a rural feel with all of the convenience of the city. So it's not a surprise that people want to live there. And as a council, we've worked hard to deliver a plan that balances the things that make Bridgeman Downs that wonderful place to live with the need to support population growth because every suburb has a role to play. And I'd like to thank the neighbourhood planning team in CPED for all of their work on the plan as well as the residents, who took the time to participate in our consultation process and provide feedback to us. Since two thousand and nineteen, the neighbourhood planning team has facilitated online surveys, community planning team meetings, regular email updates, information kiosks and formal consultations to ensure that everyone who lives in Bridgeman Downs has had an opportunity to have their say on the future of their suburb. As well as through the formal consultation process, feedback came through my office and over the past four years, I've had the pleasure of meeting with a number of residents one-on-one to discuss the plan and to hear about what they want to see for the future of their neighbourhood. In October two thousand and twenty, a draft strategy was released for the community to provide their feedback on. And after taking on board all this feedback, two further formal rounds of consultation were conducted and the most recent was in March two thousand and twenty-two. And I know that since then, the neighbourhood planning team has worked very closely with property owners throughout Bridgeman Downs to address specific feedback about their respective properties. The feedback from the draft strategy consultation provided a clear picture of what residents in Bridgeman Downs saw as the future of their suburb. Three key themes have been at the centre of the neighbourhood plan preparation process and that included protecting our environment and green space, maintaining residential neighbourhoods and providing infrastructure and services. One of the very strong themes that came out of the community consultation was the preference for single dwelling homes and I'm very pleased that the plan reflects this feedback. Within the four new residential precincts that have been established, there'll be areas where there is retention of acreage and areas of low-density residential development. But I would like to put on the record, Mr Chair, that following the state interest check, the minister, the deputy premier Stephen Miles, wrote to us about the Rogan Road precinct, conditioning it as an emerging community zone. Given the character of this area as a very lower density and biodiverse neighbourhood, the community would be rightly concerned about the potential for the development of multi-unit dwellings in the emerging community zone. So I wrote to the deputy premier, raising those concerns and urging him to reconsider the decision. But I am disappointed that to date I have not seen a response because we don't want this decision to adversely impact on the intention of the neighbourhood plan and the expectations of the community. Through this neighbourhood plan, inappropriate development near our waterway corridors will be prevented and a diversity of lot sizes are provided to allow for enough spaces for the retention of habitat in backyards. Through the LGIP, as councillor Allen mentioned, we'll be providing the infrastructure and services that the community needs to grow sustainably. And this will involve improving the open space and park network in Bridgeman Downs and ensuring that the community facilities meet the need of the local area in a safe and accessible way. Once again, the neighbourhood planning team has been extremely helpful and available with addressing queries, concerns and feedback and available, and as it came through from the community and on a personal level. I'd like to thank them for their professionalism and their support and assistance that they have given me and my team out in the ward office through this process. Mr Chair, the Shriner Council takes community consultation very seriously and this has never been more evident than through the process of preparing the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan. We've ensured that everyone who has come to us with a specific concern about what this new plan will mean for them or their property has received a comprehensive answer in an open and transparent way. I would say though, Mr Chair, I am disappointed by some of the commentary by the leader of the opposition. This neighbourhood plan went through a very significant process where we really did engage the community to hear about what they wanted very strongly. They did not want multi-unit dwellings and for the leader of the opposition to come in here and try to be political about an issue that is extraordinarily important to this community. This had been a rural community and, you know, it has changed over, you know, the last twenty years significantly, even thirty years. And so the process was meant to engage, listen, consult and deliver on what the community was after. And I believe that this neighbourhood plan goes a very long way to supporting what the local community needed. With regard to the two blocks of road on Beckett Road, oh, yeah, the two blocks of land on Beckett Road, it's unsurprising that the leader of the opposition has tried to make this political once again. He knows full well that if the state government had called in the development right at the beginning, we wouldn't be going through this at all. The state government had the powers to call in this development and we would not be in the position today. But do you know what, Mr Chair? I don't think that the leader of the opposition wanted it called in because all he cares about is the politics. He doesn't care about wildlife, he left the EPS committee, so all of a sudden, he's back and engaged and worried about wildlife and habitat in the Bridgeman Downs area. I'm pretty sure his GPS goes straight from where he lives in the Deegan Ward to four one five and four two seven Beckett Road. He wouldn't know what else is in Bridgeman Downs. It is disgraceful, it is a shame that the will of the local community is not being supported by the deputy leader, the leader of the opposition. Council has, has taken every step that they can through, through the planning process, through the planning process...
Councillor Griffiths.
Through the planning process to ensure that we get a good outcome, to ensure that we get a good outcome. The leader of the opposition can walk into this chamber and say, buy it, buy it. Well, how much does the leader of the opposition think we should pay for these two blocks of land?
Councillor, Councillor Cassidy.
How much does the leader of the opposition, the leader of the opposition, think that we should invest in this block of land? We are being sensible, we are being sensible, we are being considerate. There is a process, he knows full well, full well that the opportunity for the proponent of the development can take through the Planning Environment Court. We are challenging it, we are fighting it tooth and nail in the Planning Environment Court. We will continue to do that, but always remember, Mr Chair...
Councillor Griffiths.
Let us always remember, Mr Chair, that the reason that these blocks of land are going through the Planning and Environment Court is because the state labour government chose not to call the development in.
Further debate on items C, D or E?
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you.
It is appalling that I have to sit here and listen to the leader of the opposition calling councillors on this side of the chamber liars. Could you please ask him to stop?
Councillors...
Councillor Davis did lie.
Oh, councillor, councillor Cassidy. You can express an opinion. Point of order to you councillor Davis. Sorry, I'll deal with that point of order. Councillor Cassidy, you need to be mindful of the language you use in this place and I'll remind you that there is no rules against protection from defamation in this place. Councillor Davis, point of order.
Claim to be, claim to be misrepresented.
Okay. Thank, to your point of order councillor.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you. Sorry, who's asking point of order now? Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I ask that those comments be withdrawn.
Yes. Councillor Cassidy, comments were made, shouted across the chamber, which the council has taken exception to. I ask you to withdraw those comments.
No, I believe councillor Davis intentionally lied. I can't, I won't withdraw, I'm sorry.
Well, councillor Davis, councillor has said she won't, he won't withdraw those comments. Councillor Davis, point of order.
Point of order, Mr Chair, I would ask whether that is an act of disorder.
Councillor, councillor Cassidy, I'll, I'll respond to that point of order councillor, councillor Davis. I, I ask you please to withdraw the word, the language that's been used because it's, exception has been taken, offence has been taken by the councillor.
Look, if you're going, if you're asking me to withdraw those comments, then I will. But I, I just maintain, I just maintain councillor Davis is deliberately, deliberately misled, not just the chamber, but also the people of Brisbane on that matter.
I am, I am asking you to withdraw that, those, those words, please. You have withdrawn, thank you. Going to move on with debate on items C, D and E. Is there any further debate? Councillor, councillor Murphy.
Mr Chair, look, I rise to speak on item D, the Integrated Mass Transit Services Contract Extension. And as the Lord Mayor said, this item seeks council's approval to enter into a new contract with Translink for Brisbane's bus services. We know Transport for Brisbane has been delivering services for Brisbane residents for ninety years and Brisbane City Council is the largest bus operator in Queensland and the city's major provider of public transport. We employ two and a half thousand drivers servicing over two hundred regular routes and another two hundred district routes. And as I've said on many occasions, Mr Chair, in Brisbane, two-thirds of public transport passengers use the bus. Before COVID nineteen, we were taking about eighty million trips on our bus network. So a very significant, very substantial part of Brisbane's public transport system. And, you know, we, we need to keep this in context statewide as well because it's state budget day today. The Brisbane bus network moves more passengers each year than the entire rail network in south-east Queensland. So, you know, outside of Brisbane as well. We have a rapidly growing population and demand for public transport services is only going to increase in our cities. So we need to continue to invest in that network to meet the travel demands of Brisbane's future population and employment growth. And as the state government through Translink is the authority for public transport, we operate bus services under a contract with the state. Now, our current contract will expire at the end of this month, so we've been working hard behind the scenes for some time to finalise an agreement moving forward. And as you can see from the item before us, we have agreed a further extension of the current third generation contract for a period of up to two years or until such a date as metro services come online. Now, we were initially thinking that we'd be working towards a new contract altogether, Mr Chair, a fourth generation contract. Mr Chair, a fourth generation contract, but ultimately we've agreed on a contract extension with a view to working together on some of the impending changes to our bus network, which have not yet been finalised. This contract extension maintains the same core elements of the existing contract, but there are a couple of new items specifically called out in the agreement, and I'll just talk to those briefly. As we know, the current third generation contract does not cover operation of metro services, so this extension will include provision for the development of appropriate agreements with Translink on the commencement of metro services. We also know that the state has announced the purchase of all new buses in South East Queensland will be zero emissions from 2025, so this administration is of course very supportive of that concept, being a leader in decarbonisation of transport. But there are a number of logistical, technical and importantly, financial issues that need to be resolved before that can take place. We have been trying for some time, as I mentioned during question time today, to get clarity from the state around bus procurement requirements and a commitment to them to assist in the substantial funding uplift in the transition from diesel to electric, but that detail has still not been provided. So this contract extension calls out the need for us to continue working with Translink on the implementation of the state's target. We'll of course be working on a formal business case, which we will submit to Translink in the very near future on electrification, as I mentioned, of two depots, Sherwood and Tewong. Of course, the funding provided in this third generation Translink contract does not fully cover the cost of operating public transport services in our city. That will continue to be supported by council's operating subsidy, and there'll be more to talk about in respect of that on, on budget day and in the budget debates in the days to come. This contract also contains our agreements for special services like the blue and maroon city gliders. Can I thank the officers, particularly the officers in Transport for Brisbane, the commercial and contracts team, ably led by the wonderful Sue Phillips for their years of hard work on this item? We're very pleased to be able to reach this mutual agreement with Translink so we can continue to provide vital services for Brisbane residents. Mr Chair, just before I wrap up, I just, I couldn't let go some of councillor Cassidy's comment in his opening debate on this, and he, as usual, went around the world on metro and introduced a few new, well, I won't say the L-word, Chair, but I will say, these are the opposite of truth, the direct opposite to truth. So he said metro services won't start until 2025. Not true. They will commence in 2024. He said metro was, he said metro was $1 billion over budget. That, that's wrong. We know that the metro budget did increase to $1.24 billion after 18 months of delays introduced by the state government in procurement and execution of the project. And then the project budget did increase by $450 million because we are including the Gabba Metro Station in that figure to arrive at the final figure of $1.7 billion. Reminding you, Chair, reminding the chamber, Mr Chair, through you, that the Gabba Metro Station being a very significant part of that project and being supported by all three levels of government, federal, council and state is a $450 million component, not entirely delivered by council. That part of the project is state-led. He said we had no plan around transition to electric vehicles. Well, it wasn't our target, it is a state target, and of course, in terms of transition to electric vehicles, this council is leading the way with the game-changing, award-winning Brisbane Metro, the largest bus electrification project in the country. So I, I, I don't accept that he, that what he said, that we have no plan around that. Certainly where the state has set a target, it should be up to the state to provide the appropriate goalposts for us to reach in terms of getting there. He also said that the Volgren facility was the most advanced in the world, as if council had nothing to do with it. Council actually built the facility with Volgren out at Eagle Farm together with them. So I just wanted to correct that. Also in terms of industry capacity, don't believe what I'm saying, believe what your Labor colleagues in the state government are saying around transport, around industry's capacity to deliver electric buses in Queensland. He also said the opposite of the truth when he said we tended for tram-looking buses. The reality is the metro performed the best in terms of performance requirements, in terms of price and non-price criteria in what was an open market tender, in which there were three shortlisted vehicles, and the metro, the Hess light tram, actually performed the best. So we got the best product and it had nothing to do with how it looked, Chair. He also said the opposite of truth when he said metro would carry 2,000 passengers per hour. The reality is, we all know, metro will carry 6,050 passengers per hour increase to the busway, Chair. So I hope councillor Cassidy is listening at the budget information sessions this week and has plenty of good questions to ask me, but I also hope that he has some retained knowledge, and when I give him those answers, that he keeps them in mind when he comes into this chamber and uses some pretty crazy dates, pretty crazy figures and costs and indeed passenger numbers for Brisbane Metro. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thanks, Chair.
Is there any further debate on items C, D or E? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, just briefly with respect to item D, the mass transit service contract. The way I read this is, this is like a, a get out of jail free card for the LNP because it's very clear, and it has been right since the beginning of the metro project, that council was going to do what it wanted to do without any consideration of other levels of government, service agreements, what land they owned, what right of way we had, and so on. And the metro, as the transport chair has just outlined, has doubled in cost, not because of other people's incompetence, but because of this LNP's incompetence. I mean, this thing was thought up on the back of an envelope in the lead-up to an election. The LNP have proposed all manner of different routes and, you know, options, and went ahead and let contracts to deliver it on somebody else's land, on state government land that impacted on public facilities like busways and Q-PAC. I mean, the incompetence that has been shown in the way this project has been run is staggering, and that all comes from the top, councillor Murphy, the Lord Mayor, Deputy Mayor and all the other LNP chairs who have just tick, 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 tick this dodgy project from the beginning. And here, it turns out that another component of that is apparently we've gone and bought all these buses, very, very, very expensive European overseas buses, which we don't actually have any agreement with the state government to fund to run. So we're now going cap in hand, and you've heard, you've heard the Chair, you know, earlier in question time, he was like Mark Bailey's the devil or a clown. I'm not sure which way he was going really this morning, but today, oh, Translink, we love you, Translink, because what this is, is an admission that Brisbane City Council has a massive, massive problem, which is it's got a hugely expensive contract to buy 60 European buses, and it has no agreement with the state government to fund their running. Now, basically, we put a hail mary clause into the new service agreement, and we're going to go cap in hand. Councillor Murphy has to go cap in hand to Mark Bailey and go, oh, Mark, I really love you, mate. I'm really sorry I've been mean to you publicly, but we're going to need some money to run our buses. Yeah, you know those buses.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Right, thank you.
You know, those buses that we went and bought and that we're going to run through your busways, we didn't ask you about or get your permission to do, or guess what? We also now need your retrospective permission to fund them so we can run them. So, I mean, it, it, it's, it's, I mean, the Lord Mayor, he'll get up and insult me, you're not an engineer, what would you know? But I did work for Australia's largest engineering company for five years, and the CEO always used to say, good projects get better and bad projects get worse. And this is absolutely the role goal example of a bad project that is just getting worse and worse and worse. So I'm fairly certain, of course, that councillor Murphy will go in there with his, with a demure smile on his face, oh, Mark, mate, mate, we really need some money from Translink to run our buses. And you watch, you can't, you can't believe what they say, you watch what they do. I mean, this project is just getting worse and worse, and now it turns out we've got to have this hail mary clause in this contract just so we can get the operational phase of these buses being funded from Translink. Well, good luck with that, and I'm quite certain that that's going to go really well for you, councillor Murphy. I hope you enjoy having to suck up to Mark Bailey so you can get the money you need to run this project.
Your point of misrepresentation, councillor.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Councillor Johnson said that I would be having to go cap in hand, and Mark Bailey had asked for the money to run Brisbane Metro. Very clearly, as I said in the information sessions, when she asked about it last year, we will be funding the uplift required to operate Brisbane Metro as part of council's bus operating subsidy for the city.
Thank you. Is there any further debate on items C, D or E? Any further debate? Lord Mayor, summing up?
I had to step out for a little bit, but it seems I didn't miss much. The reality is, the, the reality is, it was.
Councillors, please.
The reality is, Labor councillors continued to oppose development, continued to oppose good projects and made lots of stuff up. So it's another Tuesday in Brisbane City Council. The reality is, what we're seeing here is Labor opposing the creation of 3,800 new homes in an LNP ward, mind you, in an LNP ward. What we're seeing here is Labor selectively deciding that they like some parts of development, but not others, that they want to listen to residents sometimes, but not others. For example, when residents say they don't want townhouses in low-density areas, Labor doesn't like that, and they were quite happy to see the state government come in and force townhouses in low-density areas. They were actually delighted to see that. But we know that you won't find bigger NIMBYs than Labor and the Greens, and week in, week out, they prove that to be the case. And thankfully, we have a sensible council in administration here that actually supports new houses for people that need them. But, you know, that is certainly not a given. There could be an alternative scenario where your council is run by the NIMBYs. And I saw you look up, Mr Chair, I know that concerns you, and it would no doubt concern the people of Brisbane, because that would see less and less housing provided.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yes, the Lord Mayor should not be talking about council offices like that.
Not too sure what the point was.
He just, he just called them nitwits. I don't think that's appropriate, is it?
Oh, okay, councillor Johnson thinks that council officers run the council. Oh, okay, fair enough. Well, the council runs the council, and this council, are the people sitting here. The people who are elected to run the council run the council.
Councillor Johnston, please stop calling out. Councillor Johnston!
Anyway, there are no NIMBY council officers that I'm aware of, but there's plenty of NIMBY councillors to my right, and they, they out themselves every week without fail. When it comes to public transport, though, it's, it's classic to hear councillors railing against those terrible Swiss metro vehicles. What, yeah, I mean, if you ask the average person on the street, do you think that we should buy the best metro vehicles in the world or maybe the second best or third best? What would they say? What would they say? They would say buy the best. They would say buy the best. And if you ask them, maybe Swiss metro vehicles, is that a good thing or a bad thing? I don't know, but I think they're barking up the wrong tree here, Mr Chair, because the, the game-changing.
Councillor Cassidy, please.
The game-changing Brisbane metro pilot vehicles are literally causing excitement throughout the public transport industry, not just locally, but around the world, around the world. But that's okay. Councillor Cassidy wants us to, wants us to, without a competitive tender, give a contract to a local company who, when we went out to competitive tender, couldn't provide what we needed. That's what he would like us to do. And that was his position even, even after he found out that Translink agrees that local manufacturers can't deliver what we're asking them to deliver. But never worry about the facts when councillor Cassidy gets up to speak, because they never form part of his speaking points. It is always just a political line, never based on any fact or truth, but I digress. The point is, this contract will see us providing a continuation of public transport services and the subsidy that we provide, and also progressing towards Brisbane Metro, which will truly revolutionise the way people move around this city. So it's an exciting time, we're continuing to invest more and more in public transport, and with item E, we're also continuing to make sure there is more and more housing supply available to be built in our city, in places that it is appropriate. And it is very disappointing that we will see Labor and the Green councillors oppose the provision of 3,800 new homes.
Thank you. We now move to the vote on these items. Item C, first item C, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We now move to the vote on item D. Item D, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Move to the vote on item E. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Landers and the deputy mayor, please ring the bells. Eyes to the right, nose to the left. Thanks, Billy Close, the judge. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour, five against and two abstentions.
He is carried. Deputy Mayor, Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report, please.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee held on Tuesday, the 6th of June 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton, but the report, the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 6th of June 2023, be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Firstly, what's on in the Business Hub for the next week? There's a thing on every couple of days, many things on this week, but I encourage you to share the information around these project, these workshops that are on the next week, the neuroscience of success, what would you do if you knew you would succeed, by our supporters Neuro Trust Institute, your simple guide to developing a sustainable and high-performing team, tips to create a happy and high-performing environment by Jody Cottle, a BDO masterclass, obviously by BDO, on forecasting your financials, building inclusive cultures by the Multicultural Professional Network, and the 2023 Asia-Pacific City Summit and Mayor's Forum Opportunities, which is being supported by the Irma team that are running the 2023 APCS, is on on the 20th from 9:30 in the morning as well. So lots on this week, on top of all the other, just drop in and network opportunities, please share them. And that's a nice segue to the APCS, the Asia-Pacific City Summit, which is on in October this year, and councillors will be getting their invites coming to their inboxes very shortly, and I'm delighted to announce that we've secured Charles Montgomery as the keynote speaker for this year's APCS. He's an award-winning Canadian author and urbanist, best known for his acclaimed books, The Last Heathen and Happy City. That combine investigative reporting with true stories to explore the connection between culture, science, design and human wellbeing. So, as I said, 11th to the 13th of October in Brisbane, bringing city and business leaders from around the world together to share knowledge, experience and develop partnerships. Over those three days, we're expecting more than 1,000 delegates from more than 140 cities to join us. It'll be the 14th APCS and the ninth time it's held in Brisbane. To the report we have last week, we just saw then that we didn't support 3,800 houses in Richmond Downs. I don't expect they have changed their minds over the Karilpa TLPI. But let's be very clear. The, the Karilpa TLPI is an appropriate response to the current housing crisis. And we've been told time and time again through you, Mr Chair, I'm sure, Lord Mayor, that we have to find a solution. Well, we are offering the solutions and the one way that you can fight demand is by providing supply. And this is an appropriate response to the current housing crisis. There's several measures designed to improve the viability of the sites in the precinct as well as increasing housing diversity and affordability as well. In the midst of this full-scale housing crisis, this would deliver much-needed housing supply, as I said. Excuse me, very dry throat. And it is around the changing and emerging planning issues we see in the city. We've got many, many people moving in and we need to make sure that we go anti-sprawl. We don't see this lovely definition that's come out of the South East Queensland Regional Plan called gentle density. Gentle density. Now, that's going to be an interesting definition. I think it's more, more of the Sawley six-pack is what they're talking about. And as we used to say in the sardine suburbs, double the driveways, halve the trees. That is not what we want to see from our administration. We want to see up, not out. Now, I might clarify through you, Mr Chair, that is the state government's labour plan because their plan is do nothing. Don't build in the suburbs, don't build in the city, don't know what ideas they have. This is the ALP state government's plan of gentle density. However, we're about making sure that you put the density in where the infrastructure is actually already and can be improved even more so. And I recommend the TLPI to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? Councillor Johnson.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on this item, which is not actually the TLPI. We've had the debate on the TLPI. And I, I may refer to it, but we've ventilated that quite well. But it's very sad to see the LMP doubling down on their decision to put more Brisbane residents in harm's way and more residents that will experience the devastating impacts of flooding around Brisbane by jamming them in to inappropriate living spaces in the Karilpa Peninsula. I just rose to speak very briefly on this issue of Brisbane Sustainable Growth Strategy and the idea that the deputy mayor and the lord mayor and others promote that Brisbane, this council, and I'll go with the LMP for now because they run the majority here. The LMP wants to provide a sufficient supply of well-designed housing, quote, "in the right location". Now, that's the issue I'd like to just speak briefly about first. The Lord Mayor has said over and over and over again recently, it's become his new mantra, that we should be going up and not out. And that the deputy mayor's reported that here again today. What is actually happening under this Lord Mayor's administration of Brisbane City Council? And as we've heard, he runs the council. He said it very clearly here today. It's not the officers doing this, it's him, he runs the council. Brisbane City Council out my way, and clearly in the deputy mayor's area, is about to knock down land that is mapped as koala habitat and trees, going to knock down trees in land that is mapped as koala habitat, in land that we map and the state maps as being of high biodiversity significance. And the decision to do this is all happening in the suburbs. So my question to the deputy mayor, of course, because this is happening in our own backyard, a block with one house on it is going to be converted into a bunch of townhouses. And I've had a look at it because it has similar zoning to the one in Corinda that is problematic from my point of view. It is shocking to see that the Lord Mayor, the deputy mayor and the LNP chairs who run this council, as we've been told today, are prepared to see areas of significant biological diversity with lots of vegetation, koala habitat, knocked down for houses. But here we are, they said, they say, and they say it over and over again, well-designed housing in the right locations.
Point of order, councillor.
I, I hear that councillor Johnson is talking about koala overlays and that doesn't appear to be in the presentation. Can you just ask through you, Chair, where this is in the presentation?
Councillor Johnson, would you mind providing evidence of where the koala mapping was in the presentation?
Yes, I'm pretty sure councillor Sutton hasn't read it, but I'm talking about paragraph four, which is Brisbane's Sustainable Growth Strategy. And I'm also talking about well-designed housing in the right location. I'm actually quoting directly from the document. Now, I'm talking obviously about what the LMP thinks well-designed housing in the right location is. And that's knocking down trees in middle suburban areas and removing.
Sorry, councillor Johnson, I've just had a quick peruse of councillor, sorry, paragraph four. There doesn't appear to be any mention of koala mapping in paragraph four.
I'm talking about Brisbane's Sustainable Growth Strategy. And I'm talking about, so on the second line, I'm talking about sufficient supply of well-designed housing in the right locations. Now, I am allowed to explore the right locations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because I've got more, it gets better. So we'll, we'll leave that for now because I don't think, let me just put on the record very clearly my views about that. I don't think the right location is knocking down trees, removing koala habitat and native vegetation to build houses. Now, in my area, it's zoned rural, in another area, it's not.
Point of mis, sort of, Mr Chair. This is about the Karilpa TLPI and the stretch that it refers to another strategy because that's where it came from, it's not the intent of the report.
Councillors, councillors, enough. All right, enough. Councillor Johnson, can you please come back to the report, please?
Yeah, I'm definitely talking about what's in the report. And just to be clear for all those following along at home, the report's called Inner City Economy Addressing Housing Insecurity and Supply. And I'm talking about paragraph four, which is Brisbane Sustainable Growth Strategy. Now, up until now, they've been very proud of Brisbane Sustainable Growth Strategy. They've been wanting to talk it up. But the outcome of this strategy is this council says it is going to supply well-designed housing in the right locations. Now, what would those right locations, would, would they be? Would you think that in an area marked for low to medium-density residential development, would some units on that site be acceptable? That's what it's zoned for. I think that's probably okay, right? I thought the five storeys pretty hard in Sherwood, but, you know, it's approved. There's five storeys coming. Not this LMP administration, in the middle of a housing crisis, they want to convert it to commercial. And now there's no demand for commercial. So they've rezoned through a material change of use, a site that is actually zoned residential, and now it's not being built on at all. And this is happening in blocks of land all over Brisbane, right through my ward, where we're seeing houses being removed from the supply and land that is zoned for residential housing being removed from supply to allow developers to upzone because it's cheaper for them to knock down a house and to build some sort of giant commercial monstrosity. Meanwhile, the suburban neighbourhood precincts can't get redeveloped because this LMP administration continues to allow inappropriate development contrary to the zoning in the city plan. The city plan was a debacle back in 2014. But since then, the LMP administration has just allowed developers in this city carte blanche. And now we have something called Brisbane Sustainable Growth Strategy, which isn't about the inner-city area because this is the dodgy document that is supposed to be changing the zoning out of Yorongah, not in the inner-city area. So this is where the LMP are trying to convert other parcels of land for other uses without consultation in the local community. So do I think this LMP administration is making any effort to promote well-designed housing in the right locations? No, I do not. The Karilpa precinct, not the right housing in the right location. The White Hill Reserve townhouses in koala habitat, not the right housing in the right location.
Councillor Johnson, sorry, I, I do need to interrupt. Can you please come back to the report?
Yes.
Please, because under paragraph five, it actually lists the suburbs that are identified under the strategy. Can you please come back to the report?
Yeah, no, but that, that's not, the strategy is much more broader than that.
We're not debating this, I have asked you to come.
Mr Deputy Chair, if you don't know what's in the strategy.
Councillor Johnson, you know full well, you should not be speaking when I speak. I'm asking you to come back to the report, please.
Yes, and I'm speaking about the Brisbane Sustainable Growth Strategy. It includes the things I am talking about here today. And just continue by saying, it's not appropriate to knock down trees in koala habitat in Corinda, in White Hill. It's not appropriate to knock down, it's not appropriate to knock down units or allow commercial to be built in areas that are zoned residential. That is not well-designed housing in the right locations. It's not. And this LMP administration, as I said, they botched city plan. The Brisbane Sustainable Growth Strategy is, it's, it's a poor document. I don't even know what to say. Like every other planning document the LMP put out, it, it really lacks an understanding of the impact on the city. There's platitudes in there that make it sound good, but they're certainly not delivering, as they say, well-designed housing in the right locations. Well-designed housing in the right locations would meet minimum standards under Brisbane City Plan. Do you know how often Brisbane City Council relaxes? That was a question on notice I had from a few weeks ago. Thousands of relaxations given by Brisbane City Council for setbacks and knocking down trees, thousands and thousands of them. This LMP administration have such a poor track record when it comes to putting well-designed houses into the right locations. And unfortunately, they've been completely captured by the development industry. And these are not, as they say, anti-sprawl measures because they're allowing the sprawl. These are not allowing things to go up, but not out because it's impacting everywhere in the outer suburbs. And these are not appropriate responses. Knocking down trees in areas of high biological significance, mapped under the Koala Corridor, is not an appropriate response to any kind of housing needs in Brisbane.
Councillor Johnson, your time has expired. Is there any further debate? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair.
My pleasure.
Just a few things that I'd like to talk about. We talked about a bit last week. But there are some things that we should get on the public record in this presentation. The TLPI relies heavily on Greenbridge accreditation, noting that the TLPI in this council could actually seek Green Star community status from the Green Building Council for the whole TLPI area, not just the buildings. Not just the buildings, but the public space as well. Ensuring that there was community consultation, clearly not an option. In relation to affordable housing, you know, the two out of the six community benefit benchmarks, noting developers only have to choose two, and they don't actually have to deliver on housing affordability anytime soon. One of the benchmarks is the development for multiple dwelling provides a minimum of 20 dwellings at the rent, at rents at least 10% below market price for the minimum of five years. If we break that down today, even though we noted that there would be no stock delivered, maybe for five or so years, the average rent in the Gabbar Ward, $680 through council profusely data source. What that means is 10% under the average, 600, 600 and something, unaffordable. Noting in 2021, there was a 7.3% rental increase. Noting in 2022, there was an 11.4% rental increase. So when these houses are ready, they're definitely not going to be affordable. I just wanted to touch base also on the item about supporting community and wellbeing and livability. Last week, I talked about 3.5 hectares. Here we are, there it is, the three, four, five hectares that I talked about. Interestingly, though, it's not mentioned that 1.3 hectares is already within the local government infrastructure plan for delivery, 2021 to 2026, for the current population of Karilpa, meaning the actual delivery of this TLPI will only deliver 2.2 hectares of new green space because it's already set for delivery. And that's for maybe 20,000 people, a five-times increase for the population in Karilpa. I'll also touch base on the fact that the current, again, the current local government infrastructure plan has a local community centre and a library extension already in there for delivery, 2021 to 2026. The deputy mayor mentioned this last year as a part of a new delivery by this TP, TLPI last week, when in fact it's been there since 2020, sorry, 2016, seven years. So I just want to get that on the public record about this TLPI presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Massey. Are there any further speakers? I see no one rising and the deputy mayor is not here. We will now put the report. All those favour in item A, well, it's the only one anyway, say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division seconded.
We have division called by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton. Please ring the bells. Eyes to my right and nose to my left, councillors. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 24 in favour and one against.
Councillors, please resume your seat. Move on to the Transport Committee. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 6th of May, 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Owen that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 6th of June, 2023, be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Look, as I said earlier in the afternoon, we want to put our best foot forward when it comes to the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. And part of this will be done through our draft Walkable Brisbane Strategy, which was presented to committee last week. Initiatives such as council's award-winning Active School Travel Programme already encourage residents to stay active and healthy. And the Walkable Brisbane Strategy expands on our commitment to supporting active travel. The strategy has been designed to support transport connections and enhance livability in Brisbane by addressing some of the barriers to current walking routes and improving pedestrian access, connectivity, capacity and amenity through our network of footpaths. It aims to enable residents and visitors to move around the city safely and easily, making walking a viable and effective travel choice. The strategy includes six principles to help Brisbane become a more walkable city. Comfort and enjoyment, connectivity and legibility, safety, inclusivity, fit for purpose and inform. Now, combined with council's largest ever investment in public and active transport in the current financial year, we hope that this strategy will enable more people to choose to walk as part of their commute for exercise and recreation as the various actions unfold over the coming years. Through this strategy, we will implement a. Through this strategy, we will implement a variety of creative and practical measures that will address each of the six principles outlined. Measures like retrofitting shade to council assets to improve comfort and enjoyment, more inclusive processes when it comes to footpath construction, speed limits for shared paths to protect vulnerable users like pedestrians, and planting more street trees for shade and cooling effects rather than just for visual amenity. And Mr Chair, council is not only making changes on path, but we're also making changes to the way we plan and design the walking infrastructure in the city's footpath network. The strategy includes a focus on enhanced data collection and analysis through targeted education programmes such as travel behaviour in order to improve pedestrian access, connectivity, capacity and amenity. The committee was shown council's five-year action plan with council's short-term goals to be achieved over a one- to two-year period and medium goals over a three-to-five-year period. It also contains ongoing goals that will direct the strategy into the future. For residents that may be listening, council is now seeking your feedback on the strategy and how you think we can make Brisbane more walkable. Community consultation opened on the 1st of June and will be open for residents to have their say via an online survey on council's website until the end of July, the 27th of July, to be precise. And I'm happy to report, Mr Chair, that in the first week of consultation on Walkable Brisbane, this council has received over 250 submissions already. So that is a fantastic outcome. Lot of people interested in how we make our city more walkable and how we ensure that we are investing to achieve those goals. It's already received support from peak walking and cycling organisations like Bicycle Queensland and Queensland Walks, with the latter calling the strategy a move in the right direction. Queenslanders with a Disability Network has also welcomed the strategy's release, noting the opportunity for council to help shape the future of the city. I'm extremely excited to see the early feedback from the community, and of course, that will inform the final version of the strategy and the various funding arms that will fall off that as we go into another pre-budget exercise for Walkable Brisbane. This will help us set the standard on how we will make walking a viable travel choice for the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games and even further beyond. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you councillor Murphy. councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Deputy Chair. And obviously councillor Murphy is very proud of this strategy, all 48 pages of it, that is presented with all those glossy pictures and interesting points that he's pulled out of it for his contribution today. But what is interesting about the strategy, the draft strategy before us, is that what it does do is it lists all of the LNP's failures. It does that quite well, if you read through those pages. It's laid pretty bare about all of the problems, about how unwalkable Brisbane is and all of the things that need to be overcome to address those issues of access and inclusion in the suburbs of Brisbane. So the strategy does talk a lot about problems when it comes to how walkable, accessible, inclusive Brisbane is, problems that have come to light due to the inaction of successive transport, public transport, public and active transport, chairs, of which the Lord Mayor was one and councillor Murphy is another now. We launched our mobility, relaunched our mobility plan on the weekend, and in one page, that one page there, that is more ambitious and more forward-thinking than the 48 pages of councillor Murphy's draft plan. The draft strategy tells us that, and what it says is some streets, this is from the strategy, some streets in Brisbane don't have footpaths. The figure that they are scared to put in print, but comes from them, comes from the administration, is that there are 6,183 streets in Brisbane that don't have any formed footpath at all. It's 41% of the streets in Brisbane have no formed footpath at all. Another few thousand, I think it's 25 or 2600 streets, have incomplete footpaths. So if you walk down the street, you get a little bit on concrete, bit on grass, bit on concrete, bit on grass. People are forced to walk down the road. The draft strategy also tells us, very helpfully of course, that separation for pedestrians, separation from traffic, help creates safer walking experiences, but offers no details on how this administration hopes to get us to that nirvana of walking. So thank you to councillor Murphy for laying that out so beautifully for us today, that pedestrians and cyclists don't mix well with traffic. They've come to this, taken them to 2023 to come to that realisation as well, and we've seen some devastating effects of that over the last few years. We spoke to people with lived experience in trying to get around some of Brisbane's suburbs and how difficult that is, and what they think there needs to be to improve the walkability of our suburbs and our neighbourhoods. So I guess the question is why produce this draft strategy when there are no concrete actions associated with it as well, no funding commitments? What we heard last week in the presentation from councillor Murphy is that this strategy is just that. It's, we have to, we have to just, you know, on a hope and a prayer, wait for the Lord Mayor's budget to come down to see if anything will be funded. And we do that each and every year, and perhaps, you know, expect something different to happen each year and to see the massive backlog, the 2,200, what is it, 2,221 broken footpaths to be fixed, to have an end date on them, when only 24 do, to see some serious investment in rolling out footpath infrastructure. I think last year was just 80 new footpaths. That's going to take a very long time to chip away at those, that 6,183 streets that don't have a footpath at all. So why produce this document if there are no concrete actions in terms of delivery? It's almost as if councillor Murphy's produced this document not realising that they're in charge, that they can actually do something about it. So councillor Murphy's gone through this process of producing a 48-page document and outlining all of the bad things and how unwalkable Brisbane is, but forgetting that he sits around that cabinet table with the Lord Mayor and makes the political decisions about where our resources are allocated in council. You know, since the Lord Mayor came to office just a couple of years ago, we know that he's jacked up rates 12.5%. We have to see what that'll be added to tomorrow, but we haven't seen a massive increase in basic services in our suburbs in terms of walkability and footpaths. And the Lord Mayor said, he shouted out at councillor Johnston earlier, I'm not sure if you picked up this one, but he said, why don't you just use your SEF funding to fix those footpaths? That's what he said. The Lord Mayor said, just use your SEF funding. So the Lord Mayor allocates a static amount and has for the last four or five years and even longer, it largely hasn't gone up. And out of that money, a few years ago, the Lord Mayor said that, you know, councillors were expected to invest in community and sporting clubs with that money, as well as parks and new footpaths and roads and safe crossing points and build-outs and splitter islands and things that should be done under a capital budget. And now the Lord Mayor is saying today in the council chamber that he thinks that that suburban enhancement fund money, which was originally designed to deliver new footpaths, should be spent by councillors on fixing broken footpaths. So he's outsourcing, he's outsourcing the reporting of broken footpaths and the assessment of how walkable our footpaths are to the residents of Brisbane, in saying if the residents don't report a broken footpath and they trip on it, it's their fault, basically. That's the position of the LNP. And he's also now saying, the Lord Mayor, the position of the LNP is that there won't be any increase in capital funding for footpaths and footpath repairs, you just do it out of a measly $500,000 per ward.
No idea.
No idea. It's absolutely crazy, and there's, maybe there's some massive disconnect that clearly is between the deputy mayor and the Lord Mayor now. Serious cracks are appearing there. Maybe there's a huge disconnect between all the chairs and the Lord Mayor. I don't know, maybe councillor Cunningham has more of a direct line to the Lord Mayor now. Maybe they have a better working relationship in terms of developing the budget, they're not talking to their fellow chairs about what is needed in delivering basic services in the suburbs. It's all getting very interesting, all of that. But Labour's, you know, the LNP are not very good at listening, we know that. So we'll put this very clearly on the public record, that we do need, we do need a big increase when it comes to funding of new footpaths. We need, we need a Chair of the Transport Committee who oversees the building of a more walkable Brisbane to be a genuine advocate in going and rattling occasions, instead of saying to the Lord Mayor, well, here's a strategy, please fund it if you wish or not. Labour's commitment's very clear, as we've worked with users, with disability advocates, with people who are trying to teach their kids how to ride their bike for the first time on their local streets in a safe way, pushing prams down the streets. We need to see a serious uplift in investment. An additional $20 million a year over and above what is currently committed would deliver, would deliver 200 kilometres of new extra footpaths over the next four years, and an additional $5 million a year would knock off those 2,200 broken and dangerous footpaths that are plaguing our neighbourhoods right around Brisbane. So the Chair can get up, you know, councillor Murphy can get up and laugh away at it and talk about Jim Sawley and just, and keep saying, nobody cares, nobody cares. Well, people do care out in the suburbs. You know, the lady who's in her 80s who tripped and fell on La Selle Street in Brighton and cracked her cheekbone and had black eyes, had lacerations down her shins, she cared. She cared about those footpaths being safe. To the family of the lady who tripped on a council footpath out the front of the Sandgate senior citizens and died, they care. They care councillor Murphy. So, you know, council should be a level of government that has its highest priority on service delivery in the suburbs. It shouldn't be a joke like the LNP treated, and we have, we have a rock-solid commitment to this. Yeah, they can giggle away over there, but, you know, that's fine. Labour has a rock-solid commitment to service delivery in the suburbs, and that will be very, very clear, and there'll be a very clear difference come March next year.
Is there any further debate? councillor Johnson.
Oh yes, thank you so much. I rise to speak on item A, the Draft Walkable Brisbane Strategy. I'd like to just start by saying that this is probably the greatest work of fiction that Brisbane City Council has ever produced. And I, and I genuinely mean this, I have never read a document that is more disconnected from the reality of what is happening in Brisbane, on the streets, in the paths, in the parks and all around Brisbane than what is said in this strategy versus what's happening on the ground. It is an absolute fiction. It's a beautifully written fiction. It's a bit like Hans Christian Andersen's fairy tale. I mean, it looks beautiful, but this document bears no resemblance to reality in any way, shape or form. Brisbane's own report states that walking is one of often most overlooked modes of transport. Yes, by Brisbane City Council. Yes. So let's go back and start. In 2018, Brisbane produced an absolutely hollow transport plan, and that transport plan was supposed to produce a walking strategy for Brisbane. Five years later, here it is, in a draft. And guess what? There are two, one to two-year short-term, they're not even projects or programmes. I mean, there's some sort of concept ideas, and I'll get to those in a minute, but there's some short-term objectives, I'll say objectives, in one to two years. Do any of them include building new footpaths? No. Do any of them include building new shed pathways? Do any of them include building zebra crossings, wombat crossing, refuges, bridges to help people cross their local creeks or culverts? No, 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 no. There's actually not a single practical thing in this report before us today. Instead, the short-term actions that are in here, we're going to do a survey and we're going to look at developing a plan. Well, great, good for you. Here's some feedback for councillor Murphy. Back in sort of 2017 and 18, Brisbane did a very good piece of work called Move Safe, and it asked Brisbane residents where the problems were in their neighbourhoods. So that's six years ago, five to six years ago. They asked Brisbane residents where the problems were, and the Brisbane residents spoke up. They dropped PIMS, they geo-tagged on the map where the problems were. Have we seen anything delivered out of that? No, we haven't. It gets better, because the strategies here go on to talk about, here's some of the things that they talk about, and councillor Murphy raised some of them. There's going to be more public art. That's great. We've got, now we've got Kindy Active Travel. That's great. I'm sure all the mums who can barely push their prams over the dodgy footpaths out in the suburbs are going to be thrilled by being told by LNP councillors to push their kids to school, to Kindy, and then on to school and to work. Good for you, you must be very proud of what you're doing. Apparently, we want to have safer spaces, so we need lighting. I mean, a good starting point might be to save funds, some of the lighting projects that have been waiting for decades to be funded. I mean, in my ward alone, there'd be at least half a dozen, and I'm sure every other councillor has some as well. But maybe they're so out of touch in this LNP administration that all their wards are lit up like Christmas trees, and they think it's easy to get around, because it's not. It gets better. So, so important is this strategy to, oh, forgot the shade trees, forgot the shade trees, yeah, forgot the shade, that was great. There's no footpaths, but there's going to be shade trees, so that's excellent. Thanks for that. I just wanted to put on the record, because obviously I do talk to some people from time to time, and it is very interesting to note how the LNP announced this project. Do you think they stood side by side somewhere where new footpaths were needed, or did they do anything that was going to promote the idea of active transport? Do you know what they did? They went out and stood with the RACQ, Queensland's Royal Automobile Club. Royal Automobile Club. So to announce the Walkable Brisbane Strategy, councillor Murphy stood up, stood up with the Car Club of Queensland, not Queensland Walks. They weren't invited to his press conference slash project launch, and he announced the strategy. I can see why he didn't want Queensland Walks there, because it's not far from endorsing his proposal. Queensland Walks has been quite scathing, in fact. They, they have, they have said, why would BCC launch a strategy and not invite your peak pedestrian advocacy organisation? But instead, a vehicle-based lobby group. I think that's a good question, don't you? I would have thought that if you're announcing a walking strategy, your walking groups might be invited. But no, this strategy talks about speed limits and bikes and e-mobility. Not a single word in here is about building new footpaths or footpath-related infrastructure. I don't think the word zebra crossing appears in it. The word wombat crossing does not appear in it. The word refuge does not appear in it. The word green walk signal does not appear in it. This is a walking strategy without any walking, infrastructure plans, projects, funding, deliverables, KPIs. It is a dreamlike work of fiction that is designed to look pretty and deliver nothing, Queensland Walks has actually called for $200 million for a pedestrian priority programme, and $20 million to be allocated to the Walking Brisbane Strategy. Now, there's no money attached to this. In fact, the only reference to money is the big lie, I'm going to call it the big lie, because councillor Murphy was exposed a few years ago through my questions in estimates, because he tried to blame councillor Marks, but councillor Marks was very clear, it wasn't her, it was him. They've stopped funding footpaths in the council budget. The only new footpaths they fund now are the safer school programme footpaths and replacing some footpaths that are damaged or broken. And as we've heard, the deputy mayor said, sorry, the opposition leader said, and the Lord Mayor was shouting it across the chamber earlier, we're supposed to be doing that as well now. Unfortunately, I have to, some of that bad. But what we're not seeing is any kind of- But what we're not seeing is any kind of action, deliverables, funding from this LMP administration. The big lie is they say they're investing $35 million into footpaths in Brisbane, but that actually conflates all the councillors' SEF, suburban enhancement funding and not footpath, dedicated footpath funding. The amount is much, much lower, it's just a few million dollars. And then they add the green bridges in and they claim it's much higher. But guess what? Out in the suburbs, you can wait over a decade for pedestrian infrastructure, in fact longer. Jane Prentis was the councillor when the refuge was sought outside Graceville State School. It's been over a decade since I've sought a zebra crossing outside Graceville Rail Station. We want wombats, we want refuges, we want green walk signals. Annalee Road and Noble Street, Annalee. I mean, how many people have to be hurt or killed before this administration will actually improve pedestrian facilities in Brisbane? Because this LMP administration, this tired, out of touch LMP administration with their massive majority have spent 20 years running the council. They've had five years to develop a coherent story about footpaths and improving walkability of Brisbane. And what have they come up with? We're going to put some street art in and we're going to put some shade trees in. There are no footpaths, there are no zebra crossings, there are no wombat crossings, you can't get across slip lanes. Move Safe gave you the blueprint to fix pedestrian safety in this city and this administration is ignoring it. Great example. When I raised pedestrian safety issues in a road project at Villa Street and Cracknell Road and Ipswich Road at Annalee and I raised pedestrian issues which had not been considered in the intersection upgrade, do you know what happened? Councillor McLaughlin stood up in this place and goes, oh, councillor Johnson's all opposed to it, we're going to cut the project.
Councillor Johnson, your time has expired. Councillor Johnson, thank you, your time has expired. Councillor Strunk?
Yes, thank you, thank you Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on this, on this item, this presentation. And the first thing, the first comment I would like to make of course is in regards to the title of the presentation, it should have been a draft Safe Walkable Brisbane Strategy. And I'll come to the reason I think that should have been part of the title of the presentation. So I want to tell a story and the story started a few months back when I was invited up to one of my local schools for a safe school travel programme that they were initiating, which is, it's not easy. As councillors know, on both sides of the chamber, it's really hard to get some of these schools because they're so time poor. But when it's really, really important that their students actually walk to school because the drop off and pick up is pretty chaotic in some schools, right? It just makes perfect sense. So, so we initiated the escape to travel and of course, council of course, did a fantastic presentation in the assembly. Jeez, we had performances, we had all sorts of things happening in the school and of course, the students were really, really up for it, right? They were going to come up with three walkable pathways through to the school. I wish they had chose the other two, but they chose the one which made sense to the school because it had good parking around the location and it was about a kilometre to the school, maybe a little bit less and it was going to be achievable for the students to, because these are primary school students of course. So I went off to the kickoff morning down at Elizabeth Bruce Park and we started down Japonica, oh sorry, down Japonica, up to Biota and then over to Rosemary Street where the school is. And I'll tell you what, yes, there was footpaths, but I'll tell you what, there wouldn't have been 20 metres and there was hundreds and hundreds of metres we, you know, we traversed, but there wouldn't have been 20 metres that was in good shape. The rest of it all needed to really be reconstructed. I mean, it was so badly cracked and undulating that even grinding was not going to make it safe. So I went back to the, went back to the office after being really embarrassed on behalf of the council that I had some footpaths that were this bad in my ward, that we booked the job. And finally, they came back to us and said, we haven't got the budget to fix that. And, you know, this is, you know, and I, you know, I, so I had to ring the school of course, tell them that, you know, who knows, maybe with the new budget coming down. But listen, if we got money to, to always cover our mosquito spraying, because they, there's no budget to that, well, when it comes to safe pathways to where we want to go, footpaths, there shouldn't be a budget either. It should just be done if it's dangerous. And council officers were out there within a day assessing and they just couldn't believe it either, how bad it was on those two streets. And one of those streets was in Biota Street, which was, we just had a skip done a couple of years ago. And why that wasn't included in the skip to reconstruct those footpaths is beyond me. There was also trees that were actually had grown into across the footpath, right? So that had to be done. There was some budget for that, I believe, to be fixed up because that was quite dangerous. But that's, that's, but we really just need to do something about these footpaths. So anyways, it was a wake up call for me because I said, I'm going to go around and have a look at all the streets around Elizabeth Bruce Park and gosh, there's going to be quite a lot of jobs coming through. I don't know how quickly because you guys just don't spend enough money on reconstruction, let alone building new footpaths, that, I don't know, it could take a decade before all these reconstructions because we're talking about a suburb that was kicked off, you know, back in the 50s and no work was been done. And of course, they're only about that wide because back then that was the, you know, the required width, but now it's 1.2. So it's just really sad and I was really embarrassed on behalf of this council, how bad that was because I could see the principle. She didn't, she wanted to be kind and she wanted to be nice and she wanted to be respectful and she didn't say too much about it, but some of the parents that were walking with me weren't so respectful in regards to the quality of what those kids had to walk on. And the kids were pretty nimble, but I tell you what, the adults, they had to be careful in some of those, some of that pathway through to the school. So I think a story really sometimes cements what we're not doing and what we should be doing. And we need to get more money in our trust funds if that's what it takes. I mean, I'm quite happy to do the work and scout around and get these jobs ready, you know, loaded up, give us the money to do it. But if you don't give us the money and you don't spend it yourself, what's the point? Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Is there any further speakers? Councillor Murphy, write a reply.
Yeah, thanks very much Chair, Deputy Chair, and I appreciate councillors having their say on this important item for our city. We know that footpaths and pathways are critical infrastructure when it comes to encouraging walking and they need to be connected for it to be continuous, safe and convenient. And this strategy does indeed speak a lot about that. We know that Brisbane has almost 5,000 kilometres of established footpaths and as I said in my answer to the question from councillor Griffiths before, no one has invested more in footpath infrastructure in the history of the city than this administration. We have invested a record $35 million in building new and improved footpaths in this financial year right across Brisbane. Just, just for context, because councillor Cassidy mentioned this figure of all these sort of streets that are on footpath, just 1,348 kilometres of council's network of 5,812 kilometres of roads don't have footpaths. So vast majority of our roads do in fact have footpaths. And we know that when we do surveys out there in the community, not all, not all residents in different streets want footpaths. And so, you know, if councillors opposite had read the strategy, they would understand that one of the issues that we are seeking to address in the strategy is how we address that issue of equity for people in terms of being able to access what I would call them and certainly what Queen's End Walks and others would call critical infrastructure for people to move around the city. How we address that issue of equity when it comes to people who don't want footpaths for perhaps, you know, amenity reasons or visual reasons, how we address that for people is an important part of the draft strategy. And, you know, councillor Cassidy, he was quite critical of different parts of the strategy in being, I think, you know, in fact, quite honest and open about our shortcomings when it comes to footpaths in the city, the way in which we procure them, the way in which we design them, the way in which we build them. I actually think that's what's great about this strategy. This is a strategy that doesn't actually seek to paper over what I think the shortcomings are in what we're doing today, but it sets about a course to take us forward as we head towards the Olympic and Paralympic Games in doing what we already do a lot better. Mr Chair, it's a shame that councillor Cassidy played politics with this strategy because I want to remind the chamber again that in the last Labour budget in 2003/4, they only spent $11 million on footpaths in Brisbane. And believe me, it showed, just over half of council's footpaths at that time were rated in a very good condition. Under the Sawley administration, more than 10% of our city's footpaths were in a shocking, appalling state. And since Lord Mayor, former Lord Mayor Graham Quirk was elected in 2011, council has lifted the good condition of footpaths to over 75% as of December last year. So these are some incredible turnarounds in terms of the condition of the asset of footpaths in this city. They claim that we're doing nothing, but the fact is that in every year of this administration, we have spent more money on footpaths than any year under Labour. I'm not just quoting, you know, one figure from the last year, they never spent more money than us on footpaths and in fact, it wasn't even close. So, you know, they like to say we've been around here for a long time and that we compare our record to our record, but the reality is people have a choice, don't they? Between a liberal administration that actually does invest in footpath infrastructure and a Labour administration who historically didn't. You know, so I can't compare, you know, a future councillor Cassidy, councillor Massey administration, what they might spend on footpaths because they haven't told us what they would do. In fact, actually councillor Cassidy, he criticised our 48 page policy. Well, he released a one box Twitter piece, which was Labour's mobility policy, which in fact said they would spend less money than we spend on footpaths. So, you know, for all, for all the criticism of our very big, bold strategy with pretty pictures, I mean, he didn't exactly try harder, did he Deputy Chair? He actually tried a lot less, a lot less hard. And, you know, but I do like to think Chair, that the officers did get something right with this Walkable Brisbane Strategy in that councillor Cassidy had not released any mobility plan for Brisbane. And then one week after we released Walkable Brisbane, out he came with that square image on Twitter, which was Labour's mobility.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
To be misrepresented.
Noted.
Well, okay, well, we will see. And finally, Chair, just really, Deputy Chair, just really quickly to some of councillor Johnson's comments, I won't address the bulk of her comments as she clearly has not read the strategy at all. But in terms of that announcement, she said we made the announcement with, you know, RACQ or something like that. We were actually making the announcement at one of our beautiful Kindy Active Travel Schools, which is part of the pilot programme that was down there at Hamlin Park where we made the announcement, where we have delivered a massive amount of pedestrian infrastructure in the last financial year. And, you know, here's the other thing Chair, she said, she said Queensland Walks has been really critical of the strategy online. Well, this is what they said about the strategy. A walking strategy is an important move by Brisbane City Council to identify the gaps in our walking networks and to plan ahead. We all want to see Brisbane become the most walkable and accessible city in Australia and the Walkable Brisbane Strategy will kickstart this process. So she said they've been really, really critical of the strategy, but that's, that's the quote. That's what they said about the strategy. So, you know, you, you know, I just, you know, people who listen to councillor Johnson's challenge, just be aware that you don't often hear the truth, you hear some sort of confected version of the truth or, you know, what she, what she thinks, you know, some of the short takes online from some anonymous accounts on Twitter. She goes, oh, that's what they said, but that's not actually what they said.
Point of order.
You can quote me, that's what they said.
Just one moment councillor Murphy. Councillor Johnson, your point of order.
Yeah, claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted. Councillor Murphy, you've got the call.
And then just finally, Chair from councillor Strunk, we've, you know, we actually had the same debate 12 months ago when he brought up, you know, lack of investment in footpaths. Well, what do you know, what did councillor Strunk spend this financial year just going on footpaths? Because I think last year it was 11%. Do you reckon he's improved on that this year? Would you believe he has, he has spent 5.6% of his SEF on footpaths this year? So, you know, he has actually managed to more than halve his expenditure on footpaths in his ward, which is a pretty big achievement actually Chair. So, you know, credit, credit to him and I commend the item to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Councillor Cassidy, your misrepresentation please.
Yeah, thanks very much Deputy Chair. The LMP's commitment, as what I said, and councillor Murphy misrepresented me on this, the LMP's commitment to footpaths is around $35 million a year. I've outlined Labour's, which is $60 million a year. And we first released our mobility plan in the first half of 2020. He might have just missed that though.
Thank you very much for keeping that concise. Councillor Johnson, your councillors please. Councillor Johnson, your misrepresentation.
Yes, unfortunately councillor Murphy has misrepresented me. He stated that I'd been relying on some sort of anonymous and fake, I think Twitter remarks. In fact, I was quoting directly from advice from the CEO of Queensland Walks.
Thank you very much.
And I think it's disrespectful to her that he has described her as fake.
Councillor Johnson.
And a troll.
Councillor Johnson.
Not appropriate.
Councillor Johnson, you do not go into debate on a misrepresentation, you just state the facts and then sit down. Thank you. We will now put the report, all those in favour of the Transport Committee report, say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee please.
Thanks Mr Chair. I just move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 6th of June 2023, be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Wines and possibly the last time by councillor Matic, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 6th of June 2023 be adopted. Councillor Wines, you've got the call.
Thank you Mr Chair. Can I begin by recognising councillor Matic and his outstanding contribution to our city? Pete has been a person I've known for, gosh, 20 years and his contribution to our city, our council and our party has been tremendous. I think it's fair to say, he demonstrated his commitment to the cause by running against the guns in Anala.
Point of order.
Some years ago.
Just one moment councillor Wines, point of order councillor Johnson.
Yeah, councillor Wines is allowed to speak about portfolio issues, but some sort of valedictory.
No, 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 councillor Johnson, you full well know that councillor Wines, being Chair of that committee, can speak to his committee. He can do that, thank you. And as councillor Matic is part of his committee.
He is the deputy of the committee.
He's the deputy chair.
And I can make mention of the great gratitude to my deputy. What an appalling, what an appalling attempt of silence.
Councillor Wines, councillor Wines, thank you. Councillor Wines, can you resume your seat as well? And I'll give you the call back. Councillor Johnson.
Mister Deputy Chair.
Councillor Johnson, you know full well, and I will say it again for the second time this afternoon, that you do not speak while I'm speaking. I have identified that councillor Matic has and is the Deputy Chair of the Infrastructure Committee and councillor Wines has the right to speak on members of his committee. Can you please resume your seat?
Mister Deputy Chair.
I have given you.
That's not what I want to talk about, I'm sorry. I'm rising on a point of order.
The councillor doesn't get to talk about anything, she can listen and then contribute.
Councillor Wines, just wait up. So can you please remake your point of order please? Your first point of order was about councillor Wines speaking about councillor Matic, the call's been made on that. Are you issuing a new point of order?
May I speak?
I would love you to.
Thank you. Mister Deputy Chair, if you're going to continue as the Chair of this council.
Are you making a point of order?
Yes, I can make a point of order, please.
All you need to do is say the words, Mister Deputy Chair, point of order. That's all you need to do.
May I speak?
Once you've said, can I make a point of order?
I've already done that.
No, you've done it once and we dismiss that point of order.
I'm not allowed to speak when you're speaking, but you.
You're not. Please say the words, point of order Deputy Chair.
May I speak?
Not until you say point of order.
I've said point of order.
You said it once and that point of order was disposed of. Are you rising for another point of order?
I've already said that I am.
Can you please say the word so I can hear them?
May I speak?
Councillor Johnson, please resume your seat.
I would like to speak to my.
Councillor Johnson, unless you are making a point of order, please resume your seat.
I have repeatedly said to you that I am making a point of order, but I'm not allowed to speak when you're speaking and you keep interrupting me, hence I'm stopping. to speak when you're speaking, and you keep interrupting me, hence I'm stopping speaking. May I speak?
On the point of order that you've risen to your feet to, yes.
Thank you. Mister Deputy Chairman, if you are going to continue as the Chair, I would appreciate it if you would allow me to make a point of order and not cut me off, so that you can make a ruling on that point of order, and you have refused to do that here today. I am very concerned that I'm not able to speak and raise these issues with you, and I would ask you to take that on board.
Thank you councillor Johnson, and I would remind you, it is protocol that when you do stand and rise to your feet, you do say the words, point of order. Thank you. Councillor Wines, you have the call.
Thank you Mister Deputy Chair. And can I say, can I recognise councillor Matic and his ongoing contribution to our city and our cause through his selfless act of running in the state seat of Anara, when it was tougher than it is even today? And to be able to join our council in 2007 to represent what was effectively St Lucia and to wave St Lucia in the rearview mirror as you travelled north and become a pure Northsider, it's been a pleasure, can I say, it's been a pleasure to be on council with you for all these years. It is going to be sad to see you go, and that your work with our committee and with our council has been really appreciated. And I know as a person whose parents fled dictatorship, to be able to contribute in a democracy in this way is something you and your family should be really proud of. And, and to be part of what the great story of this country and this city, and I thank you so much for all and everything. So, can I also make mention that last Wednesday, I had the great pleasure of chairing the Electronic Vehicle Roundtable, which brought in a whole range of industry stakeholders to, to contribute to how our city should form a strategy to best remove the barriers to purchasing an EV and what council needs to do to address this new move that consumers are making towards electric vehicles. So what are the barriers that occur that this council can address? What are the policy settings we need to consider? So for example, as an organisation of our nature, we have to manage the road network, we have to manage sound planning concerns, we have to manage the disposal of the vehicle and any materials associated with that, that becomes into our remit as well. So all of these matters were discussed, and can I thank all the contributors to that roundtable, it was a really good day. And I will say what I, in the concluding remarks I made that day, that when I see events with Butchers' Paper, I do put a question mark next to them, but can I say the material points that were made by contributors that day were really valuable and will materially improve the way this city progresses in engagement in this new model of vehicle that we are seeing increasingly common in our streets. Can I also reflect upon the state government's announcement on Sunday of their new study that duplicates our old study to see the benefits of a tunnel through the northern suburbs of Brisbane? Now, as I said earlier, council conducted a study that identified that if there were not traffic and transport issues addressed in the north and outer northern suburbs, there would be catastrophic failure of that district along with significant economic loss. That was mocked by the state at the time for a range of reasons. And then, as we discussed in question time, they adopted the eastern alignment option we provided to them in November last year. So, look, I'm not going to sit here and say, we said it was a good idea and they said it was a bad idea, and then, then once it comes to this point, they say it's a good idea, and I'm going to say it's a good idea. Did we prefer the western alignment? Yes, because it, it provided more solutions for more people, and that's why we preferred it. This one will be cheaper and it will satisfy a great many concerns along Gimpie Road, there's no doubt about that. But please, don't, don't, don't anyone here or anyone listening confuse my comments earlier with me not supporting that proposal very much. I'm very keen to see traffic and transport improvements in a meaningful way for the northern suburbs, and any way that I can provide assistance, I look forward to that. On the topic, we had a presentation on the Cityreach Boardwalk Rehabilitation Project, which was a range of, which is going to be an ongoing feature of our organisation for some time. The boardwalk occurs in, the principal issue with the boardwalk is there's like seven separate ownership types in the length of it, from leased to privately held to publicly owned to body corporate. And some of the boardwalks can leave it in the building, some of it's a boardwalk in its own right. It's, it's a real movable feast of issues, that one. So we will be working on that for some time, but I thought it was important that the committee heard about those, those issues early. And there was also a petition, which I understand was supported by all councillors.
Thank you councillor Wines. Is there any further speakers? I see no one rising to their feet. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal.
Thank you Mister Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 6th of June 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 6th of June 2023, be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you Mister Chair. And before moving to the committee report, I did want to touch upon a couple of things relevant to the portfolio. In particular, it was remiss of me to not mention earlier today the terrific contribution of the council officers in preparing the Bridgeman Downs neighbourhood plan, and I do thank councillor Davis for acknowledging them. They have done a terrific job to, to deliver a very balanced outcome that respects not only the environmental considerations out there, but also the character expectations of the community, but also the, the significant need to deliver additional housing. So I would express a very heartfelt thanks to the council officers who worked on that neighbourhood plan. I'd also like to join councillor Wines in acknowledging the contribution of councillor Matic to the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee. He's always been an active member of the committee, and I've certainly appreciated councillor Matic's insights over the years I've been a councillor. He's a, he's a great guy to be with and has great knowledge and is certainly one who is great to watch in full flight and debate. So I wish councillor Matic all the best in the next part of his life's journey. I'd also like to take the opportunity to touch upon a point that councillor Griffiths made earlier in the meeting, particularly about 284 Pine Mountain Road, Carina. And this is another classic example of councillor Griffiths firing from the hip without actually doing any homework on, on the topic. He's not in the chamber at the moment, but as I said, it's a classic example of councillor Griffiths getting it all wrong, firing away before really investigating the facts. Particularly, the 284 Pine Mountain Road contains three separate lots, namely 284, 284A and 60 Bend Dena Terrace. All subdivision proposed, including the extension of Liam Street, are located on the former healthcare site or the former healthcare centre, Xavier Children's Support. And this site is at 284 Pine Mountain Road, Carina Heights, the lot fronting Pine Mountain Road. So I can confirm that there is no development occurring within the White Hill Reserve section of these lots. There is a request to undertake minor filling along the northern side of the Liam Street extension. This filling is proposed to avoid the use of retaining walls that would restrict fauna movement to koala food trees that are also proposed to be retained within the development. So I'm also told that the proposed filling does not remove any existing habitat trees within the White Hill Reserve. So at this point in time, the application is under assessment by council's independent planning officers. It's not, as councillor Griffiths would suggest, some sort of mass destruction of koala habitat, but that's because he hasn't investigated the, the application. If he'd have done that, it would have been fairly obvious. So, look, I would encourage councillor Griffiths to quickly check on that, and I must say, it was beautiful to watch councillor Johnston dive in the deep end without even considering whether councillor Griffiths' facts would be right. So between the two of them, I'd suggest they both have a look at the DA and acquaint themselves with the facts. Moving on to the committee report, the committee presentation was on the state government's recent changes to the Planning Act and Regulations. This presentation was up to update the committee on recent changes that had been made by the state government to the Planning Act and Regulation, and follow-on impacts it had in terms of council's planning scheme and activities. One of the changes to the planning regulation that was discussed was the change to secondary dwellings and granny flats. Council was advised of this change on Friday, the 23rd of September, with the changes coming into effect the following Monday, with no consultation being undertaken with local governments prior to the announcement. The changes focus on removing restrictions on the people who may occupy secondary dwellings, including granny flats, for example, occupants no longer needed to be related to the people in the principal house. The changes also meant our city plan needed to be amended to remove this restriction of number of unrelated people living together, which up until this time had been five. As a result, council is now unable to regulate the number of people living in our house or dwelling, and we imagine this may flow on, have flow-on impacts to the amenity of our suburbs, including car parking, waste collection and noise. Council was notified of another change to the planning regulation on Monday, the 24th of October, regarding emergency accommodation. The changes came into effect on the preceding Friday and with no prior consultation. The changes allow for the use of the infrastructure designation pathway for the provision of social and affordable housing by a community housing provider or under a state government funding programme. Additionally, it also allows local government to deliver emergency housing in response to a disaster without need to a material change of use, for example, within parkland. There was a third change to the planning regulation in December, and again, we were provided details of this change just one day prior to it becoming, coming into effect. This change centered around small-scale rooming accommodation and removed the requirement for assessable development application where it met certain criteria. Despite this, recently, the state has been seeking feedback regarding upcoming proposed changes. One proposed amendment bill proposes changes to broadening the scope of the state planning minister's power to direct amendments to a local planning scheme, as well as give local governments no power to make an alternative policy that is inconsistent with the state's planning act. Finally, council recently provided feedback on the state's proposed amendment to the minister's guidelines and rules that would allow council to rezone land that has been purchased through the voluntary home buyback programme as a minor amendment. And as I said, a lot of this stuff has been advised to council with no consultation and either taking effect immediately or within a matter of days, often with, you know, a weekend separating the, the actual application of these changes. And as a result of the committee presentation, councillor Collier raised a couple of questions, and in particular, she asked, you know, whether we'd been engaged in the housing roundtables and the summit, and was advised that the Lord Mayor had been an attendee at both of those events, and perhaps if she'd done a little bit of homework, she would have appreciated that the Lord Mayor was engaged in both of those, those key events. She also asked why I hadn't been engaged and spoken to the state about these planning regulation changes, and the reality is, I don't have a crystal ball. None of us were advised, there was no consultation, these were just a direct, a directive from the state government, there was no consultation. So it's pretty hard for me to have consultation or engagement on something that's a direction with no, no advice. But at any, at any rate, you know, these, these changes have occurred, we will be implementing them, we'll be managing them as best we can at a local level. And I think that it would be useful from the context of, you know, councillor Collier's position, is that she needs to appreciate that a lot of engagement with the state on planning matters is low on consultation and engagement, and ultimately, and ultimately becomes a directive in a lot of cases. In addition to the presentation, there was a petition containing 258 signatures to rename a road to Nicola Tesla Street in recognition of the inventor Nicola Tesla. Now, this street that was, they were seeking to rename was Gudham Road North, it has frontage to Camden Road. In accordance with council's street naming policy, the required denomination would need to be a road, not a street, so their request would have to have been Nicola Tesla Street. But irrespective of that, council requires that every house or every owner that has a property fronting that street must support a change of name, and that was not achieved. And so the response to the petition was provided, and the local councillor was consulted and supported council's recommendation, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Allen. Further speakers? Councillor Strunk?
Yes, thank, thank you Deputy Chair. Listen, I just want to arise to speak in regards to the relaxation of that rule that was in place for how long, that you couldn't have more than five unrelated people in a, in a property. I congratulate the Queensland Government for relaxing that, relaxing that rule. I do. Whether you're related or unrelated, so long as you're living in an address in a respectful way, and you're parking your vehicle on the road legally, and you're not disturbing the neighbours, what's the difference? What's the problem? So, I don't know. I, I have, I have, I have a lot of people out my way that are really, really doing it tough at the moment when it comes to accommodation, right? And I think that if they, if they can live together, right, in a respectful way, in a peaceful way, then, then, and they can afford to live that way, right, until, until circumstances change, right, then they should be allowed to. So I don't think it was a, I, I just think councillor Allen really, I don't think there's, there's an issue here, right, in regards to the relaxation of that rule, and that's my understanding anyways, and that's what, that was what the presentation was about, or somewhat what the presentation was about. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Huang?
Thank you Mister Chair. I rise to speak on item A of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee Report on the impact of state government's recent changes to the Planning Act and Regulations. Mister Chair, those of us who were a part of the current city plan's original formulation will remember that overcrowded rooming accommodation was a big issue back in 2014. Safety concerns and amenity issues were giving our city a reputation as a city who exploited international students. We also experienced a tragic house fire in Logan that claimed 11 lives. Following this tragedy, tragedy, and considering the international reputation our city was creating, this council created the Rooming Accommodation Code in our city plan and lowered the number of unrelated people that were permitted to live under one roof. Mister Chair, we noticed that there was need for student and affordable accommodation in our city. We addressed those issues through good policies and proper planning. Initiatives such as infrastructure charge reduction, which resulted in quality student accommodations built in the right place at affordable prices. Mister Chair, in contrast, these changes in the State Planning Act and Regulations is simply a knee-jerk reaction to cover up the state government's lack of action on social housing and stigma, and stigmatisation of the local housing providers. Mister Chair, the changes brought by the state government is a cover for their incompetence and their lack of plan to address the housing crisis. Just remember, if anything like the Logan House fire happens again, the blood is on this state government's hands.
Thank you councillor Huang. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Johnson?
Do you think that's appropriate? Point of order, do you think that's appropriate, Mister Deputy Chair? Those remarks?
It's, it. It's fine, can we please move on?
Okay. It's fine. It's fine. Okay. Just briefly, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee Report, I don't think that's fine, I don't think that's appropriate, as much as some of us would like to say these things occasionally, mainly over councils in action when pedestrians die in the city of Brisbane and council does nothing, I'd like to say it a lot, I don't think it's an appropriate thing to say, and it's very sad, that's what councillor Huang has said. However, I just want to say very briefly, I, I love the confected outrage from councillor Allen. It, it is confected outrage because. It is confected outrage because have we seen him protesting in the streets with the state government? Have we seen him taking the fight up to George Street? No, no, you've got this wrong. Has he gone and talked to the, I think, the deputy premier probably on this issue? I'd be really interested to know what he's actually done to point out the problems with what the state is doing, and without question, there are very big problems with what the state is doing, because I don't reckon councillor Allen will have done anything but a sausage. Is he moving a motion in here? I mean, they like to come in here and, what was it last week? There was all that outrage about councillor Griffith, his name had to go in that motion last week about that planning issue. Are we seeing any motions come through this place condemning the state Labor government for their poor planning policy changes? No, we're not seeing that. What are we, we've actually sort of gone and gone, oh, we really don't like what the state's doing, but we'll just go along with it. We'll just go along with it. I cannot believe that councillor Allen is standing up in this place saying, yeah, 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 we don't agree with what they're doing, but doing nothing to stop it. Clearly, he secretly supports what's going on here. Otherwise, we would see action from this LNP administration. They're prepared to stand up and fight on almost every other issue going out there. I mean, today, it's been all about the state doing a study on a state government road, and they've spent so much time talking about that on an issue that directly impacts our council, the amenity of our suburbs, how enforcement happens, how planning happens. Have we even written a letter up the road saying, oh, big bad state government, I think you've got this wrong? I doubt it. And maybe councillor Allen's going to stand up and go, councillor Johnston, you don't know what you're talking about, I've written ten letters up to the deputy premier saying, this is not right, your planning changes are wrong, you need to consider this. Has he done any of that? My guess is no. In fact, what we know is this LNP administration has been engaged in all these conversations, participated in these conversations, supports the changes that are being proposed here, and they will have adverse impacts on our neighbourhoods. The planning chairperson is simply waving this through because he wants to see more development happening in Brisbane. Not good development, not development, not appropriate development or well-designed development in the right areas, just more development, scattergun approach, just everywhere, because we know that there would be more outrage in this place if the state government was really doing the wrong thing according to the LNP. We've seen it today. I mean, road projects, what else have they been, the nasty, big nasty state Labor government about today? Tunnels, yeah, the tunnels, yeah. I mean, the big nasty state Labor government are doing X, Y and Z, but this one, no problems, just wave it on through. So I think that's quite interesting, and it's just staggering as well for the planning chairperson to stand up and talk about how the big mean state government didn't consult him, when when the planning chairperson is responsible for bringing in the most dictatorial, adverse, temporary local planning instruments that impact on residents without any consultation whatsoever, whether it's in Maruka or South Brisbane. I mean, you'd think that he'd have at least some idea that he's been doing this to the people of Brisbane for months and if not years, but it's okay when he does it, there's no problem when he does it, but it's terrible when that big mean state Labor government does it to us. But we're really not going to complain about it because we secretly like it. I think that's what we've heard here today.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Marks?
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Deputy Chair, I was just waiting for my microphone to reset my time. Yes, thank you, I'm planning, standing up to speak on item A in the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee Report regarding this new, well, I'm not going to say new law, it's a change to the existing local law that we had up until place in Brisbane City Council up until September last year, as the Chair mentioned, which I might add, we found out through no official channels that this had actually happened, which is not a great way for the state to do to work with local council in this issue. Councillor Huang is one hundred percent correct when he said that councillor Strunk through you, Mr. Deputy Chair, was not in this place as a councillor when Graham Quirk at the Lord Mayor at the time brought this law in. And it was brought in for a very real issue, problem that was arising and overcrowding. Now, I understand councillor Strunk through you, Mr. Chair suggests that he supports this removal of this law, and I think potentially in his utopian world of that he lives in that it might be a good thing because people are, you know, don't all have houses to live in. But the reality of what actually happened in this situation when it wasn't the law is far from utopian, I can tell you that right now. Overcrowding, and we're not talking six people or seven people in a living in house, we're talking thirteen, fourteen and fifteen people being crammed into one house doing hot bedding. That's one way they did it. Now, if you don't understand hot bedding, I'll tell you exactly what it means. It means one person gets out of bed after sleeping there through the night, then the other person gets back into that bed after sleeping through the day. They literally swap the shift the beds, and then we're talking, and yes, you know, most houses, they have one rubbish bin, one yellow bin, one green bin, one red bin, you know, you can imagine trying to fill or keep a household of fourteen people under control with waste. I mean, it's just not reality. Safety issues alone, fire issues, the reason, and when the law was in place, there was only one avenue that council had, which was in the compliance space, that if they had any complaints about this from anyone in the area, it was the only way we could could enter the property was with the Queensland Fire Emergency Service. That was the only avenue open to us. So if someone put in a complaint and we had safety concerns of overcrowding, oftentimes it was a situation where they literally built the garage in, and they punched a hole in the garage wall, and then shoved an air conditioning in there. So no natural light, no, no natural amenities. There was one house on the corner, which was in councillor Wong's ward, which I then inherited, which was in councillor Graham Quirk's ward, they had a portaloo in the backyard, that was their bathroom facilities. Now, I don't know if anyone else in this place thinks that's an acceptable way to live, but I sure don't. And the compliance officers were completely hamstrung, that only way they could make any investigation was the Queensland Fire Service. That now has gone. So not only the Queensland Fire Service gone from this space, compliance are also now gone. So can I suggest to you, Mr. Chair, Deputy Chair, when the complaints start rolling in about this, I would suggest potentially you hedge your complaints towards councillor Strunk in the Forest Lake ward because he completely supports this amendment, I think it's appalling. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marks. Are there any? Councillor Massey?
Thank you, Chair.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Landis.
Mr. Chair, I move that council now adjourn for dinner for one hour, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
We've had a motion for an adjournment for dinner for one hour from councillor Landis and seconded by councillor Hutton. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. See you in one hour, councillors. Thank you, councillors. Councillor Massey, you have the call.
Thank you, Chair.
My pleasure.
I just wanted to note that I think through you, Chair, that the Chair of this committee said maybe five or six times, no consultation, no engagement, and how that was a big frustration. Fascinatingly, the TLPI for the Carilpa precinct, of course, has no consultation. And interestingly enough, it is an interesting question, because of that no consultation, I wonder what the Chair has done. I know that the Carilpa community has sent letters, sent emails, attended chambers, and who knows what they'll do next, I guess we'll see, but I just wanted to make note of that, that no consultation five or six times, that was, I found that interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Massey. Are there any further speakers on city planning and suburban renewal? I see no one rising to their feet. Councillor Allen, write a reply.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and look, I thank everybody who has contributed to the debate. What I would point out is that, you know, councillor Strunk's points were obviously heartfelt and fair, and I can see the point that he's making, but I think the reality here is that there are unintended consequences, which I think councillor Marks really illustrated pretty well. So we will have to wait and see how some of these things play out over time, but we do share some some concerns. You know, to councillor Johnston's point, have we done anything in terms of engaging with the state? Yes, we've written to them about these things, we've specifically asked how certain items were going to be applied, how we should, you know, support them, how we should give effect to them, and we haven't received any feedback. And, you know, to to councillor Massey's point and to the point that councillor Johnston made, you know, certainly, you can't have it both ways in this chamber, you know, you can't say that, you know, we're being dictatorial and overriding people and not supporting planning changes with appropriate consultation, but then in this very chamber, this very evening, vote against a neighbourhood plan where we did all that consultation, the process took a couple of years. So to vote down something that was heavy in consultation with lots of community engagement that gave rise to a really good housing outcome, to vote that down and then call us dictatorial on the other hand, it doesn't make sense, because it doesn't matter what we do in the chamber here, whether we bring through a TLPI, some other planning change, or a major amendment like a neighbourhood plan, the other side of the chamber will vote against it. And right now, we have a housing crisis, and a TLPI was the best way of moving forward and bringing on housing supply, and those on the other side have opposed it again. So, as I said, they oppose things purely for the sake of opposing it, and in the last two weeks, they've stood in the way of a potential fourteen thousand new homes. That is appalling. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Allen. I will now put, councillors, councillors, I'll now put the report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability, please.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee Meeting of Tuesday, sixth June, twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee Meeting dated Tuesday, the sixth of June, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Before I get into to the report, can I take a moment to acknowledge councillor David McLaughlin, who's been a really important member of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee. When I first came into to council about four years ago, councillor McLaughlin was actually the infrastructure chair, and I remember very well councillor McLaughlin introducing me to the wonderful world of CPO and negotiating my way around.
Still my way around it.
And he was very helpful with a number of projects in my local area. But thank you, councillor McLaughlin, for all your assistance to me as Chair of Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee because of the work that you did when you were the Chair of the same committee. We appreciate your presence in the committee, your contribution, and from a personal perspective, thank you. I'm sorry, I don't have any lovely stories to tell, like councillor Wine's had to 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 share, like he did with councillor Mattie because of my short time here, but the stories that I have heard have always been so very positive about your contribution to this team and to to council and to your residents. Deputy Chair, item A was our committee presentation, which was on natural area outdoor concept planning. I'm very proud that Brisbane is Australia's most biodiverse city, and one of the reasons for this is the natural areas that we manage. The concept planning of our natural areas is set to be to set the balance between protecting the environment and meeting the outdoor recreational needs of the public. And some of the outdoor recreation activities that we encourage within our natural areas include bushwalking, off-road cycling, horse riding, through to picnicking and bird watching. Deputy Chair, this is part of our Brisbane Vision twenty thirty-one to make our city accessible, active and healthy, and it goes without saying that this is also a key part of our clean, green and sustainable commitments by providing outdoor recreation opportunities in those natural areas, including new activities in acquired bushland. Our approach to planning for these areas lies in identifying which recreational activity fits in best with each individual natural area so that both are maximized. It's no good having bird watching hours, tours where the birds are hard to find. In recognition of this ongoing process, we have a rolling programme to develop our concept plans, which of course are informed by community feedback. This programme supports our vision to achieve forty percent natural habitat covered by twenty thirty-one, with seventy-five percent of that habitat in good or better condition. Deputy Chair, we also had one petition requesting council prioritise funding for rejuvenation of the waterway traversing through and adjacent to Hyde Park Road, Philberg Park and Le Shon Park in Yorongga, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Johnson?
Yes, I rise and ask that item B is taken seriatum for voting purposes. With respect to the petition here before us today and council's do-nothing response, it's just not good enough anymore. I want to thank Kate Wall and all the residents who have supported this petition and indicate that I won't stop fighting to get better drainage for Yorongga residents. It is not good enough that this council can invest twenty million plus just around the corner in Norman Park, Catchment, but can't be bothered to even clean out a drain in Yorongga, and one that floods in heavy rain. Residents watch what's happening in other parts of the city, and they don't see the same level of interest, maintenance, upgrades, even basic work being done in Tennyson Moor than there are in other parts of the city. So one of the people who was supporting this petition is experienced landscape gardener and somebody who really helped our community through the two thousand and eleven floods as a volunteer, so she's got a lot of experience in dealing with the impacts of floods in our community. And, you know, she's spoken to me about Norman Creek and the outcomes over there and said, why can't we have that? Well, there's no reason other than the LNP administration just say no to everything. They significantly under-invest in drainage everywhere in this city. There are dozens and dozens and dozens of projects in my ward, drainage projects in my ward that are waiting for funding, that are just on council's never, never list. We had the council officers out to talk to the retirement village that are logging complaints every week, every single week, there's a complaint about this drain, it's not maintained properly, it's cracked, it's full of weeds, it's full of debris, it's full of rubbish, the banks of it aren't maintained properly, like, it's just a mess, it's just a mess. It doesn't have enough capacity, the whole situation with drainage in Yorongga West is appalling, and council knows this. A report was done in two thousand and one that said there should be no further infill development until council invests in stormwater drainage upgrades. So what did council do? Took all the stormwater drainage upgrades off the council's long-term infrastructure plan, out of the PIP, out of the LGIP, and now there's just no upgrades happening at all. This one's been on the list for about twelve or thirteen years, and it is in terrible, terrible shape. It's the main stormwater drain out to the Brisbane River, and it's, you know, a huge amount of runoff comes down through these stormwater drains and into the park. It's not just in floods that this floods, it floods every time there's heavy rain. So this is a do-nothing response, I mean, the wording in here is just, it's it's almost belittling in the way that residents are being spoken to, and I just can't support this kind of, I can't support this kind of do-nothing response by council. Council acknowledges community sentiment. Community sentiment? How about fixing a public asset that council recognises needs to be fixed, instead of saying, oh, no, no, it's really a drain, we're not going to do anything about it, it's already capital listed, we're going to fix it? So if I, you know, my guess is that the same listing from twelve years ago is probably sitting in the capital works list, waiting for the never, never funding from the administration. I doubt anyone's properly scoped what needs to be done. I doubt anyone's thought about an upgrade rather than just patching up where the concrete channel's actually cracked, and I doubt that anyone's thought And I doubt that anyone's thought, is there a better stormwater solution for this precinct that's going to help mitigate localised flooding impacts and carry the huge, huge, huge increase in volume and velocity that has come from all the infill development through Yorongga? No one's probably looked at those issues. So I just, this council's response over and over again is it's on the capital works list, but it's not getting done and that is not good enough. I feel really, really sorry for residents in Yorongga because this administration has absolutely sold them down the river. They've jammed so many more people in there. They've they've announced they're changing the low impact industry zone to mixed use residential without any consultation with them. They took out all the infrastructure out of the LGIP, so now the developer doesn't even have to meet LGIP standards. So this is how the LNP roll. They want to jam more people into a catchment that floods, into a catchment that can't handle current stormwater loads and current stormwater needs. And when the community says, fix it, please fix it, please make it better, please use innovative best practice, this administration goes, we appreciate your sentiment. Well, I think that's patronising, I think it's inappropriate. I'm fully behind my residents, we need better stormwater drainage. This council spends less than $40 million a year on stormwater drainage out of a $4 billion budget. It is grossly inadequate. It is negligent. It is a negligent investment in what is actually needed in this city. And it is appalling that the LNP are simply ignoring the needs of this community. They deserve better.
Are there any further speakers? See no one rising. Councillor Davis? No. We will now put item A of the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. We will now put item B. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
Division called by councillor Johnson and I'm going to go with councillor Massey. Sorry councillor Grubbs, I think she beat you to the call. Please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the result.
Mister Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 15 in favour and 7 against.
Councillors, the committee report has carried. Can you please return to your seats? Councillor Marks, City Standards Committee, please.
Thank you, Mister Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 6th of June, 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 6th of June, 2023 be adopted. Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mister Deputy Chair. Before I get to the report, I just want to mention, everyone has been mentioning councillor Matic and his role as, his role as their deputies in various committees. Well, he's not been one of my deputies, but I was one of his deputies. And so I want to thank him for introducing me to the world of chairmanship and just what a tough gig it was. And I appreciate having him there on the other end of the phone every time I needed his help with something. As far as councillor McLaughlin goes, I was also on one of his committees and at that time it was called Field Services. I went to visit his ward office one day and there was a table out there in the garage spread with a whole lot of waste. Apparently he was doing his own waste audit. I'll never forget that. I thought, I'm never going to do that. Turns out I actually did do that one day. But anyway, that's the nature of the job, I guess. So enough, and I'm looking forward to their valedictory speeches because I know that they're they're going to do great and we're really, really going to miss them. So I just want to talk, last week's committee was on cars' involvement in the personal appearance services, which I think a lot of people would not be aware of. And it was a very, I'm not going to say entertaining, maybe it was entertaining committee, but anyway, it was very good. Thank you, Mister Deputy Chair.
Thank you councillor Marks. Are there any further speakers? Being no one rising, we will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard. The Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, please.
Thank you, Mister Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 6th of June, 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 6th of June, 2023 be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Well, there's some very important speeches still to be had tonight. So Mister Chair, Mister Deputy Chair, you'll be very surprised to hear that I'm going to say, we had a wonderful committee presentation on library reading programmes for children. Everyone in this chamber knows how important they are and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
That would have to be the shortest committee presentation ever. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? No, there being no further speakers, we will now put the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham. Finance and City Governance Committee, please.
Thanks, Mister Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 6th of June, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 6th of June, 2023 be adopted. Councillor Cunningham.
Just briefly to the report, Mister Deputy Chair, wanted to speak about bushfire preparedness as this is an important issue in the lead up to summer. So the Queensland Fire and Emergency Services is the lead agency on bushfire prevention, preparedness and response. Our team in city resilience assists residents with preparedness and engages with relevant stakeholders and community groups to keep Brisbane safe in the event of an emergency. The committee heard that council city resilience team is currently preparing for the risk of bushfires due to dry conditions and warmer than average temperatures predicted for Queensland during the 2023 winter season. This will likely contribute to elevated fire activity in parts of Queensland. Managing bushfire risk is a shared responsibility among local councils, private landholders and emergency services. Council's Programme Planning and Integration Branch lead fire hazard management on council-owned land. Private landowners are legally responsible for mitigating and managing bushfire hazards on their property. However, we at council are playing an active role in preparing the landholders and the broader community. We'll be continuing our bushfire and flood information sessions, workshops for seniors and people with disabilities, as well as facilitating an engagement programme for people from culturally and linguistically diverse backgrounds. People living with particular, people living in particular risk areas will receive even further communication from council and QFES. Council will be advising residents who live close to bushland or in rural areas to prepare a bushfire survival plan and practise implementing it with their family. The engagement priorities, priority areas have been identified in conjunction with QFES. Finally, I just wanted to mention that if councillors weren't aware, QFES actually has this really useful website, which provides interactive mapping about the bushfire risk to communities and to residents. And if councillors weren't aware that that existed, please make sure that you log on to that and check out for your own wards in the next few months. Mister Chair, I commend the report to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Cunningham. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you Deputy Chair. Listen, I rise to speak in regards to bushfire preparedness. It was a very interesting presentation with the head of the disaster management team now, Malcolm, who's new to the job, but he was quite well prepared. Sorry?
Point of order councillor Cunningham.
I think councillor Strunk just called the council officer by the wrong name. It's Howard. Did you say Malcolm? It's Howard.
It's Howard. Sorry. Thank you for the correction. And he was reasonably well prepared. He's only been in the job for a few months. But the, what I would raise is an issue that has come up many a time. We've had a number of presentations about bushfire preparedness from the head of disaster management over the years that I've been in the finance committee. And I raised the issue of bushfire or a few, bushfire in my ward actually, which is, I don't have big swathes of green in my ward, but we do have these concentrated pockets of of bush area within the Forest Lake suburb itself that was developed back 30 years ago and and also of course within Duen Dala and and of course Ellen Grove as well, which is which is a fairly big acreage area as well. My concerns were that we've, especially in the Forest Lake area, we've been building up fuel in, especially in the small pockets for, well, 30 years now of course, and and it's never really addressed. Now, you can't backburn in these little pockets because you're close to houses and it would be a bit of a disaster, I would think. Would be hard to control for the fireys to do that. But so what you've really got to do is you actually got to go into those pockets and actually retrieve or or do something about the fuel that's actually been built up in these in these pockets. Now, I'm not the only councillor that raised this issue in the committee as well. But so there are plenty of areas around Brisbane that we're just not doing the work that we need to be done to reduce the fuel load because at some stage it'll get, someone will throw, I don't know, some sort of a accelerant in there and honestly, it will burn the fence down behind the house and then it may even get into the house as well. So we really have to identify those areas and and the, and I raised that and the chair decided to say, well, you want to send me a list of those places that you have concerns or your residents have concerns, we'll have a look at that. So I thought about it overnight. When I went on on Wednesday, I said to my team, Nada and Pam, we've, this this has come up during the committee presentation, we've had all these calls over the years in regards to people's concerns. Let's let's put out a, let's put out a survey or a question first, right? And and so we decided to, within within a few hours, we had that survey ready to go along with the, along with that question of course is, which we asked residents, are they bushfire ready? Now, we had, within a week, we had 276 replies, which has said a lot to me. It says, I'm not the only one thinking this way in regards to these bushfire areas that aren't being maintained. So we we put that, so going to the survey, we asked for four basic questions really. And I'll cover over on these, I think I've got time. How important is the bushfire safety in your suburb? 82% of the people say very important to them, which was a great response. People are thinking about it. We've got to do, we've got to do more. What do you, what do you know, also, did you know what to do in the case of a bushfire? Now, 42% of the people said yes, or about 43 actually, said yes. And 21 said no and 35%, oh, I think I know. So honestly, over 50% of people really don't know. So there's a lot of education we're going to have to do in the space, not just do the work on the ground, but we actually have to inform and educate the residents, well, at least my ward, and I'm sure this would be duplicated right, right, right across Brisbane. The other, another question was, do you know about the Brisbane City Council's severe weather pack and that it includes a bushfire safety guide? And 57% of the people said no. So again, if they don't know about it, they can't do anything about it and they can't be informed about it. So again, maybe we should do more in Living in Brisbane, in that magazine that goes out every month in regards to this area. I know we do a little bit, but maybe we should have a real concerted effort, especially coming into storm season. And the last one was, would you like to collect the Brisbane City Council's severe weather pack? That includes bushfire safety guide? And and 68% of the people said yes. So we've been, we've been, we've been going through a lot of those actually over the last couple of years actually, once we discovered during another presentation that they existed. And people are still, every time we put it up on the on the Facebook page, people just, you know, they come in to grab them because they don't always, they don't just have the information they need to know about storm, storm issues and what they do, but also they, it's it's one of those satchels that actually they can put all their invaluable documents in there. So if if fire happens or it's a bad storm or flood or whatever, they can just grab that satchel and and leave with that information intact, which is, which really helps when it comes to getting back into the house and bringing insurance companies and all that. So I I thank, I thank very much for the presentation, but I think we have to spend the money to make it safer in those areas where it's needed. And I think every one of our councillors here in the in the in the chamber would know those little pockets that, or big pockets in some cases. And we really need to put the the word on the Lord Mayor that we need to allocate more money to look after these areas so that we can keep our residents safe. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Are there any further speakers? See no one rising. Councillor Cunningham. No, we will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we move on to item five of the agenda, petitions. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Deputy Chair. I have a petition calling on council to install lights on a bikeway between Bangama Street and Ashford Street.
Councillor Massey.
Thank you Chair. I have a petition recusing council to install wheelchair accessible upgrades to connect St Vincent's Hospital to the Kangaroo Point River Walk.
And councillor Johnson.
Yes, I am tabling a petition on behalf of Tennyson Moor residents calling on Brisbane City Council to resurface Oxley Road, Oxley, which is in a shocking state.
Thank you councillors. Can I have a motion to accept petitions, please?
Mister Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Strunk that all the petitions as be, as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? I see no councillors rising. Councillors, are there any items of general business? Councillor Matic. Councillor Matic, you have the call.
Thank you. Mister Deputy Chair, I rise to speak on my decision to retire from the position of local councillor for Paddington Ward. This was not a decision taken lightly. After 16 years, I've decided it was time to write a new chapter. In looking back over the last 16 years, I would like to share a few of my thoughts and experiences. It has been a wonderful journey, filled with many highs and some lows, but without question, the good has far outweighed the not so good. During this time, I have had the opportunity to deliver many outcomes for the ward and the city, and that of course is a good thing. To be in a position to deliver outcomes for your community is one of the most rewarding elements of the job. This was my primary motivation to nominate and it's what has kept me going throughout. A few of the significant deliverables have been Fruit Park, the Green Heart City Smart Programme and Supporting the Arts. There have been many more. However, for me, tonight, I would like to focus on the people. The people I had the privilege to meet along the way will stay with me forever. In this position, we don't walk this path alone. Along the way, there have been many hands that have contributed and made the work lighter and more enjoyable. Firstly, the ones that came on this journey with me from the beginning. We all have those people and for me, I want to thank Fraser Stephen, the late Bob Harper and the late Jeff Esdale. More than friends, these men guided me, helped me at the outset and on the journey. My admiration and gratitude to them is immeasurable. And to Jeff, who only passed away recently, I miss you in so many ways, mate. Next, the residents of originally Towong Ward, which then became Paddington Ward. Without them, I would not be standing here today. Thank you for trusting me to be your local councillor. It has been an honour and a privilege. It was a long-held dream to hold a position in political office and it is the community that has afforded me that opportunity and all of the associated experiences. I have met so many wonderful people, connected and engaged with, laughed and cried with. I will be forever grateful to this community and I thank you all for your kind wishes on the announcement of my retirement from office. But not only am I inspired by the residents, they have also helped me grow in the job. But not only am I inspired by the residents, they have also helped me grow in the job. One of my standout memories is that of an elderly lady I met in the early days. She had an issue with an embankment located in the middle of the road. The overland flow was coming across the road into a driveway and the ground floor of her house. She was tenacious to say the least, and would not stop asking me what I was going to do about it. I calmly explained the extent of the works involved, that we would need to make a budget bid for the next financial year, sounds familiar. This seemed to fuel her even more, and she was quite clear when she told me she was old and that she most likely would be dead before I fixed it. Now, as a newbie, my naive and frustrated response to her was that perhaps I would be dead before her. She didn't miss a beat. She calmly looked at me and replied, oh darling, only the good die young. So the budget came and the wall got delivered, and we both lived to tell the tale. This was an important early learning for me and has helped me so many times along the journey. I want to turn next to this incredible team I am so lucky to be part of. To the Lord Mayor and the Lady Mayorist, thank you for your friendship and your support. I have never taken it for granted and have always valued it. Can't look at him? Lord Mayor, it's been an absolute pleasure to be part of your visionary administration. To my colleagues, we spend as much time with each other as we do with our families. We are a family. Over the years, this has always been our greatest strength and one of the defining reasons for our continued success. And even though I'm leaving, I won't say goodbye, but rather see you later. We're all busy people, but I look forward to staying in touch with all of you. To the opposition councillors, I wish you all well. I know that we come from different perspectives, but we all share the same purpose, and that is to do the best for our communities and the city. I want to acknowledge and thank the previous Lord Mayors, Campbell Newman and Graham Quirk. I learned a great deal working with both of you, and I am grateful for the leadership and support. A rather fond memory now, but not then, is the time in Cabinet that Campbell turned to me and asked if I had done a particular task. I replied that, no Lord Mayor, we are still working on it. His annoyance was instant, and as he turned to me, he said, Matic, there are two hundred and sixty working days in a year and you just wasted one of them. Now Campbell taught me the importance of delivery. His motto was, you're only in this job for a short time, so do as much as you can, you don't get a second chance. This was sound advice that I've always tried to follow. To the staff of the Lord Mayor's Office, thank you for your support, hard work and guidance. Your expertise and professionalism have been invaluable. To all the amazing PLOs I have worked with, and in particular Fiona, Mark and Steve, I could say a lot about Steve, we could all say a lot about Steve, but I'll just say thank you to all of you. I want to thank the current and former council officers and executives. I have learnt so much from all of you, and it has been an absolute pleasure working alongside you to deliver so much for the city. You all live the council motto, dedicated to a better Brisbane. This beautiful chamber, there have been so many memories created here, the joy of the debate from both sides of the chamber is something I've always enjoyed listening to and participating in. The many characters that have come and gone, all bringing their own unique contribution. I would like, I would just like to touch on a few of those moments. Lord Mayor, when you were Finance Chair in 2008, during the budget debate, you kept referencing Brian Melafont, who was the ALP's Finance Chair in previous years. Now the ALP and John Campbell in particular, who was the opposition spokesman on finance, did know where you were going with it. And in his budget debate speech, he said he knew Brian Melafont personally and didn't think he would be impressed by a Liberal referencing him. Of course, you can't speak of John Campbell without recalling his favourite catchphrase every time he spoke about the budget, poor and reckless financial management. It got to a point we could call it out from the other side of the chamber with him. It got so predictable that even he had a smile on his face when he said it. And of course Mister Chair, Mister Deputy Chair, I refer to this Mister Chair, I have to mention Kim Flesser and his favourite topic of mosquito spraying and his suggestion of putting the gambusia and invasive fish in the local waterways to manage the mosquito population, which in turn would have destroyed the natural habitat. How many ye- years Mister Chair, did you entertain us with your gambusia speech? Now, I want to take this opportunity to thank the clerks and the wonderful staff led by Billy. Thank you also Billy, for providing the gluten-free biscuits. All of you think of us fondly as you continue to enjoy them. To the wonderful staff in my office who I've had the pleasure of working with, thank you. In particular Carolyn, Paula, Lorraine, Fiona, Liz and Joyce. You were all the councillor for Paddington Ward. I could not have done the job without you. You made me look great. Thank you a million times for your selfless commitment to me and the work that you did, and for making the office such an enjoyable place to work. I am so lucky to have had you all in my life. And to Judy and Joanna, thank you for coming on board and for learning so much so quickly. The office is in great hands, and I know that you will be such an important aid to the next councillor. To the supporters, branch members and volunteers for the elections, thank God they are only once every four years. We all know the logistical, emotional and physical effort. Thank you for your selfless work and generosity, I would not be here without you. To my father Michael, my mother Milena, my sister Nada, my brother-in-law Chris and my nephew Michael, thank you for your advice, love, admiration and support on this journey. To my family, my son Alexander and daughter Olivia, who also grew up in this job, thank you for coming to all the events even when you didn't want to, and thank you for understanding when I missed school events and birthdays along the way while I was serving the community. To my wife Moira, I love you, my partner in all things, none of us can do this job without that person, our partner on the journey that carries the load and allows us the freedom to do this job. Moira, who was mother and father for so many years while still pursuing her own career, words cannot describe my gratitude and love, but I'll spend the rest of my life expressing it, and according to that elderly resident, it should be for a long time to come. Mister Chair, as I said before, I'm not big on goodbyes, Brisbane's a small town and all our paths will continue to cross. I simply say, see you soon. But to this amazing role and this wonderful chamber, I'd like to quote one of my and councillor Adaman's favourite musicals from The Sound of Music, So Long, Farewell, Avita Zane and Goodbye. And now the steak knives. And now Mister Chair, in the spirit of rap that seems to have entered this chamber, I'd like to recite a short piece written by my freestyling son Alexander. Gather round, gather round, politicians that are here, if you come near, I want you to listen to my verse click. He's a politician who his name is Matic, who's gone far, who's served many of the residents' scars, have come to him about complaints, and he ain't never run away, that ain't my man today. My dad stuck around helping out everybody that he's seen, a councillor to trust. Come close residents, let him give you a hug, because he's here. Don't worry, I'm about to make his story clear, it's the end of the story. Trust me when I say my father's career ain't never been boring. A political ride, what a wild time. Peace out. And I did it without swearing. Thank you Mister Chair.
Thank you councillor Matic, and congratulations.
Oh, thank you Mister Deputy Chair, and I won't be finishing with rap poetry, let me tell you. I'll leave that to you councillor Matic. But I do rise to speak on my seventeen years of service as the councillor, nearly seventeen years as councillor for Hamilton Ward, as Chair of various committees, and five elections contested since 2006. And I did think this would be hard to distill into a cogent speech, and it hasn't been easy, and I'm sure there'll be things I miss. But when it comes to the decision I made to not recontest the 2024 election, that call was made easier by knowing I'd be leaving a team which, with or without me, has no other focus than building a better Brisbane. The Trinna team is united in its resolve to making the Brisbane of tomorrow better than the Brisbane of today. The newest member of the team to take over from me hasn't been selected yet, but this is the last opportunity for me to say, thank you, farewell, avita zane, in this chamber. I am pleased Mister Deputy Chair that my replacement will be selected by the democratic processes of the LMP, it won't be imposed by a union heavyweight or thanks to a family political dynasty. Mister Deputy Chair, I'm proud of what our team has achieved in the time I've been here serving alongside three Lord Mayors. I'm grateful those Lord Mayors put their faith in me to undertake significant leadership roles on behalf of the whole city, while working as always to improve outcomes for the residents of, in Hamilton Ward. Of course, all councillors here regardless of political persuasion do the best they can to improve outcomes for the residents they represent. Ours is a thirty-six and a quarter hours working week. It's on your payslip. But I know, I know there's no one sitting here who doesn't put in whatever hours are needed in serving the community they're elected to represent. That does mean sacrificing precious time with family and friends, not enough holiday time and no long service leave I've discovered. More vocation than job. I often get asked, what are the issues you're dealing with? The reality is, there's really only one issue, it's change. Just about everything we deal with is because of change, and I've always seen my role is to help people deal with that change. Knock off the rough edges where possible, help people to understand the whys and wherefores, but not to try and wish it away. Mister Deputy Chair, the Lord Mayor said it earlier in the debate today, in my first election campaign in 2006, which was a by-election, my political opponents ran with that slogan, stop overdevelopment now. The implication of the slogan in their campaign was that any development, any change was bad. It didn't work for Labour then, and it's not working now for the Greens Labour Alliance to stand opposed to growth and change. Brisbane is an evolving city defined by change and growth, with the suburbs in the Hamilton Ward arguably at the forefront of that change. Standing against growth means standing against new housing for our growing population, opposing infrastructure and services renewal. Mister Deputy Chair, that misguided stop overdevelopment now campaign helped me to better define in my first speech in this place in 2006, what the best possible outcomes I could aspire to achieve for my constituents in the reality of evolution. I'm proud I made renewal of Kingston Smith Drive a priority in that first speech, acknowledging the significant role, its significant role as a critical road artery for the whole city, indeed for all of South East Queensland. The opportunity arising from the need to address the road capacity for the benefit of the whole city's development was replacement of a myriad of aging nineteenth-century underground services no longer meeting the needs of the local community. And most importantly, it provided the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to replace nasty, downright dangerous active transport options between Brettsworf and Breakfast Creek with safe, separated paths for pedestrians and cyclists, now relied on by thousands of thousands of residents every day. Our political opponents went to two elections opposing the road upgrade and by default the provision of safer and inclusive pedestrian and cyclist facilities. A chronic failure to recognise the importance of improving infrastructure to meet the needs of a growing city and the need to provide safe, active transport connections along this critical road artery. Mister Deputy Chair, as Chair of Infrastructure, I was pleased to oversee the completion of the KSC upgrade for the enduring benefit of trade coast businesses and their employees from all over the city for cyclists and for pedestrians. State Labor recognizes its North Shore Hamilton priority development area set to be home for twenty-four thousand five hundred new residents, and the future Olympics Athletes' Village would not be possible without the KSC upgrade undertaken by council with no state in support I might add. Mister Deputy Chair, as Chair of Environment Parks and Sustainability, I had great pleasure in overseeing delivery of numerous projects, too many to individually mention here now. However, I'm really proud to have got one started that still has many years to go, thanks to the foresight and vision of former Lord Mayor Graham Quirk, who agreed to provide a twenty-year timeframe and a budget of a hundred million dollars for delivery of the rehabilitation of Oxley Creek. Cleaner water is the objective, relying on rehabilitation of the degraded lands either side of it, the unfortunate legacy of past times when creeks were treated only as convenient drains. Critical elements are being constantly delivered, and I'm delighted to see amongst many outcomes, the Oxley Common is protected and recognised as a paradise for birdlife with more species here than in Kakadu. As Sheriff Field Services, I recall being anointed by journalist Cat Feeney, then with the Brisbane Times, as the rubbish king of Brisbane. I wore that crown with pleasure as we initiated numerous reforms and improvements in the delivery of the city's waste services, like the introduction of the Green Waste Collection Service, and we got rid of the inefficient single truck pickup for rubbish and recycling. A failed system introduced the last time Labour got their hands on waste collections in this city. By improving the efficiency of waste collection services with dedicated trucks for general waste and for recycling, we overcame the endemic contamination issues that prevailed during the era of Labour's single truck system. New contracts with the modern fleet meant we could keep downward pressure on the cost of bin pickups and continue with weekly service for general waste, when councils across Australia were moving to fortnightly general waste pickups to save on costs and to find a way otherwise to charge residents for, more for the service. And we won the approval of the revered TWU warhorse Huey Williams for the accompanying driver benefits in those contracts. Mister Deputy Chair, focusing on local matters, I've already mentioned the delivery of the wonderful Loris Bonney River Walk alongside Kingston Smith Drive, which delivered the active transport connection along the Hamilton reach of the river, and at the southern end of Racecourse Road, the Brettsworf Plaza open space. At the northern end of Racecourse Road, I was proud to afford for and to deliver the new Ascot Park, returning for public use and enjoyment, a degraded area that had been used for over fifty years as a car park. Seeing kids in the new playground and families enjoying the open space, the barbecues and other park facilities is one of my proudest achievements. Just as valuable though are the thank yous for smaller achievements, here's a few. From Simon and Maria, thank you for asking us about and then getting installed a section of footpath outside our home. From Marcus, thank you for arranging to have new litter bins installed in our street to cope with departing racetrack patrons. Quote, you've restored my faith in local government. I'm happy my original email to you came to an actual result, he said, end quote. From Stephen, thank you for arranging a team of knowledgeable officers to come and talk to us. The residents are grateful for your time and effort in addressing our concerns. Mister Deputy Chair, none of us are in this job, this vocation to collect thank you notes, but it's appreciated when achievements, big or small, are recognised. None of what I've been able to do in here in City Hall in my ward over the past seventeen years would have been remotely possible without my darling wife Nicole by my side. Her birthday is in the middle of council budget week. Since 2007, Nicole has had to endure me prioritising spreadsheets over everything else. This will be the last year, I do promise. It's been a journey for our whole family, none of, none of us signed up for it. With the volunteers, they're the conscripts. My daughter Maisie was a baby in photos for my first campaign material, still my baby, but now at uni, looking forward to helping her perfect reverse parking. No, no pressure there. My son Joe was conscripted into that obligatory family campaign pic, now post uni and out in the commercial world, and thankfully with no interest in establishing a family dynasty in politics. My eldest son Angus recently moved here to Brisbane with his wife Georgie and my two gorgeous grandchildren, Teddy and Zoe. My other daughter Lucy lives in Hawaii with her husband Charlie, when they're not sneaking in a visit here, and I'm sure they need more frequency there from dad. When retiring politicians say they want to spend more time with family, for some of us, that's very real, and I'll certainly be doing that. Mister Deputy Chair, before I finish, I want to say, send a heartfelt thank you to all who've put up with me over the years in various offices and as chairs. Julie, seven years with me now, fantastic, thank you Julie, couldn't have do this job without you. Catherine with a C. Steve, Jane, Helen one, Helen two, Hannah, Catherine with a K, Judy, Georgia, Dominic, Lucy, Shaun, Paul. The City Hall ninjas, councillors past, present and emerging. To all the great council officers, our great party standing up for the principle of reward for effort. Local members of the LMP who've been out to support me and our City Hall team in rain and tempest in the five years I've contested. To my predecessor as councillor and now state member for Clayfield, Tim Nichols, thanks mate. Many more I know I've missed, but thank you all.
Thank you councillor Mildockman. Thank you, Councillor McLaughlin. Councillors, are there any other items of general business? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I just would like to reflect on the valedictories we both had, we just both all heard then, and I'm speaking on behalf of the team that you would have heard from many of the chairs this evening in their reports, to say thank you to Councillor McLaughlin and Councillor Maddick. I'm just going to call them Dave and Pete now, they've done their valedictory. But there's many that haven't had a word here, but they have had a word in their ear, and I'm not going to look at them either else, I'm going to start crying. It has been 16 years at least since I've been in this place, and they were already here. David ventured out onto the by-election to get here, brave man. It was the Clemseven Tunnel, I think, the exhort, I remember hearing about David McLaughlin, and Councillor Maddick obviously came in on a vacancy just after that as well. They have been friends from day one and wonderful mentors for that time as well. I did sit on a committee with Councillor Maddick straight away, the Environment of Parks. We did a few things in Community Gardens together, if I remember, Councillor Maddick. I've never had the joy of being on a committee with Councillor McLaughlin, he was always another chair while I was there as well, but many, many hours in Cabinet as well. There have been many highs, there have been many lows, there's been a lot of laughter and now we're getting to the tears. You mentioned, David, that it's about change, and your change will be noticed from both of you. Thank you, Billy. You have made a change in your wards, you have made a change to all of us in this family that we call the LMP administration. Through Park for Pete is a standout for me, and KSD for David is an absolute standout. But I am remembering now the Huey Williams and the rubbish king and all of those things that we have been through over the many, many years. It is absolutely fantastic, as long as we are in these chambers, you will be remembered. And I think the community will definitely notice that you are no longer there, and they will notice the change that you've made in the years you have been here, because that is what it's about, it is about, and that's what we're committed to. And you are examples of what this team stands for, and you will be sorely missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there any other items of general business? I see no one rising to their feet.
I've got it, I've got it. All right, I've got one more. All right, we can't let this go, all right. So, look, can I say...
Councillor Wines, you've got the call.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I say, look, these are always the hardest nights, and David and Pete have been great friends, great friends. And David, thank you so much for your friendship, he's been a neighbour of mine now for a long time. We went through the floods last year together, and it was our communities that did suffer markedly in that, and it's been wonderful to work with you, to work together, to form a plan about how we're going to do that. Great, fun people. But I have to tell a story, and I think this was going to get by the by, but I have to do it. There was a time when Councillor Maddick was going to wear a bow tie to council. He was going to wear a bow tie to council, and he was in the pre-party room, and then Graham Quirk's like, "What's this? What's with the bow ties?" And he's like, "What do you mean? Are we going to try a new thing?" No bow ties at ease. Now, Graham very rarely lost his temper, but down came the open palm on the desk, "No bow ties." And then Pete is like, "Oh, okay, so the bow tie went away." But next week, he wore a tie with bow ties in the tie as his protest. So, I didn't think it'd be right to leave tonight without remembering some of the good times as well. Anyway, thank you.
All right, I've got to follow up with that, Deputy Chair. Just briefly while we're here, I had to say something because both Councillor Maddick and Councillor McLaughlin were extremely generous to me when I arrived here in 2012 at the age of 23, as a very, very young councillor. Many people, all of whom aren't in the room tonight, I did not think I would be here for long, and so did not make an attempt to invest in me, but these two did, and they were very great at taking me aside and helping me learn the ropes of this very unfathomable and complex beast that is Brisbane City Council. And I just wanted to thank you for that. To Councillor Maddick, particularly, I have always loved that the passion that you have brought to this job. I don't think I've ever heard you say, "If it's worth doing, it's worth doing well," but to me, you live that through example in everything you did in your ward. When you were Chair of various committees, you had a real passion for the job that was just infectious. You're an extremely skilled orator in the chamber, you have absolutely no peer other than perhaps the Lord Mayor, and I have to say that as well. You know, to be fair, you are very good on your feet, and I can understand why so many Labor councillors retired over the years when you were their opposition number. So, I particularly remember many exchanges between you and Helen Abrahams in particular, where you would hold up a prop, which I think was the book that she wrote on roads and not building more roads, and the cut of roads died, and you would often then just get a bit carried away with yourself and you'd start talking about her socialist template for the city of Brisbane and their socialist template, and you'd start to invoke Karl Marx and Engels and Lenin, and it would get a little bit carried away. I think Margaret DeWitt had to pull you up a couple of times. But I particularly enjoyed when you would break out the socialist template, that was a very fun one. Councillor McLaughlin, your achievements are there for all to see, as they say, Kingston Smith Drive, an incredible project, one that would have been watered down by the opposition to just a couple of intersection upgrades, but you fought the good fight for all of the active transport users, the scooters, the bikes that use that link every day, it's incredible. And importantly, you have consistently, for over a decade, brought attention to North Shore Hamilton, its negative effects on the city and the negative effects of taking planning away from the council that is elected by the people and handing it to unelected bureaucrats and authorities. And I just think that's been great, and you're also a lovely user of props in the chamber as well and a fierce debater. And actually, the first election I ever handed out for the Liberal Party in was your by-election when you were running against Anna Herzog with the Stop Overdevelopment, you know, against the Stop Overdevelopment Now stuff. I thought that was incredible. You've had a great, both of you had a great time as chairs, you've reached the pinnacle of your career and you retire, both of you completely undefeated, and that is just an incredible legacy. You've made a great contribution, as the Lord Mayor said, to the city, to the Liberal Party, now the LMP, and I wish you both really well in your retirement. I won't say your retirement, but the next thing that you do, the next contributions that you will undoubtedly make. And David, we'll have to catch up, as we have done for many years now, for a beer down at the Pinkinbar Hotel. No, I'm just joking, Deputy Chair, we've never done that, but perhaps now he's retired, you know, he may do that, and I might have to zoom in or something, but yeah, thank you.
Dare I ask, is there any further general business? Councillor Mackay.
It's a 20-second speech, Sarah, it's okay, it's okay. I just want to make sure that we put on record, thank you to these guys. I've known these guys for 20 years at least, and when Pete first started, it was just after I ran as the candidate for Mount Cootha when I got absolutely flogged by Andrew Fraser, who was the last decent ALP politician I've met. And Pete won the pre-selection, and he said, "Oh, can you take me for a drive around Paddington so I can get to know it a bit?" And it was really good, because Pete had just run as the candidate in Anala against Henry Palache, I think, and it was Anastasia at that time, so he got flogged as well. And it was just so good to go from being a candidate with this passion in a dead red seat to being the councillor who made such a change in so many ways and so many people in the inner west. So, I just want to say thank you to Pete. And Dave, when I first started in 2019, you had a bung leg and you were like a wounded lion and very grouchy, but you still made me feel welcome, so thank you very much for everything you've done too.
Is there anybody else? No, I declare the meeting closed. See you tomorrow, councillors, for Budget.